Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the City of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and its people. Lord, we ask you to guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country, its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, song and dance, lore and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here with us today, and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Landers.
Mister Chair, I advise that councillor Owen and councillor Adaman will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillors Owen and Adaman accept their apology for this meeting. All those in favour say aye. Those against? The ayes have it. Confirmations of minutes, please.
Mister Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,709th meeting, held on Tuesday the 16th of May 2023, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,709th meeting of this council, held on the 16th of May 2023, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye. Those against? The ayes have it. Councillors, question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair or any standing committee? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the Shrinna Council's speed awareness monitors have recently notched up some important milestones. Can you please update the chamber on these milestones, including how the SAM signs are keeping Brisbane's streets safe?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hutton for the question. I know road safety is important to you councillor Hutton, as it is to everyone in this chamber. Well certainly, there has been an important milestone that has been notched up this year, and that is 10 years of the SAM sign programme, so a decade of SAM signs, and the one billionth motorist has passed those SAM signs. So what started 10 years ago as a pilot programme, some councillors will recall, I was the infrastructure chair at the time and responsible for rolling these out, started as a pilot with 26. Why 26? One per ward. So there were one per ward rolled out, and it quickly became apparent that they were so effective and so popular that we progressively expanded the programme over many years. We now have a situation where there are 190 SAM signs, and they are rotated between 894 locations. So we're now approaching 900 locations across the city that these signs are rotated amongst. In addition, there's also 83 permanent SAM signs at school zone sites as well, also something that we have installed and grown as a programme. These SAM signs are not only about educating people, it is educating with a smile, it's not about fining people. We know that the state government's approach when it comes to speeding is ever increasing fines, but our approach is education, and we do this with a smile. And this smile is something that has won the hearts of Brisbane residents, and not only the motorists, but also kids in the back seat. And I know most parents across Brisbane will hear those little voices coming from the back seat saying, 'Mummy or Daddy, you didn't get a smile, slow down'. Look, I've never heard that, I've never heard that, but I know that some parents do. And it is one of those things that's interactive. When the kids get involved and peer pressure their parents, that is a good thing. And so we've heard great results across the city with these SAM signs. And in fact, the average reduction in speed as a result of these signs going in is seven and a half kilometres. And so that is without fining anyone, that is purely an education programme with a smile. And so to have an average of 7.5 kilometres is a fantastic outcome. But there are some locations where the reduction in speed has been even greater than 7.5. And in fact, Lister Street Sunnybank, whose ward is that? Councillor Marks. So Lister Street Sunnybank, there's some speed demons in your ward, but the good news is, average speed reduction in Lister Street Sunnybank, 18.4 kilometres per hour. So once again, a positive outcome in an area that was experiencing some problems with speed. Pi Street in Aspley, councillor Davis, average speed reduction of 16 kilometres an hour. McElroy Road, Fernie Grove, average speed reduction also of 16 kilometres an hour. Brighton Road, Highgate Hill, average speed reduction of 15 kilometres an hour. Flower Street, Northgate, average speed reduction of 14 kilometres an hour. So this is a programme that, as I said, has now been running for 10 years, it's been a fantastic initiative, it is now well and truly not only accepted by the Brisbane community, but so many other councils have followed our lead across Australia and are now rolling out similar programmes. They've seen what's been achieved here, and if you go, if you traverse different council areas across Australia, you will see similar programmes right across the country. We've been proud to be a leader in this respect, and this programme is something that we will continue providing funding for. We know that councillors do have access to funding which they can use to help roll out additional SAM signs, and once again, we've got a network of 894 locations already, but there's an opportunity for more based on feedback from local councillors and the community. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Further questions? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the federal government's $10 billion Housing Australia Future Fund is backed by social and affordable housing providers, peak bodies, the crossbench and senators, but it's being opposed by Peter Dutton's Liberals, the Nationals, Max Chandler Mather, Stephen Bates and the Greens, and Pauline Hanson's One Nation. Do you support the federal government's $10 billion Housing Australia Future Fund?
Lord Mayor.
Well councillor Cassidy, if you want to go into federal politics, off you go, because I'm focused on Brisbane, and I'm focused on federal politics to the extent that it impacts on Brisbane, but I have not seen any evidence...
Councillors, just one moment, Lord Mayor. No interjections while the Lord Mayor is pleased, giving his response. You've asked the Lord Mayor the question, and he deserves the right to be heard in silence. Lord Mayor.
Mister Chair, I have not seen any evidence of any particular benefits that the federal government is offering for Brisbane through this programme. If councillor Cassidy has any such information, I would be happy to receive that, but certainly I've not been made aware of any benefits for Brisbane. But what we have done is we've released our own housing strategy and homelessness strategy, the Sustainable Growth Strategy, which maps out a pathway to provide a significant increase in housing in the right areas of Brisbane, while also protecting the suburbs from inappropriate development.
Just one moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, you've asked the Lord Mayor a question, he is giving you an answer. Can you please extend the courtesy to hear the answer in silence? Lord Mayor.
Well, I'll take that interjection, because it's quite obvious that I'm a much bigger supporter of public housing than the Labor Party and George Street are, because they have failed year after year after year to provide adequate public housing to meet the needs of the population. And in fact, we know there is a waiting list of more than 50,000 people. This is a fundamental failure of the Australian Labor Party, and it's a failure of the Labor Party to look after their core constituents. Remember when the Labor Party was supposed to look after the vulnerable? They do not care, they do not care about the vulnerable people who need public housing, and they have failed dismally to provide public housing to meet the needs of our community. And so I won't be lectured by the Labor Party on public housing when they have failed dismally in the area.
Just one moment, Lord Mayor, councillors to my left, please, it's very hard to hear the Lord Mayor's response, this is, it's to everyone, councillor Cassidy. I said, well, you were making, I've warned everybody, this is the last, this is the... councillor Cassidy, I'm quite happy to go to the formal warnings, don't push my buttons, please. Lord Mayor, answer the question, please.
Thank you. Now, we know, Mister Chair, that councillor Cassidy is a frustrated federal politician in waiting, he hasn't seen his opportunity yet, and I'm not sure if it will ever come, but the reality is, when it comes to our approach to the federal government, it's always about what's best for Brisbane, and it's the same with the state government as well, what's best for Brisbane. And we will always fight when a federal policy either benefits or negatively impacts on Brisbane, but I do see though, week after week, Labor councillors opposing the supply of new housing in Brisbane. Week after week, they are opposing the supply of new housing in Brisbane. They are very clearly anti-housing and anti-development, they have made it clear in all of the votes that we've had when it comes to providing new housing. And I think something like 80 or 90% of all votes that relate to housing supply and development, they have voted against, they have voted against, and suddenly they claim to be interested, while they've had the opportunity up in George Street to be interested in housing, and they have failed dismally.
Any further questions? Your point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I move suspension of standing orders, Chair, to enable me to move a motion calling on, Brisbane City Council calling on opposition leader Peter Dutton and Greens leader Adam Ban to support the Australian Government's $10 billion Housing Australia Future Fund, and notes that 30,000 social and affordable homes will be built in the fund's first five years.
Seconded.
We have a motion of suspending orders moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier, do you have that in?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much. So councillor Cassidy has moved the motion that Brisbane City Council calls, has moved suspension of standing orders, to move a motion to urgency. Councillor Cassidy, your three minutes on urgency, please.
Thanks very much, Chair. This is clearly very urgent now, because the Lord Mayor has just got up in the chamber today as our city's leader, and said he doesn't support...
Point of order, Mister Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Can I just ask a question of yours, Chair? I believe urgency no longer exists, this was extinguished in the rewriting the meetings of local law. This is about why it couldn't be on the motions by one o'clock yesterday. Is that correct?
That is correct, my apologies. Yes, two, three minutes why it couldn't be submitted before official time on Monday. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. We've just heard from the Lord Mayor a couple of minutes ago, his answer to one of the most critical issues facing Brisbane at the moment, and his answer to that, his answer to investing in more social and affordable housing was that it's not an issue that is affecting Brisbane apparently. That was his position just then. Maybe it wasn't, maybe he was a bit confused and a bit flustered, but I think it is very important that we debate this now. There's an opportunity for LMP councillors and for this Lord Mayor to right that wrong. Brisbane is facing a housing crisis, we know this $10 billion fund is going to deliver 30,000 new...
To the relevancy of why this couldn't be on the papers by one o'clock yesterday, not the motion debate.
Councillor Cassidy, please continue, and can I remind you as to why this couldn't be submitted by one o'clock yesterday, please?
Because the Lord Mayor didn't answer a question at one o'clock yesterday, he answered a question just a couple of minutes ago, and he made clear his LMP council's position. We know his history of calling public housing slums, we know that.
Sorry councillor Cassidy, point of order, Deputy Mayor.
There still is no ability to continue on with the debate of the motion, I ask you to keep him relative and to why not one o'clock, not why he thinks we should have the motion.
Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Chair, just on that, it's the council chamber's determination whether I have established or not. It's not up to the deputy mayor to get up every five seconds on points of order and make an argument, just to break up this debate. Continuing to do that is an act of disorder. But why this needs to be debated today is because we've just asked the Lord Mayor, as our city's leader, as the leader of the city that is hardest hit, hardest hit by this housing crisis...
Sorry councillor Cassidy, point of order...
Mister Chair, it is about why it couldn't have been on the notice paper.
I realise that, thank you councillor Howard.
And you'll get to make that decision very shortly councillor Howard. It is time for this Lord Mayor who claims to be progressive, we know on his track record he isn't, but he likes to talk about being progressive, it's time for him to send a strong message to his colleagues in Canberra...
Point of order Deputy Mayor.
Will councillor Cassidy take a question?
We are debating whether this is, suspension of standing orders...
I'm trying to find out why it couldn't be on by one o'clock yesterday, I wish you could tell us.
This is really disorderly conduct now, Chair.
Yes.
Yes, yes it is. So as the deputy mayor said, as the deputy mayor said a couple of weeks ago, this is an important opportunity for this council to send a strong message to Canberra, to Peter Dutton, to say get out of the way and support housing in Brisbane.
Your three minutes has expired. We will now decide whether this is, motion is to suspend standing orders, all those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clerks, please read the result.
Mister Chair, the noes have it, the voting being five in favour, 17 against and one abstention.
The motion to suspend standing orders has been lost. Are there any further questions? councillor Landers.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Just on a procedural matter, the deputy mayor during the division, when councillor Adams, the deputy mayor was walking across, said that takes time out of question time. Two weeks ago, when the deputy mayor moved a suspension of standing orders and we debated a motion, that didn't impact on question time, so I'm just wondering, so just wondering whether the full question time will run now? Or if there are two rules?
Councillor Cassidy, that is not a valid point of order. Councillor Landers, I've given you the call.
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee...
Just one moment councillor Landers, councillor Johnson.
I'm sorry, are you the deputy chair or the, you're still the deputy chair?
Still the deputy chair.
Yes, Mister Deputy Chair, asking a procedural matter about the rules is a valid point of order, and it is not unreasonable for you to make a ruling about that point of order, but just to say it's not a point of order when it's clarifying the meeting's local law, which you are the only person who can do that, that's problematic. So it's a reasonable question, it seems like there's one standard for the LMP and one for the other side, so could you clarify whether or not urgency motions are deducted?
Councillor Johnson, I am speaking, I am speaking councillor Johnson, and as you know, when I am speaking, you do not. That's very, very clear in the rules. Thank you. I have made my ruling. Councillor Landers, you have the call.
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard.
Just one moment, please councillor Landers, councillor Johnson.
Yes, given you failed to apply the meeting's local law, I move dissent in your non-ruling ruling.
Thank you. Seconded. Dissent has been moved in my ruling by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Griffiths, all those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The noes have it. No, seconded, thank you. Councillor Landers, you've got the call.
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, in recent days, the Shrinna Council has delivered a number of practical initiatives to support Brisbane's homeless. Can you please update the chamber on some of these outcomes?
Councillor Howard, thank you.
Thank you Mister Chair, and through you I thank councillor Landers for the question and for giving me the opportunity to update the chamber on some recent initiatives announced or implemented by the Shrinna Council, designed to assist those across Brisbane at risk or experiencing homelessness. Firstly, however, I would like to take the time to acknowledge the amazing and tireless work that our PSLOs and the wider inclusive Brisbane team have been doing in this space over the past few weeks and months. As Australia's fastest growing city, Brisbane is not immune from the housing shortage being experienced nationwide right now. Despite these challenges, council staff have worked compassionately, diligently and collaboratively with other levels of government and with community organisations to help those at risk or experiencing homelessness across the city. And I think that it's only appropriate that we acknowledge that work today. In collaboration with representatives from the state government and community housing providers, our PSLOs have been able to rehouse over 50 persons, that's 5-0 persons, who had been sleeping rough in Musgrave Park over the past few weeks alone. This really does represent the great work that has recently been achieved between council and the state government in this space, and we hope that this collaborative relationship continues with the appointment of the new Minister for Housing. When it comes to programmes, I'm being interrupted, Mister Chair, I'm just...
Councillor Howard, please continue.
When it comes to programmes supported by the Shrinna Council, I can announce to the chamber that last week several important initiatives were delivered by the Shrinna Council to assist those experiencing or at risk of homelessness. On Thursday last week, council hosted the 27th Homeless Connect, a free one-day event which brought together volunteers, services and donations to assist those at risk of or experiencing homelessness. First initiated in 2006, Brisbane City Council's Homeless Connect has gone on to inspire other local governments to implement similar events within their respective areas. For those unaware, this event connects Brisbane's vulnerable residents with a range of services, including access to medical and allied healthcare professionals, haircuts by barbers and hairdressers, housing, employment and community support, and access to clothing, food and other personal items. Over 850 persons attended this Homeless Connect, making it one of the most well-attended individual events on record. I would like to take this opportunity also to thank all of the staff from council who volunteered their time and effort to assist the vulnerable Brisbane residents present on the day, along with volunteer in Queensland who played an important role in coordinating the day. And I know that we had councillors there, I did see councillor Landers, and I'm sure there were other councillors who turn up every year to support this wonderful event. Last week, the Shrinna Council also announced the most recent recipients of council's Pathways Out of Homelessness Grants Programme. First launched in 2019, this grant programme delivers $1 million in funding annually to enable new innovative and sustainable solutions to address the growing community issue of homelessness. This programme has so far supported over 3,700 individuals at risk of or experiencing homelessness, and on Thursday last week, we were proud to announce another three organisations who will share over $1 million worth of funding. These groups will deliver a range of innovative and successful programmes that help people experiencing homelessness to access and sustain housing with the list of successful organisations being Brisbane Housing Company, who will utilise a specialist mobile health provider to deliver place-based health services to support residents in community housing with complex health needs; Youth Advocacy Centre, who will provide a wraparound advocacy support programme for at-risk young people aged 14 to 19 years to transition to permanent safe housing; and the Institute of Urban Indigenous Health, who seek to support vulnerable First Nations people and families through the delivery of care plans and early interventions designed to maintain their tenancies. I am sure that these amazing new projects will deliver positive outcomes for those in Brisbane who need it most, and are on top of the four existing organisations already supported, MICA Projects, Beyond DV, Communify and Brisbane Youth Service. And these currently have funding agreements with council to assist those at risk or experiencing homelessness. Finally, I would also like to update the chamber on some positive developments that have taken place between council and the state government regarding the activation of the Pinkambar Quarantine Facility for the purposes of short-term crisis accommodation. I was very fortunate to be able to attend a meeting, the Lord Mayor, with the Lord Mayor last week with the former Minister for Housing, the Minister Leanne Enoch...
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Councillors, before I move on, can I please address the previous points of order by councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnson? It is my error, I was meant to address both of those points of order, and councillor Cassidy to answer your question. The timer for question time will continue unless standing orders are suspended. Are there any further questions? councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. This question is to the Lord Mayor. Over the past year, there's been a growing number of unhoused people sleeping rough across Brisbane who have struggled to receive adequate, safe, long-term housing options. With the pressure of a large cultural festival, Panieri, which happened this weekend, and a lack of housing options, you recently stated that we are not going to kick people out of a park if there's nowhere for them to go. That would be unreasonable and uncaring. Across the city, community concerns continue around the needs of unhoused rough sleepers growing in numbers. Explicitly, there has been a major increase in unhoused people near the Go Between Bridge. Point of order, Mister Chair. Now that there is...
Point of order.
We have the question, please. It's coming. Here we are. Now that there is no pressure of a citywide festival, will you continue your commitment to ensure unhoused people sleeping rough are not kicked out of parks and public spaces, and continue to actively work with state government to find them appropriate, long-term safe housing?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question councillor Massey. Look, I know that publicly you claim the credit for housing those people from Musgrave Park, but we know that the reality is very different to that. It was actually the state government who worked with us to find homes, which is their job, their job. So we have been out there, as we always do, engaging with those experiencing homelessness and rough sleepers across the city, and until very recently, we were told by state government agencies, there was nothing available, no homes available. Thankfully, they must have done an audit of their facilities, and they have found some places, and so they were able to house more than 50 people in recent times who were sleeping rough in places like Musgrave Park, and that is a good outcome, and we expect that that effort will continue. This is one of the issues that I raised in my meeting with the former Minister for Housing, Leanne Enoch, and it'll be an issue that I will raise again with the new Minister for Housing as well. The reality is, I have always said, if you think that allowing people to sleep in a park is an acceptable response to homelessness, you are giving up. We have always had the priority of getting those people housed, and I've seen so many cities around the world where they just give up, and you see public spaces all across those cities filled with tents and people sleeping rough, with no one working on any real solutions. And so my approach is very clear, if there are homes available, you should not be permitted to sleep in a public park or in a public place. If there are homes available, sleeping in a public park is not an acceptable response to homelessness. But obviously, we need to take into account the supply of homes that are available, the supply of crisis accommodation, which is exactly what we've been doing. And so we'll continue working with the state government, and so that wherever there is crisis accommodation made available, we will ensure that people are provided with those opportunities. That is the right thing to do, it is what we are already doing, it's what we are continuing to do. Obviously, we're determined to see the Pinkambar facility opened up, so that there can be more than 500 beds provided in that facility that can be used to supplement the supply of homes that is needed right now. And we'll keep working on that, we've committed to fund up to $1 million in the budget upcoming towards activation of Pinkambar, but obviously, this is a process that has to be led by the state government. The federal government's made it very clear, they are waiting on a proposal from the state government on activating that facility. We will obviously work in support of the state government to achieve that outcome. I have discussed briefly with the new housing minister, Megan Scanlon, about the top priority of this issue, and she has expressed a willingness to work together, which is a positive thing, and so we'll continue... And so we'll continue pursuing it. But certainly, we will continue, as we have been doing, working with the state government. This is not suddenly something that we've started doing. This is something that has been bread and butter for this council for years and years. This is something where we have our public space liaison officers out on the streets every day, engaging with those experiencing homelessness or sleeping rough, and linking them up with the services that are available. Now, in the past, there has been room at the inn, there has been housing available, and wherever possible, link people up with our housing. We were told very recently that there was nothing available. And so while ever that situation continues, obviously, we will be caring and compassionate as a council. But sleeping rough in tents in the long term is the sign of a city that has given up, and we should not accept that. We shouldn't settle for that, we should settle for more, we should expect more, we should push back and expect secure housing to be provided for people. And whether it is crisis accommodation as a first stage, whether it is a more interim solution, or whether it is longer-term housing, that is what we should be aiming for, and that's what we'll continue to work with the state government on.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Are there any further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Acting Chair. My question is to the Chair of Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, the Shrinna Council is working hard to do the most for small business-friendly council in the country. Can you please update the chamber on the latest initiatives supporting Brisbane businesses?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair, and I thank councillor Hammond for the question. It's very exciting what we've been doing over the last few years and really what we're looking at for the next couple of years as well. Business is growing under the Shrinna Council, and we are working hard to ensure that our local Brisbane businesses are supported, connected and have the right tools in their kit to be able to take on the day-to-day challenges of running a small business. We have more than 136,000 actively trading businesses in Brisbane. That has increased by 4.3% in the past 12 months, and 97% of those are small business, which is 19 people or under. That's your mums and dads businesses, your local shopkeepers, your tradies, your makers, your innovators. They are the backbone of our community, and they are supporting thousands of families and local community groups, giving our suburbs their unique character and identity. Our reputation as the most small business-friendly city in Australia has well and truly set in, and you only have to look at the past performance to see that the future looks bright. The health of Brisbane businesses, big and small, is absolutely fundamental to our economic and social future. We have an important role to play in providing targeted relief and support strategies, especially in times of economic hardship and uncertainty. During COVID, we responded with an immediate $7.9 million business relief package, waiving fees, rents and charges. We introduced rates deferrals and payment plans, implemented seven-day payment terms for all business suppliers, launched our Buy Local campaign and opened the doors to the Brisbane Business Hub, which has supported more than 20,000 businesses now since October 2020. More recently, we introduced the Business Resilience Programme, offering local businesses free continuity planning and physical assessments to help them to build back better and more resilient if there are future natural disasters like we saw in February last year. But for all the challenges we have faced over the past few years, there've also been some great new opportunities. Our city is growing, but our economy is growing, and that means our local businesses are growing. Our latest economic development programme, the Growing Precincts Together Programme, delivers hands-on support to local shopping precincts to help promote and activate businesses. We have over 300 local businesses precincts in Brisbane. They range in size from just a couple of tenancies to a few hundred, each with their own unique brand and offerings. And this programme is about bringing businesses together to build a sense of community and to develop a shared vision for the precinct. Rosalie Village and Racecourse Road and Ascot have been our first two pilot programmes, and engagement in these areas started late last year. Racecourse Road traders identified promotion marketing events was the preferred way for businesses to work together to improve their precinct activity, after years of trouble with not only COVID but the construction of Kingswood Smith Drive as well. And Rosalie Village thought that there more could be done to increase awareness of their precinct retailers and build a strong brand to help promote their offerings. We helped more than 50 businesses in Racecourse Road and Rosalie Village through one-on-one business coaching, digital marketing, visual merchandise training, specialised food business coaching and shopfront makeovers. We partnered with Style Magazine to deliver a suite of promotions, digital and print, highlighting some of the best on offer in these local precincts. Feedback from the local businesses have been incredibly positive. We know Rosalie Village, and councillor Manick can attest to this, come together in tough times, and they tend to have it when it's rainy, and they really enjoyed the support that we gave them after February 2022 to get back on to their feet again as well. And we know that businesses often spend so much time working on their businesses, they do forget about that extra bit of help that gets just taken to the next step. So that's why I'm very happy today to announce the next two precincts that we'll be seeing the council offices starting to plan their engagement programmes with for the next financial year, and that would be Banyo and the Winham CBD. Banyo is along St Vincent's Road and Royal Parade, divided by a train station that has promised upgrades, and Winham CBD has fantastic community events and a vibrant bayside living that really needs that little extra boost for the businesses to work together. We'll be focusing on our playbook, which is promote, support, refresh and activate. It's all about building confidence and resilience in these precincts by encouraging small business owners to work together and grow together. We'll kick it off early in the financial year with engagement workshops with the business owners, and they can decide which part of those precinct playbooks that they want to focus on for a bigger and better business in their local area.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there further questions? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. My question is to the Deputy Mayor, Chair of Economic Development, the 2032 Brisbane Olympics and Paralympic Games Committee. Deputy Mayor, the only item on your committee, as on the agenda today, is a presentation from Dine Brisbane, an event showcasing where you can get champagne, lobsters, oysters and caviar in Brisbane. In the midst of a cost of living crisis, housing crisis...
Point of order, Chair.
Can you see how out of touch...
Point of order, councillor Landis.
This is question time, not statement time.
Councillor Landis, I'm pretty sure councillor Strunk is very close to asking the Deputy Mayor a question.
It was three sentences. Hello.
Councillor Strunk, can you...
May I start over?
Of course, of course.
Okay. My question is to the Deputy Mayor, Chair of the Economic Development and the 2032 Brisbane Olympics and Paralympic Games Committee. That's her title. Deputy Mayor, the only item on the committee on the agenda today is a presentation from Dine Brisbane, an event showcasing where you can get champagne, lobster, oysters and caviar in Brisbane. In the midst of a cost of living and housing crisis...
Sorry, councillor Strunk.
...can you see how out of touch your priorities are?
One moment, please. While I'm speaking, the chamber will be quiet. Councillor Strunk, you have two minutes. You've already chewed up a minute asking the question the first time. Can you please go to the question?
Point of order. This is really getting quite ridiculous. Councillor Strunk had, while you started shouting at him, I heard him just ask the question, and you've got LMP councillors getting up, which are clearly acts of disorder, which you are not ruling on, Deputy Chair. Can we actually just ask questions in question time, please?
I would really appreciate that. Councillor Strunk, can you move to your question, please?
Yes, the third line of text, and the last. "In the midst of a cost of living crisis and housing crisis, can you see how out of touch your priorities are?"
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair, and I thank councillor Strunk for the question because all it highlights is how out of touch the opposition is in what it comes to supporting businesses. I just spoke for five minutes on the importance of our local economy and supporting our businesses, whether they be in the CBD or whether they be in the Winham CBD. They employ mums and dads and kids from uni and students from uni when we get people into our restaurants and our entertainment precincts. I take the interjection from councillor Cassidy that I don't think students are buying caviar. It was very, very class warfare last week when we had this presentation in committee. The whole point of Dine BNE, if they bothered to read it, is to give discounts and opportunities for mums and dads in a cost of living crisis to experience. I don't know whether they want to hear the answer, obviously not. They just want to get their TikTok up, so I'll say it again. We are absolutely proud to support the economy regardless of what area you own business in Brisbane. Dine BNE is about getting feet on the street in the CBD. Yes, it is about having meal deals with Dona Chang, and I assure you, the meal deal with Dona Chang is a lot cheaper than if you went to Dona Chang. Yes, it's an expensive restaurant, but there are now deals that people can approach and go in there and try it. It is just like we support the NRL Magic Round, because it's not about making sure the footballers come up here, it's about making sure that people flock to our CBD to support our local businesses. Last weekend, we had the Broncos on Thursday night, the Dolphins on Saturday night, the Lions on Saturday night, the truck show, which smashed it out of the park for numbers, and Panieri. I didn't mention the Reds. I didn't think...
Councillors.
Thank you. I will take that interjection, sorry councillor Wines. It's not whether it is a high-end restaurant or it's a maker entrepreneur in Morningside. It's not whether it's the NRL Magic Round or the Winham Bugs playing at the Saturday Club. It is about supporting the economy in Brisbane. And those people to my right continue with their class warfare and don't understand that mums and dads and residents own and run these businesses, and we support them in a variety of ways. Dine BNE, where they're saying champagne and caviar is four weeks in a year of a calendar of events that don't even talk about the...
Councillor Cassidy, please. Can we hear the Deputy Mayor finish your question?
I will take the interjection from councillor Cassidy. If he believes Dine BNE is all I talk about, I don't know what he talks about. The only thing on my agenda through you, Mr Deputy Chair, is my committee presentation from last week, as is the case in every committee report. And next week, it'll be about the Maker Entrepreneur Workshop Programme will be on the agenda. And the week before, it was what was in that committee. So the hypocrisy of those people, the Labor councillors, believing they support people in Brisbane, and then bagging in events and programmes like Dine BNE because they think it's too posh for Brisbane, is ridiculous. They don't get it. The Lord Mayor also made it very clear how we help the homeless. We're working through our DV strategy.
Just one moment, Deputy Mayor. Can I ask councillors on both sides of the chamber to be quiet, please, during question time? You still with us, councillor Wines? Deputy Mayor.
Again, and I'll look forward to talking about Dine BNE in my committee report, as is on the agenda today. It is a strong programme that is more from the seat of the city, that is supported by Brisbane Economic Development Agency through Brisbane City Council, whose main role and only role is to support the economy of this city. Whether it's Dona Chang's in the city, as I said, whether it's Tony's Italian in Carina, or whether it's the fish and chips that you want to have on the bayside up in Deegan, as you mentioned last week, councillor Cassidy, they are all equal in our eyes. And we will support the economy and continue to do that, and I hope that Brisbane recognises that well enough not to even consider putting a tick beside their name next year.
Thank you. Can I, before I call on the next question time, can I remind councillors, please, to pass any statements to councillors in the chamber through the Chair? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Shrinna Council's award-winning Brisbane Metro project continues to make significant progress. Can you please update the chamber on the latest in this project, including any other recent announcements?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you to councillor Huang for the question. And one of the great things about Brisbane Metro is that while it is primarily a public transport project, it will also create a lot of new active transport connections, it'll improve accessibility and provide upgraded public spaces. And last week, Mr Chair, as part of the Lord Mayor's City to South Bank vision, we announced another very exciting legacy of the Brisbane Metro project, which is shading on Victoria Bridge. This shade structure will be on the downstream side of the bridge between Citylink Cycleway and across the pedestrian path. We know that tens of thousands of pedestrians use the bridge every single day, in addition to cyclists and scooter riders. It connects the heart of Brisbane's premier cultural and entertainment precincts with South Brisbane and South Bank. The two precincts are so close together, but anyone who's crossed Victoria Bridge in the peak of the Brisbane summer knows that that can feel like a very long walk. We have over 280 days of sunshine every year in Brisbane, Mr Chair, so this shade will go a long way towards making this city more walkable. The bridge is an important part of the fabric of the CBD, so with that in mind, the design of the shade structure is guided by a number of key principles. Firstly, we wanted to make sure that the shade structure itself would seamlessly integrate with the bridge, the river and the cityscape. That's why we've made sure that the shape of the shade structure mirrors the bridge's iconic arch shape and will still allow for those 360-degree river and city views. The design of the canopy itself is inspired by the ripples on the river, and it's made up of overlapping aluminium tiles. And in true Brisbane fashion, the design of the supporting structure is reminiscent of the classic Australian invention, the Hill's Hoist. On a typical summer's day, the shade structure will result in a 70% reduction in sunlight and heat for those walking beneath it, which is a tremendous result, Mr Chair. We also wanted the structure to be robust, safe and easy to maintain, so we've ensured that the design uses durable, low-maintenance materials, and we've incorporated city lighting into it as well. The bridge itself, as we know, Chair, was built in the 1960s, so it has some engineering challenges we must consider. The shade structure needed to be light, and it needed to have a materiality that would suit the architectural integrity of the bridge. Tenders for construction of the shade closed a few weeks ago, and we'll be announcing the successful tender very shortly. Before I finish, Mr Chair, I also wanted to talk about some recent milestones that we've reached with the Brisbane Metro vehicle. It's hard to believe, but it was just over a year ago that our first metro vehicle arrived in Brisbane. When it arrived last year, we said we'd be putting it through its paces, and as of last week, Mr Chair, I can advise that the pilot vehicle has ticked over 60,000 kilometres on the odometer, a very impressive milestone in just 12 months. The vehicle has passed tests on over 1,000 technical requirements, and it's been running smoothly up and down the bus wave. Mr Chair, sometimes when I'm feeling glum, all I have to do is look out of my office at Brisbane Square, look down at that glistening metro as it crosses Victoria Bridge, and I smile. And I smile, Chair. And, you know, Dr Carl must have been doing the same from his office on the other side of the river at the ABC Building, because we recently saw Dr Carl's review of the Brisbane Metro. And of course, Mr Chair, just like the rest of us, Dr Carl is a big fan of Brisbane Metro. In fact, his words were, quote, "I think I love it", unquote, Mr Chair. Dr Carl loves the flexibility of the Brisbane Metro system. Since the vehicle doesn't run on tracks and there's no bulky or unsightly overhead wires, the system is adaptable, and as Dr Carl said, as our city grows, we can easily extend or change metro lines to serve additional areas without having to build costly overhead or track infrastructure. He described the fast charge system as, quote, "brilliant", unquote. It's much more efficient than a diesel bus and better for the environment. Since testing began, the pilot metro has received almost 1,500 individual chargers and has spent almost 300 hours in total charging. Our testing has shown that the fast charging technology is about 85 times faster than traditional EV charging at home. And in addition to having zero tailpipe emissions, we've also shown through testing that the metro is about half as loud as a traditional bus when approaching the platform, or twice as quiet, Chair, whatever way you want to spin it. So Dr Carl's overall assessment, Chair, to reiterate, he loves it, and we agree with him, but just wait until he gets on board, Mr Chair. It only gets better from there, and everyone who has gotten on board our pilot vehicle becomes an instant convert to Brisbane Metro thought. Chair, with Brisbane Metro, we are truly pioneering the most sustainable form of intelligent public transport in Australia.
And councillors, that is the end of question time.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Chairman, I seek leave to suspend standing orders in order for me to move a motion.
Seconded. We have a motion to suspend standing orders by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Councillor Johnson, to the suspension, please.
Thank you, yes, yesterday afternoon it came to my attention that councillor Cassidy has resigned from the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, and there is a vacancy on that committee. I, the motion that I have brought forward today is to appoint myself to the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee. It is urgent because there is a vacancy in the committee itself. Because of the LMP's outrageous behaviour at the last swearing-in for all councillors, I was only appointed to one committee, and all requests to be appointed to a second committee have been refused. Some councillors in this place are actually on three committees, which is unreasonable. I have the time to give to this committee, it's a committee I've been on previously, there is a vacancy, and I thank councillor Cassidy for letting me know yesterday so I could bring forward this urgency motion today. So I urge all councillors to vote yes and appoint me to the vacancy.
Thank you councillor Johnson, we have a motion brought for us to suspend standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Massey, those to, ayes to my right and noes to my left, please. Clocks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and 17 against.
Councillors, the motion to suspend standing orders has been lost. We'll now move on to item four of the agenda before us, consideration of committee reports. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 15th of May, 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 15th of May, 2023, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, before I move on to other items, I wanted to deal with the issue that councillor Cassidy has suddenly become interested in, and that is the issue of the federal government's Housing Future Fund, and suddenly, apparently, Labor Party is interested in providing more public housing, despite the fact that a Labor government has been in George Street for 30 out of the last 35 years, 30 out of the last 35 years. You want to talk about tired and out of touch, it is Labor in George Street, 30 of the past 35 years, and what have they done for social housing in Queensland? They have sold it off, they have sold it off.
Councillors.
Sold it off.
Thank you.
And so we've seen, in fact, they struggle to even replace the homes that they've sold off. That's, that's the status of social housing and public housing with the Labor state government in George Street. They've been selling it off faster than they can replace it, they struggle to even replace what they've sold off. And now councillor Cassidy, he's got this ongoing challenge where he doesn't criticise us for what we've actually done or we've said, he makes up stuff and completely misrepresents what has been done and said. Now councillor Cassidy's been making a claim repeatedly about something that I supposedly said.
What from later paper did you?
Okay, so let's go there, let's go there, because, because councillor Cassidy, you will eat your words.
Lord Mayor, can I remind you, if you're going to speak to other councillors, it's through the chair, please.
Through you, Mr Chair, councillor Cassidy will eat his words. So not last year, not the year before, not even five years ago, but 17 years ago, there was an article in a local newspaper, 17 years ago. Councillor Cassidy has this clipping as one of his favourite clippings. Now councillor Cassidy wasn't there at the time, I think he was probably in shorts in school at the time, but what he doesn't know is that it was a proposal in my local ward at the time to massively densify the amount of public housing, to replace what was around.
Councillors, councillors, please, Lord Mayor.
To replace what was around 300 public homes in Carina Heights with around 1,500 public homes in Carina Heights, and what I simply did.
Did you oppose it?
Mr Chair, I hear some interjections here.
Councillor Cassidy, councillor Cassidy, I've noted that you've interjected quite a few times during the meeting, can we please listen to speakers in silence? Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, what I simply did was point out what researchers, and in fact any person on the street knows to be a fact, which is when you concentrate disadvantage, you concentrate the challenges for that community. It is well-known, it is backed up by all scientific research, and it is the reason why, it is the reason why, it is the reason why high-density public housing projects have their challenges, and it is the reason why the accepted logic now is the dispersal of social housing throughout the community. And this is something that I support, and this is something that the research supports. Now, if councillor Cassidy believes otherwise, I'd like him to justify why he believes that, but that was simply my point, as if you massively increase the number of social homes in one particular area and not disperse it throughout the community, you concentrate the challenges, the social problems, the disadvantage, and that is not a model that works. So yes, councillor Cassidy, that's my view, and I absolutely believe that, I absolutely believe that, but guess what, I'm not the only one who believes that, because there was a more recent example of where, would you think it was a Labor state government wanted to massively increase investment in public housing in Queensland?
No.
No, in fact, the best friend of public housing in Queensland has been our side of politics, and, and you only have to go back to the plan of the former, the former.
Just one moment, please. Councillor Cassidy, I heard that from the Chair, now while I can accept some interjections, statements like that are not acceptable, can you please withdraw that?
I said there are 10 billion reasons why that statement makes the Lord Mayor a liar, and I stand by that.
Councillor Cassidy, so I'm, I'm going to make the assumption that that is no for a withdrawal? Sorry, can you speak into your microphone, please? Councillor Cassidy, I consider you are displaying unsuitable meetings conduct, and in accordance with section 21.4 of the Meetings Local Law 2021, I hereby request that you cease your behaviour in this chamber and refrain from exhibiting this conduct. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Under the former LMP state government, there was a visionary proposal for Logan, an area which we know has had challenges with the concentration of social housing and disadvantage, and one which we'd like to see lifted and improved. And so the former government proposed an investment of $800 million into Logan Public Housing Renewal, and a key part of that was the dispersal of the housing throughout the community rather than the concentration, a key part of that plan. Councillor Davis knows about it, and guess what, and guess what, this proposal was called by academics like Professor Hal Porson from the University of New South Wales, described this as a groundbreaking project, groundbreaking in scale, and he then went on to said, "It aimed to dilute the concentrations of public housing in some Logan suburbs with a mix of affordable rentals and home ownership that would have delivered visionary jobs and development programmes for residents." This is not what the LMP said, this is what an academic, a professor, said about the LMP's housing programme, and what did the Australian Labor Party do? They scrapped it, they scrapped it, they hung Logan residents out to dry, and they are still yet to propose any alternative. And so when, so when I hear grand proposals about a Housing Future Fund, what I really hear is, oh, okay, so we have to rely on the Labor state government to deliver this housing, is it going to happen? Never, never, their record speaks for itself, they cannot even deliver basic replacement and renewal of their social housing, let alone an expansion, they have failed dismally, not just last year, not just the year before, but for 30 out of the last 35 years, they have let their own people down, the most vulnerable, the workers, they have let them down, and I see no evidence that they have changed. A leopard does not change its spots, Labor doesn't care, and the reality is, they don't mind the concentration of disadvantage because they have their safe Labor seats in that area. That's what it's all about for Labor, they want to keep those areas down, they do not want to see them progress, and that is so disappointing and so cynical, Mr Chair. We'd like to see all areas across the community lifted, we would like to see areas come ahead, Labor opposes that. It is shameful, their approach to their own supporters, to their own supporters, the most vulnerable people, they do not care, and all councillor Cassidy wants to do is come in here and play like he's a B-grade federal politician. We know he wants to be elsewhere, off you go councillor Cassidy, because right now we're focused on what's good for Brisbane, we're focused on building more housing in Brisbane, increasing the supply, we have a proposal coming through very soon that will help accommodate up to 10,000 extra people in Curilpa, that will accommodate extra people in our major centres that are well-located with public transport and active transport links and infrastructure and facilities. That's what a caring administration does, increases the supply of housing so that areas can come ahead. Labor, on the other hand, wants to hold areas back and keep them down, it is shameful, and they should be ashamed of themselves. Mr Chair, Labor's motion before is even more hypocritical and ridiculous, because last week, when we advocated for increased federal funding from the federal government, what was councillor Cassidy's response to the motion? He said, "Oh, I think you overestimate the importance of motions in this council", do you remember that?
Yes.
So last week, it wasn't important, and this week it's suddenly important. I state again, we will advocate on federal issues where I can see a clear benefit for the people of Brisbane. In this case, the federal government can approve all the money they want, but this Labor state government is incapable of delivering it. They cannot deliver the houses, they have promised again and again, they have re-promised, they have reheated old announcements that they still can't deliver, and so I have no faith that even with increased funding, that the Labor state government in George Street will be able to deliver on their commitments, they haven't been to date, and I see no evidence that they will be able to deliver. But what they can do is they can sign off in Pinkham Bar and immediately make 500 beds available, really quickly, really quickly, not in five years' time, not in 10 years' time.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, seconded.
We've had a movement for extension by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
All those against, ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. As I always do, I wanted to acknowledge the community causes and campaigns and initiatives that we're supporting as a city through the lighting up of our assets. Last night, all of our assets were lit up in blue and green to support Make NF Shine. The campaign is part of the World Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month, around 1,000 Brisbane residents are living with this condition, which causes benign tumours to grow on the body. Tonight, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in yellow to recognise Ecuador Independence Day. It was on this day in 1809 that Ecuadorians rebelled and declared their independence from Spain, and I know our local Ecuadorian community, even though it is quite small, will be very appreciative of our support and acknowledgement of this important day. Also, tonight, the Story Bridge will be lit up in maroon and blue to support National Palliative Care Week. This year's theme is "It's Your Right" and seeks to raise awareness about the rights of all Australians to access high-quality palliative care when and where they need it. Tomorrow night, all of our assets will be lit up in green to support councillor Davis, the Green Heart Fair, which will be this weekend, Sunday, at Victoria Park. On Thursday night, the Tropical Dome and Story Bridge will be lit up in yellow to support Australia's biggest morning tea, and obviously an event run by the Cancer Council to raise funds for cancer research and support of those families going through the challenge of cancer. Also on Thursday night, Sandgate Town Hall, City Hall, Radcliffe Place and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in red to support the Eve of 65 Roses Awareness Day. The month of May is the National Awareness Day for those living with cystic fibrosis, and I know that's something you, Mr Acting Chair, is also very passionate about. Friday is National Sorry Day, to recognise this day, all of our assets will be lit up in the colours of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags. The National Sorry Day is obviously held on the 26th of May each year to acknowledge and commemorate members of the Stolen Generations. This is something that we as a council for many decades have continued to acknowledge and support, and we do that in many ways. One way is through the ceremony that we hold each year here in King George Square, and then followed by a reception in City Hall, but also the local community Sorry Day events that we support as well in multiple parts of the city. Tomorrow night, Brisbane City Hall will be lit up in purple for the annual Bravehearts Ball, which is being held here in the main auditorium. Also on Saturday night, our assets will be lit up in rainbow for the 2023 LGBTQ Domestic Violence Awareness Day. This annual day aims to end violence and abuse within the LGBT communities by increasing visibility and understanding and giving hope, courage, sorry, giving hope and courage to victims and survivors. On Sunday night, our assets will be lit up in the colours of both the Aboriginal and the Torres Strait Islander flags to recognise National Reconciliation Week, which is next week, and so once again, moving from Sorry Day on Friday through to National Reconciliation Week the following week. We were recently informed of the passing of Peter Francis Thorley, who was the town clerk of Brisbane City Council from 1973 to 1981. Peter served under two Lord Mayors, Clem Jones and Brian Walsh. Originally from the town of Dolby, the Dolby Town Council, Peter moved to Kenmore to begin his job as the town clerk here in Brisbane. Now, this was a role that predated the CEO of council, and so over the years, the role has morphed, and the town clerk now doesn't exist as a role, become the CEO essentially. His time in council was busy, only two months into the role, the 1974 floods happened. That reminds me of Colin Jensen's tenure here, where he was just appointed, and then the 2011 floods happened, but knowing the damage done to Brisbane in 2011 and 2022, recognising the challenge that Peter helped lead this city through that incredible challenging event, we certainly appreciate and acknowledge Peter's work, not only for the Brisbane City Council and this organisation, but for the wider community in helping, together with the Lord Mayor of the day, leading the response to that flood. Additionally, he helped work with the Lord Mayor to lay the groundwork for the 1982 Commonwealth Games, ensuring the successful delivery of the games from a council perspective. After his years in local government, Peter was awarded an AM to become a member of the Order of Australia for his service to local government and the community. Peter was married to Gloria, and they- Peter was married to Gloria and they had three kids, Joe, Marty and Mary Louise, he was a much-loved grandfather to Mia and Jack. We send all of our condolences to the Thorley family at this time, and once again, we thank Mr Thorley for his service to the city of Brisbane. Item A on the agenda is the annual operational plan, the quarterly financial report for March 2023. The operational plan and quarterly financial report gives an overview of a snapshot in time of the financial position between budgets. As councillors are aware, these documents come through a number of times each year to keep all of us updated on the progress of delivery, and this report shows that our capital programme continues to ramp up, with 845 million in capital works delivered to the end of March 2023 so far, and an incredible 308 million delivered between January and March alone. So that is an incredible record of delivery in just a three-month period, and it reflects what I keep saying, which is, we have provided funding to support the biggest investment in infrastructure our city has ever had, and that's not just this year, but that's over the coming period of years as well. And whether it's major projects that are happening, or whether it is road resurfacing, or whether it is building footpaths, whether it is investing in playgrounds or parks, whether it is a whole range of improvements, there is a record investment in improving assets across the city and providing upgrades. Obviously, at the heart of our capital programme are congestion and busting projects, whether it's investment in better public and active transport through new bridges, upgrades to the Mogul Road Corridor, which the officers told me they call Mister Cup, Mogul Road Corridor Upgrade Project, Mister Cup, and projects of that scale and right across the city, smaller improvements and upgrades. We've also invested over $70 million to the end of March in the smoother suburban streets programme of road resurfacing. Once again, an incredible gearing up of delivery in response to the need for improved investment, particularly following not only the floods, but also the incredibly wet couple of years that we've had recently. The statement of comprehensive income shows how revenue and expenses are tracking against the annual budget and also compares to the same period last year. Grants and subsidies are higher this year, but that's mainly due to the voluntary home buyback programme. We know that is funded by a combination of the federal and state government, and we support it with our resources and offices and we run the acquisition of homes. We also, where possible, find new uses for those homes if they're reusable as well, so where the homes can be easily and safely relocated to provide home for someone else, we facilitate that. Where the home is one that needs to be demolished, then we also organise that. Also, federal funding for Metro and the Queensland Reconstruction Authority disaster recovery funding arrangements have contributed to higher-than-anticipated revenue at this point in time, although over the longer term, we're not expecting higher-than-anticipated revenue, it's a temporary feature. This is partly offset by lower LRCI grant revenue and lower financial assistance grants revenue. And I mentioned that the temporary impact here, sadly, the lower LRCI grant revenue is now a permanent impact, because we have been advised in the budget that we miss out on all future LRCI funding. And so Brisbane has been deliberately carved out, where other councils get this funding, for unknown reasons, both Logan and Brisbane will not receive any more LRCI funding. Developer contributions that relate to development activity are higher than this time last year, but they still are lower than pre-COVID levels, so it's tracking up in terms of building activity, but it still remains below pre-COVID levels. The increase in other contributions and donations-
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
I move for an extension, seconded.
We have a motion to move for an extension for the Lord Mayor for a period of 10 minutes by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, the ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The increase in other contributions and donations relates to 123 million in contributed road assets, and so that's largely where, through the development process, new roads are built by others and then they become council assets. And that could include things like the state PDA's, so state development areas where someone else builds the asset and then it becomes a council asset, or it could include new housing estates where a developer has built the road and then it becomes a council asset as well. I know the finance chair will speak to this report further. Item B relates to the third budget review. This is the third and final adjustment to the 2022-2023 budget, and obviously in the coming weeks we'll see the new budget for the new financial year released. To reflect emerging issues and any required funding changes, we bring through three budget reviews each year. Council's operating capability for 2023, which is otherwise known as the surplus, and overall accumulated surplus, has increased in this review. Overall, the budget review sees relatively minor changes in the second budget review. I mentioned revenue increasing before in the quarterly financial report, the budget review also reflects that temporary increase in revenue, also expenses decreasing by a small amount of 4.5 million and capital increasing by 56 million. In the context of the $4 billion budget, these movements are relatively modest and are largely the result of some updated phasing of projects, some depreciation adjustments and additional revenue associated with the voluntary home buyback that I referred to before. So you can see effects across both of these reports that are related. Borrowings remain at the published level with no change expected in the end of your forecast. Mr Chair, my team is firmly focused on responsible financial management, that has always been the case for us, that will we continue, and we know that it is particularly important because year in, year out, delivering balanced budgets means that we are not going into deficit, which has to be repaid in the future. When we borrow, we borrow against assets, those are long-term assets, but we certainly don't borrow for operating expenses like we see happen at other levels of government, because in the end, that gets you into a hole. When you go into an operating situation like that, when you go into a deficit in your operating capability, you're getting into a hole, which each year becomes more and more difficult to get out, particularly when you have inflation running high, particularly when you have the cost of living pressures that we have at the moment. So we will continue to manage the budget responsibly, doing that keeps downward pressure on rates, and that is absolutely a top priority for us, it has remained a consistent priority. And once again, I say, as the finance chair has consistently reminded us, under an LMP administration, under the team I lead, we will never see the kind of 6% rate increases that we have seen time and time again under Labour. Now, those rate increases came at a time when inflation was way, way lower than it was these days, way lower. We've seen inflation running at high levels we haven't seen in decades, yet even when inflation was lower, Labour was increasing rates at a 6% level on no less than four occasions. And so we have never done that, we have never done that, and we never will, our record speaks very clearly. And in fact, very shortly after I became Lord Mayor, we announced the first rate freeze in 35 years. And in fact, the last time rates were frozen was under Liberal Lord Mayor Sally Ann Atkinson, 35 years ago. And so our record is very clear, we will absolutely continue to manage the budget responsibly, and we do that so that we can deliver for the people of Brisbane, build the infrastructure our city needs, but also keep downward pressure on rates.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks Chair, I rise to speak on both of these items, we'll debate them concurrently because they both relate to the delivery of the Lord Mayor's budget throughout the 223 financial year. And I do just want to start by agreeing with the Lord Mayor that leopards don't change their spots. It took him 17 years, apparently, to come up with some sort of explanation as to why he described public housing as slums, and he still couldn't bring himself to apologise.
Point of order, Mr Chair. I don't believe that- Still couldn't bring himself to apologise. Councillor Cassidy, you have a point of order against you. Councillor Howard.
Point of order, Mr Chair, I don't believe that we're talking about the item before us, that's not in the item before us.
Thank you, Councillor Howard. Councillor Cassidy, can I remind you that we are speaking to the items before you?
They'll do anything other than speak about housing in Brisbane at the moment, won't they, because they are failing, they are failing. You know, the Lord Mayor, I'll pick up on what he finished on, Chair, in that according to him, he's running a balanced budget because he's borrowing massive amounts, billions and billions of dollars against assets, and somehow tries to claim that he doesn't have to pay them back because they're borrowed against assets. Of course that debt has to be paid back, we see that in the papers before us, the interest repayments on that debt is massive.
Point of order.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Lord Mayor, thank you, noted.
It's massive, so he claims that his budget doesn't have a structural deficit when it clearly does, where he has to borrow a massive structural deficit. We know that the infrastructure budget for LGI items has a deficit of billions of dollars, and we know that to deliver basics in the suburbs very poorly under this Lord Mayor's leadership, he's having to borrow billions of dollars and somehow tries to come in here today and claim that that's all balanced, nothing to see here apparently, you know, don't you worry about that, that brings up some memories to a past leader of his political party, for his political party.
Councillor Murphy, councillors.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, Councillor Murphy.
Will councillor Cassidy take a question?
Councillor Cassidy, would you care to take a question?
No.
No, of course not.
Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Yeah, no, I'm sure councillor Murphy will raise his point in debate on this item. So these papers before us, these items, do tell an extremely sad story for the rate payers of Brisbane, because what we know, and the Lord Mayor said there's no sort of extra borrowing this quarter, we know because he borrowed an extra $400 million last quarter, he did all that last quarter to cover the blowouts on his inner-city projects, the massive blowouts on the metro and the massive blowouts on the Kangaroo Point Bridge, and there's little reason why, we've heard from councillor Murphy over the last few weeks, why that project is blowing out, because it had to be redesigned to accommodate a two-storey restaurant, he had to go and buy some land to put a little cafe on at the end of it, all because the Lord Mayor wanted that. The Lord Mayor's blown the budget on the metro because he went to providers, went to tenderers and said, listen, we'd love a locally-made electric bus, but you have to make it look like a tram, sorry Volgrin, you can't produce that in Brisbane, he had to go to Switzerland. So we know, we know the budget is in an absolute shambles because of the political decision that this Lord Mayor and his LMP chairs make in this place, week in, week out, they have totally lost control of this budget and their spending, and they've taken to hiding the details now, as we know, in the fine print, there's all these sort of high-level motherhood statements and explanations, but no real detail in there, because, you know, they're scared of people finding out the real details about what a mess this budget is in. And I think rate payers will have a taste, this is, I think, a taste of what's to come in another month or so when the Lord Mayor hands down his budget, we know rates are going to be up to fund cost blowouts on inner-city projects. We know it's a fact that rates have doubled under this LMP administration, but if you go and talk to an average rate payer out in the suburbs of Brisbane, if they feel like they're getting good value for money when they've got a broken and dangerous footpath in their street, seeing street trees dying left, right and centre, suburban projects being cut or delayed, their answer, no caviar for those in the suburbs, of course.
Lobster.
Or lobster, or champagne out there, they missed out, all those streets with broken footpaths. If you ask them if they feel like they're getting good value for money, their answer's no. This mob over here is totally out of touch, Chair, totally out of touch-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
With the priorities and values of-
Point of order, for goodness sake, this mob over there, what sort of language is that in this chamber?
Councillor Strung, you should be sorry. Councillor Johnson, you should also be sorry. Can I just make the point again, that if you are going to address any councillors within this chamber, as a group or as an individual, it goes through the Chair? Let me make that very clear. Councillor Cassidy, you have the call.
Thanks very much, Chair. So a budget, as we know, is a statement of priorities and values, that's what this Lord Mayor's budget is to the people of Brisbane, it's his statement of priorities and values. And our Conservative LMP Mayor clearly prioritises himself and his agenda over that of the residents of Brisbane. His two signature projects, the metro and the green bridges, are absolutely sucking this budget dry. The LMP has spent less money on 160 suburban projects than they did on the Bendy Bus Metro and the Green Bridges. They spent more on those two inner-city projects than they have on 160 other suburban projects, and those suburban projects are the ones that are delayed, they're the ones that are cut, they're the ones that are gutted to fund these inner-city projects. So that's, that before us today is a black and white proof that all the Lord Mayor cares about are his inner-city signature projects. They get him on the camera, they're the media opportunities, they're the photo opportunities, he doesn't really care about the suburbs of Brisbane, he doesn't care about the broken footpaths, or the dangerous roads, or buses not showing up in the suburbs, or rates going through the roof on his watch. The Lord Mayor is going slow on maintaining and rehabilitating suburban drainage. Maintaining and rehabilitating suburban drainage is being slowed down in this review. That's not a good look for a city that suffered through the February 2022 flood disaster just 15 months ago. There are massive underspends on key areas, Future Brisbane, which is around planning for a growing city, the Future Brisbane Programme, which is supposedly, according to the Lord Mayor, delivering new housing in Brisbane, well, they're underspending in that programme, they've slowed down in that programme. Clean, Green and Sustainable, underspent, slowed down. Lifestyle and Community Services, which delivers our Homeless Connect Programme and our Public Space Liaison Offices and Works with People Sleeping Rough, well, that programme's going slow, underspent there. City Standards, Community Health and Safety, the basics, the basics in the suburbs of Brisbane have gone slow, they're being under-delivered by this Lord Mayor. There's a total of $48 million in delays to suburban projects in this budget review, $48 million in delays to suburban projects. Councillor Atwood, councillor Allen and councillor Owen, I'm sure, were disturbed to read some of that tricky language in the fine print in there, where projects are being re-phased and re-imagined and all those sorts of things, being put on the back burner because the LMP have run out of money. The Brisbane International Cycle Park project at Murray Rees, one of those, the Nudgy Recreation Reserve in Northgate Ward, of which councillor Owen attended a public meeting I was at and guaranteed that it was all going to be, it was all going to be fast-tracked, all the things that he gutted from the project, that he personally gutted from that project, and now we see low and behold, the suburbs are missing out again, and the Palau Stormwater Infrastructure Project as well is one of those. No library out there, of course, still don't see that. I would be very worried if I was one of those suburban councillors, because it's very easy for the Lord Mayor to kick those projects down the road, they're very marginal wards, of course, as well, no less, so those councillors might have a bit of trouble explaining to their communities what's going on there. The LMP are underperforming when it comes to the basics in the suburbs, that's really clear in black and white before us, they've taken their eye off the ball in the suburbs of Brisbane, but there's one area that the budget, one area of this budget the Lord Mayor hasn't skimped on, there's one area that's surging ahead, anyone take a guess?
Oh.
That's right, advertising, marketing and communications. Yeah, Adrian from Advertising Strikes Again, of course, advertising, by the third quarter, by the third quarter, the Lord Mayor had completely maxed out the advertising and marketing budget. He's gone slow on basic services in the suburbs, but he's maxed out the credit card when it comes to advertising and marketing. So I think it's actually really quite clear that Brisbane and the residents who live in the suburbs of Brisbane cannot afford another four years of this Lord Mayor. His billion-dollar blowouts are just not acceptable, our suburbs deserve much better. It's very clear, very clear to the rate payers of Brisbane, they're paying more and getting less under the LMP.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor, your misrepresentation.
Yeah, councillor Cassidy continues to make stuff up, he claimed that, I said we didn't have to pay back debt, I didn't say that at all, that was just a complete fabrication on his part.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on both items and provide a factual account to the chamber, rather than the scaremongering of those to my right. Firstly, on item A, the annual operational plan progress and quarterly financial report at the end of March 2023. To the statement of comprehensive income, we can see how revenue and expenses are tracking against the annual budget and also as at the same period last financial year. Grants and subsidies have increased mainly due to the voluntary homes buyback programme, federal contributions to Brisbane Metro and the Queensland Reconstruction Authority disaster recovery funding arrangements. This is partly offset by lower local roads and community infrastructure and financial assistance grant revenue received so far this financial year. Developer contributions are tracking above last year's revenue but are still well down on previous years, as the Lord Mayor mentioned. The increase in other contributions and donations is related to $123 million in contributed road assets. While significant challenges in the market remain, we've rolled out $845 million in capital works in the first nine months of the financial year, with 308 delivered between January and March alone, and that is remarkable. In Programme Eight, City Governance, revenue is currently ahead of budget due to the earlier-than-anticipated receipt of some grants and subsidies from flood claims, interest revenue and lease accounting adjustments. In the annual operational plan progress report, we remain on track with our targets for local buy procurement and, of course, our social enterprise investments that we so proudly talk about at Brisbane City Council. We've also on-boarded 131 new participants to our employment pathway initiatives, bringing the total number of participants now to 384. Includes apprenticeships, pre-trade work experience trainee ships, cadet ships, tertiary work experience, graduate and emerging capabilities programmes, as well, of course, as the Disability Action at Work Project. Item B, Mr Deputy Chair, is the third budget review. In June, when the annual plan and budget is set down in this chamber, project delivery is phased based on the best possible information that we have at that time, and then it is refined as we go throughout the year with budget reviews. As per the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012, council's budget for a financial year can be amended during the financial year, and this report outlines changes since the last update last year. Overall, Mr Chair, this is a modest budget review, with fairly minor changes from the second budget review. The anticipated surplus for 30th June 2023, as approved by council, was $13.966 billion. As a result of this third budget review, the anticipated accumulated surplus will increase just slightly to $14.017 billion. Revenue for 2223 is projected to increase by $46 million, largely due to additional revenue to the home buyback scheme and also our interests on deposits. This is offset by transfers to future years for some capital revenue. There is a net increase in capital this year of $56 million, again associated with the voluntary home buyback. Finally, there is a net $4.5 million decrease in expenses being booked into this review. Mr Deputy Chair, I commend this report to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Cunningham. Are there any further speakers?
Yep.
councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on the financial and operational plan in the E N C report before us today. One thing is extremely clear about the situation of Brisbane City Council when it comes to the finances of this city, that firstly, this L M P administration, not once ever have they got up and said, we're actually doing more than we think we're going to do. Never happened. I've been here 15 years and I've heard every excuse under the sun from this lazy L M P administration who cannot deliver on their promises. They just fundamentally cannot do it. The budget before us today, as the Finance Chairperson has just confirmed, is profiting from the Brisbane floods. We're getting money in from the federal and the state government to fund council's part in the voluntary buyback scheme, and this council is making a profit from it. That's what's going on. In addition to this, we note overall Brisbane City Council is getting more revenue in through a whole variety of mechanisms, the state, the federal government, grants, lots of other options, but they are spending less and less on basic projects, essential services and the critical flood recovery that we need for our city. We are not seeing the investment that is being made in this city invested out in our suburbs. And we can see that based on the reports that have been brought forward here today. Even in their own areas now, usually it's ours, like mine or a Labor councillors', but even in their own areas now, they are actually failing to deliver on basic projects, like library upgrades and park upgrades. It's that bad. It's that bad. And the reason it is that bad is because of the leadership of this L M P administration who have gutted, absolutely gutted, council's service provision, its capability to deliver on-the-ground projects and turned council into some sort of management consultancy under the leadership of the Lord Mayor and the CEO of council, so that you try and get a footpath fixed or a tree trimmed, and it takes a year, a year to get a tree trimmed or a footpath fixed. That is what we deal with every single day out in the suburbs, every single day. Not only that, the L M P administration, who are getting more money from the state and federal government under the disaster arrangements than they expected, aren't actually investing it into the projects on the ground to do the work. So drains at Yorongah fixed that were closed? No. Cacti Blastis Corner? No. They even voted against it last week. Voted against fixing up, voted against fixing up a flood-damaged park in Brisbane. This is a park that our community fought so hard for, that the L M P in the western suburbs abandoned. That's probably why there's a green there now and why they can't retain the seat at a state level, because the L M P promised to support that community in Sherwood to protect the old Alan Fletcher Research Station, and Scott didn't last very long, rolled over in the Newman administration and allowed that land to be sold off. And now...
Point of order.
Point of order.
councillor Johnson is against attacking people who are not in the chamber to defend themselves, so I just wonder if you could rule on that?
councillor Howard, that's not necessary. councillor Johnson, would you care to either A, amend your decision from last week, or B, withdraw?
You actually said last week it wasn't a point of order when I said it, so I presume it's quite okay to do it. So, I'm sorry, if you're ruling now, Mr Deputy Chair, I want to clarify your ruling.
councillor Johnson, while I'm speaking, you cannot speak. You know that. So I dare say, what we will do is we will move forward saying that you can mention previous people from this chamber. There we go. And thank you Deputy Mayor, and I will remind the chamber that there is no privilege in this place. councillor Johnson, you have the call.
I think everybody out my way understands Scott Emerson's role in our community, and he rolled over and abandoned that community. And now, true to form, the L M P is rolling over and abandoning that community, because they don't think fixing a riverside park that our community fought so hard to protect as valuable community space should be fixed. They voted against it. And we can see that they're not investing that funding into park upgrades, because they have cut the funding and failed to deliver on the projects that are needed. This third budget review rolls over a phenomenal amount of money to 23, 24, 24, 25, because this administration...
Just sorry, councillor Johnson, just one moment, please. When you rose to speak, you did not mention that you were going to speak on the third budget review. Do you intend to speak on that?
I said I was speaking on the financial reports.
Yes, but you just mentioned the third budget review. You started talking about the third budget review, or am I mistaken?
That's a financial report.
It's item B, you only mentioned item A.
I didn't mention item A or item B, I said I was speaking on the financial reports.
I'm asking a question, are you intending to speak on it or not?
Yes, because I'm speaking on...
Okay, thank you.
Righto. I mean, if the L M P doesn't know what the financial reports are, then there's a bigger problem with that. But, let me get back to the point I was making, that there is less and less being delivered by this L M P administration. And not only that, we've heard, and this is why, this is the why of it, I think, that there is now an increase to the surplus. Brisbane City Council's going to have more money in the kitty coming into an election year than they would otherwise have expected. And councillor, the Finance Chair explained all of that when she indicated there was a big increase in the surplus, up to $14 billion, I think it was. So, what have we got? Year after year, this administration failing to deliver on their own promises. These aren't promises that are made by somebody else that council's told to deliver. Every year in June, the Lord Mayor stands up, he gets the speech, he gets to say whatever he wants, and he promises, I'm going to do this, this and this. As the year unfolds, it goes, well, we couldn't really do that, sorry about that, that's going to happen next year or the year after. And then he goes, well, we've got some more money from here, but this other L M P project in this area is not going well, so I'll invest in that instead. You cannot believe a word the L M P, Lord Mayor Adrian Schwinner says to the community of Brisbane, because his actions in managing the budget and the projects of this city show that he cannot deliver on what he promises. Not only that, when he says there are no 6% rate rises for the suburbs of Brisbane under his leadership, he is flat-out being dishonest. 6.7% rate increase for Yorongah, and it was just as high in several other suburbs in my ward. The L M P administration has set the residential rates cap at 7% for years now, and there are many suburbs in Brisbane that are experiencing huge rate rises. And they can't get intersections fixed, they can't get footpaths fixed, they can't get trees trimmed. And this L M P administration is getting more money in but can't deliver on their own promises. That's what the financial documentation before us here today shows. It also shows up that this L M P Lord Mayor Adrian Schwinner cannot, fundamentally cannot be honest with the people of Brisbane about the rate rises that have been delivered under his administration. He wants to stick to the average rates increase, and he refuses to mention the cap that he sets, that dozens of suburbs around Brisbane...
Point of order. Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted, Lord Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, he does refuse to mention, he does refuse to mention it.
Sorry, you've got the call.
Yes, I do. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you do.
So when there are dozens and dozens of suburbs around Brisbane that experience year after year, 5, 6 and 7% rates increases under this Lord Mayor, it's happened every single year. I've been here for 15 years, and not once in the 15-year period has the L M P kept rates the same or even, God forbid, decreased them. They have gone up every single year, year after year, until the fact that they have now doubled, doubled, in the same time that councillor, well, the Lord Mayor Adrian Schwinner and I have been in this chamber. They have doubled under his leadership. Finance Chair, Public and Active Chair, Deputy Mayor, Lord Mayor, he's been part of the decision-making...
councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Lord Mayor, misrepresentation.
Yes, every Lord Mayor, every administration from all sides of politics has always referred to the average rate increase for owner-occupier properties. And what I was referring to was 6% under Labor, that was the average, not the maximum, the average. And so you can only imagine what the maximum would have been under Labor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
12%, 15%, 20%.
Lord Mayor.
The reality is councillor Johnson is misleading people.
Lord Mayor. Are there further speakers? councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to enter the debate on items A and B of the Establishment and Coordination Committee. And true to form, the councillor for Tennyson is misleading again. At the time the budget was published, we expected to receive a much greater amount of revenue from both the state and federal governments for flood recovery works than has been received to date. And Brisbane unfortunately has so far not received that predicted flood recovery allocations. And as we know, we've been fighting with the state and federal governments to make sure Brisbane residents are getting their fair share of support. Despite being home to a significant proportion of Queensland's population, Brisbane is still struggling to make sure we get our fair share. That means that we haven't been able to progress delivery on certain projects earmarked to be funded by state or federal flood recovery works under Programme Five. This is the main driver for the lower-than-anticipated capital expenditure in Programme Five, and the lack of revenue received is reflected in the lower-than-anticipated revenue and capital works within this budget review. However, Mr Chair, I would like to say that our capital expenditure is behind schedule, but the magic-putting economics of the opposition doesn't seem to understand that staff and operational costs is not capital expenditure. This is also time to remind that Labor is the only one that ever demolished a library. We on this side have a strong track record of delivering new libraries and upgrading them, and just like the upgrade we're currently delivering in councillor Cassidy's ward at the Zillmere Library. We also have a mobile library at Polara, so I'll be very keen to hear councillor Strunk thanking us for that, and on that not only, further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you Deputy Chair. I rise just to speak on item B, the third review, and just for councillor Howard's benefit, Polara is actually in the Calvingale Ward. Anyway, that's fine, I'm sure councillor Owen's enjoying it. Yes. But the mobile library does come, sorry if you indulge me, Chair, the mobile library does come into Forest Lake as well. Okay, I just want to talk about a couple of line items on the review, and the first one, of course, is the cost of finance, right? That this administration keeps increasing the debt, and of course, guess what happens with the finance charges? They keep going up and up and up. And if we have a look at the revised one for this year, so far, it's gone up, you know, from $119 million to $121, so another $2 million increase. And that probably doesn't really reflect the increase in the cash rate, which we've seen go up 11 times over the last few months. Now, we do have arrangements with Queensland Treasury in regards to borrowings, right? And they're pegged for a time, but that time is running out very quickly. And I'll tell you what, just looking through the forward estimates here for finance costs, it'll jump, supposing next year, to $131 million, then $152 million, and then $155 million. And I don't think those things, I don't believe those figures are going to reflect what the actual rates actually go or the cost it's actually going to be, because I don't think it's reflected in the increase that we've already had. But I can't be, I'll stand to be corrected in that particular instance. But, of course, what it's related to, of course, is the, is our, it's actually, sorry, I've got it upside down, my apologies, is the liabilities. So this is what we owe, basically, and of course, it's made up of a number of items. But I just look at the headline figure here. So we're looking, it's increased in the third quarter, it increased from the original quarter, which was $5.871 billion, to $6.030 billion, right? And then looking through the forward estimates, it's going up to $6,331 million, which is $6,400, and it just keeps going. Unfortunately, the actual liabilities is not keeping, is outpacing our income, right? With fees and charges and rates. And if you just have a look at those two figures and then match them right through the forward estimates, we keep going backwards. But unlike us who pay... But unlike us who pay a mortgage, right, we actually pay our debt down. And yes, we borrow, we borrow a lot, but over a period of time, we pay our debt down. But this, this council, this administration for the last 20 years is just borrowing more and more and more. You know, when they came into, into governance, right, there was virtually no debt. The Sully administration virtually left them with no debt. And of course, they laugh and chuckle and all the rest of it, but we know it's true, right? So, and if I could, as I say, I just want to talk about the, you know, that income that we're not getting. And so I'll be really interested to see what the rate increase is going to be in this next budget, right? And yes, some, yes, it's capped supposedly at 7%, right? But I know, like the councillor from Tennyson, over the years, a lot of my suburbs, and these are not the ones at base rate, at the base rate, we're talking the ones that are not at the base rate, have been going up since I've been councillor, in some cases 4%, 5%. And this is when we had a CPI, which seems to be a relevant figure nowadays, by the way, of like 1% or 1.5 or 2%. So it was almost double CPI. So, you know, it'll be really interesting to see how they're going to pay for all this debt they've been accumulating with all these huge projects. And it, I don't know, it just seems, it seems to me that, you know, a thought bubble comes, and yes, we'll do Kingswood Smith, another thought bubble, yes, we'll do a metro, another thought bubble. We'll do green bridges, then we'll do Victoria Park, with no responsibility when it comes to how we're going to pay for this. And honestly, I just think this administration really has decided to just spend the money. Who cares? Someone else will be looking after that in the next administration. Unfortunately, it'll probably be us. Thank you, Chair.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the 2022/23 Third Budget Review. Chair, in this third budget review, we have seen some rephasing of revenue primarily related to the city deal funding. And although, you know, they laugh at that, Chair, and we'll get to their economic credentials in a little bit, but there has been some rephasing of revenue, as I mentioned, primarily related to the city deal funding. We know that the federal government are committed to funding the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge as part of the South East Queensland city deal. And we've been very glad to confirm that this funding is not being reconsidered as part of the recent infrastructure spending review, and that that commitment will be honoured by the current government, so we welcome that. We have made some adjustments to reflect when we now expect to receive that funding. So that is, that is a revenue reduction that's now reflected in the current financial year. This is reflected with an equivalent, equivalent increase in the forward years. And likewise, Mr. Chair, we have seen some rephasing of the capital expenditure in Programme One to better align with our project delivery. Under the Brisbane Metro project, we've brought forward capital due to accelerated delivery in some parts of the project. So, you know, for example, we've been reopening our flood damage ferry terminals. Earlier this year, we've been able to get our new and upgraded ferry terminal program back on track as a result. So there've been some capital adjustments to align with that new program of work there as well. What's important is that these changes don't reflect any reduction in the work that is being delivered. Mr. Chair, unlike what we heard from councillor Johnson, same work, rephased spending in this third budget review. And I just want to reflect on some of the comments from, you know, from councillor Cassidy. Because I remember, Deputy Chair, literally just a year ago in this budget, when interest rates were low, we had councillor Cassidy lecturing us about the cheap price of borrowing and how we should be looking to borrow more strategically, invest in things like housing and, you know, all of these other things. That was Jared the Keynesian back then, you know, we need to pump rhyme the economy. And then Labor's one government federally, now there's a new treasurer in town, Jim Chalmers. So Jared's dropped the Wayne Swan Keynesianism, and now he's...
Councillor Murphy.
He's Jared the Conservative. He wants us to pay down debt.
Can I remind you to address councillors?
Point of order.
Through... Can I remind you to address councillors with their proper title and through the Chair?
Sure thing, Deputy Chair. Councillor Cassidy is now an economic conservative. He's a bit concerned that the debt levels are too high and that that's affecting service delivery.
Point of order.
Well...
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Well, Chair, look, okay, well, that's funny. Chair, any councillor can go and get the minutes of the budget debate from 2022 budget, and they will see councillor Cassidy talking about the need to borrow strategically and, you know, get more, hock the city's finances up, get us up to our eyeballs in debt so we can build things. Then he's back in here, literally, one year later, saying how much money, you know, we've got, oh, there's so much debt in this council, no wonder rates are going up, you know. Is it any wonder, Chair, that the people of the city of Brisbane have no idea what this team opposite us stands for? Because they'll play, they'll play the line each different budget that comes along, and they'll do the TikTok, and they'll get the cheap win at the moment, but they never build up any energy, they never, they never build up any kind of force or mind share in the public about what they stand for, what they want to do, what their alternative administration is. And look, the reality is, Chair, we'll never see, we'll never see an alternative Labor administration. Because the next, if there is an alternative administration, it will be Labor and the Greens. And we know who in that relationship will be calling the shots, Chair. And we know that no one would trust the Greens to run this city's finances. So that is a very, very scary prospect, Chair. The reality is, rates will always be lower under an LMP administration. Debt will always be higher under a Labor administration. And when Labor were last in charge of this city, we spent 2/3 of this city's money on operational expenditure, just keeping the lights on, just paying public servants. And today, we spend the vast majority of our money on capital projects and on maintenance and on things out there in the suburbs that people really care about. That's the reality. They won't talk about it. But I look, I will wait and see what happens. The budget is just a few weeks away now, Chair, and we'll get to see what is the third incarnation of councillor Cassidy. Do we go from the Keynesian to the economic conservative? And then how is he going to present the next alignment with the Greens and Labor working together to form an administration in this city? I, for one, I've got my popcorn ready, and I'm very interested to see what he comes up with.
Just one moment, councillor Griffiths. Councillor Cassidy, your misrepresentation.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. I am absolutely not an economic conservative. I stand, I stand by, I stand by my words from a year ago. And I, in fact, think we should borrow to give a decent return for the residents living in the suburbs of Brisbane. My criticism in what I said in my debate was levelled at the kind of debt-funded projects, pet projects of the Lord Mayor that have now blown out by a billion dollars in the inner city. That's what I was referring to.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item A and B, the third budget review, and also, well, the financial reports that we have before us today. Can I just respond to councillor Murphy in terms of, it's very interesting the way, not just councillor Murphy, but everyone on that side of the chamber does not mention that they're members of the LMP. In fact, they never want to say LMP. Yeah. And Campbell Newman was another word that wouldn't be mentioned by people on that side of the chamber. So it was really, it has been really interesting to listen to the debate going backwards and forwards today. What I did pick up, and I'm not sure if it's the Lord Mayor or councillor Cunningham, but the figure that was mentioned were that there were 48 million worth of delays on suburban projects. 48 million worth of delays, and that was something that they were prepared to mention today. Councillor Murphy also let the cat out of the bag. He actually agreed with us. He actually said, "You know what? Under Labor, they used to spend more on delivery, on operational..." Yeah, they actually delivered more. They delivered 2/3 of the budget for the people of Brisbane.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Murphy.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
I bet you do, councillor Murphy. It's in the record there in black and white. 2/3, 2/3 of the budget was spent on delivery for the people of Brisbane. It is no wonder the people of Brisbane, in their surveys, in their polling, are finding that they're not getting value for money from this council. But what are they getting? Well, and I keep hearing it week after week after week, and I keep repeating it to my residents, it's all going to the inner city. It's all going to the inner city. We have the Kangaroo Point Bridge, we have the Metro, we have the Breakfast Creek Bridge, we have another West End Bridge, we have Kingswood Smith Drive, we have Victoria Park. We have millions and millions and millions of dollars going into the inner city, and the suburbs are forgotten about. The suburbs are forgotten about. And I'll take that, I'll take that interjection from the deputy mayor. It's the inner city you're worried about. It's those five kilometres of inner city that this money is being spent on. And anyone beyond that five kilometres of the inner city, you're forgotten about. And I know just recently, I had a meeting with the residents of Rockleigh, 50 of them showed up, to meet with the Lord Mayor. The Lord Mayor was actually meant to be there. Uh-uh, didn't show. He didn't show because he was in, where was he? Egypt. The Lord Mayor was in Egypt on a little, goodness knows what, little flight of fantasy in Egypt. He could not meet...
Councillors, please. Councillor Griffiths, can I draw you back to the report, please?
Yeah, I'm coming back to the report. They wanted to meet about clearing their creeks out. They wanted to meet about getting flooding fixed.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Lovely stream of consciousness. The reports and to the report, the relevance of this to relate specifically with item A or B.
It relates, it relates to, it relates to drainage. It relates to drainage.
Councillor Johnson, councillor Johnson, councillor Griffiths, you've got the call.
Yeah, thank you. So what I would say is that my experience in this council, and it's been 20 years here, has been that this administration has gone from providing services to cutting services in the suburbs. We're not seeing new footpaths. We're not seeing footpaths repaired. I'm not seeing drainage done. I'm not seeing drainage repaired. I'm seeing this constant lagging in the suburbs for direct services for the residents of Brisbane. And if I'm seeing it, other councillors over there will be seeing it. And there's total silence from those councils. I don't know what they say in their party room. They must just all sit there and comply. But it's what I'm seeing as a councillor who represents a large chunk of Brisbane.
Councillors, please. Councillor Griffiths, you've got the call.
Can I also say, last week, we actually heard the LMP in this chamber vote against, or not vote against, but speak against funding community facilities. Speak against funding and upgrading community facilities so they all met the same standards. They actually voted, they actually spoke against making all our community facilities accessible. They actually said, "That's not something we as a council should be doing." I challenge that view. I don't believe that. I believe there is an alternative of what we should be doing with our community facilities in terms of accessibility, but also in terms of the standard we're providing the residents of Brisbane. The other thing I'd like to speak about, and it has been mentioned as well in this report, is the buyback. And yes, it's a great thing we're doing the buyback, and it is wrong that this council stopped funding buyback in 2017 under the, under the Lord Mayor and the LMP. We were leading the way in Australia, then we vacated that space. And now it's great...
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Does councillor Griffiths, will he take a question?
No.
No, I'm sorry. Councillor Griffiths will not take a question. You have the call, councillor Griffiths.
Councillor has the opportunity to speak in her own time. I would suggest with the buyback, and once again, the LMP...
You've got the call, councillor Griffiths.
The LMP voted against extending the buyback so that we could actually buy back properties that left isolated through this program. We had the opportunity of putting a program in place that captured homes that were left through this buyback program.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Will councillor Griffiths take a question to tell us where these homes were, because no one would sell?
No.
Will he take a question?
No, I've said no.
Councillor Griffiths insists he is not taking a question.
Yes.
Councillor Griffiths, you've got the call.
I think there's great opportunities here for us to be involved more in this program rather than using it, as councillor Johnson said, as a fundraising exercise to pay for our staff. And unfortunately, we're charging the state and federal government to deliver this program. We're actually not contributing. So I think it's a real, it's a missed opportunity. I just repeating conclusion, I think this administration, this mayor, these LMP councillors are all about the inner city. They're all about big business and looking after the big end of town. And what I keep hearing from residents is that they're missing out. They're not seeing value from money from this council, and they are really sick of it. Thank you.
Councillor Murphy, your misrepresentation, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So councillor Griffiths misrepresented me when he said that I said that I congratulated the Labor Party on spending 2/3 of their money out in the suburbs, where in fact, I was admonishing the previous Labor administration of the Sully mayor for spending 2/3 of money on wages and staff costs instead. And we've actually inverted that equation. That's the point that I was making.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Landers.
Mr. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
Councillors, we have a motion before us to suspend for afternoon tea. Moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour say aye. Those against? The ayes have it. See you after afternoon tea. Thank you, councillors, and thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair, for filling in for me during the first couple of hours of the meeting today. We are in the E and C consideration, and I'm calling on further speakers. Are there any further speakers in the E and C report? No further speakers. Lord Mayor, summing up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, that's been an interesting discussion. We've been on a roller coaster where we thought for a minute that councillor Cassidy was an economic conservative. And then he very clearly claimed that he's not an economic conservative. I remember hearing some other Labor leader, well, so-called leader, Kevin Rudd claimed to be an economic conservative, and we know how that ended. But whenever a Labor leader claims to be an economic conservative, do not believe them. At least councillor Cassidy has come clean. But there are some important things that need to be corrected in terms of what was said today. First of all, councillor Johnston made the outrageous and untrue statement that council was somehow profiting from the flood. Did anyone else hear her say that? Yes, profiting from the flood. Now, we've heard some serious lily gilding happen in this place before, but this is a new low. Let's be very clear, let's be clear, let me be clear about the cost of the flood. When we went into the recovery phase for the flood, we estimated that the total cost of the flood would be $660 million. $660 million, of which only around $330 million would be recoverable through insurance claims, state and federal disaster funding, and any other funding sources. So what does that leave? That leaves a gap of $330 million. So $330 million. So the idea that somehow council is profiting from a flood, which is going to hit the bottom line, back on those original estimates of $330 million, is an outrageous claim. It is an unfair claim, and it shows no real understanding of what's going on here. Now, one thing that we have noticed, though, we've been working through the different funding sources and claims, is that we are getting, in fact, less revenue from the state and federal governments than we expected, not more. Less revenue. And what we see here, reflected in the documents today, is merely a timing issue, which is temporary. But overall, we expect to get less money back. Now, there will be... Now, there will be, uh, final adjustments made in terms of overall costings of the flood and the recovery process as we get further down the track. Uh, and obviously, we'll be in a position to release any updates to those. But I can give you the big tip. We are in no way going to be, uh, coming out of this without a significant hit, uh, to the bottom line of council. Uh, so any claim to the contrary, uh, is misleading, and it shows a serious lack of understanding, uh, of the finances of this council and also our flood recovery process. But, uh, one other thing that I was interested to hear, and look, I know it is their talking points. I know their talking points are about, um, the claim that somehow the suburbs are missing out. We know that is a completely false fabricated claim. Uh, we know that, is it eighty-six percent councillor Cunningham of all the funding? Or sixty-eight percent? Uh, maybe I'm dyslexic, but it's eighty-six percent, yes. I think in the past I've said sixty-eight percent, I was undercooking it. It's eighty-six percent of all the funding in the budget goes to the suburbs. Goes to the suburbs. Well, let's, let's talk about one of those selected areas.
No shouting out across the table.
Let's talk about the Maruk Ward. And I'm going to use, um, councillor Griffith's own social media posts in recent times, because he gets up here in the chamber and claims there's nothing happening in the suburbs, yet, uh, just four days ago, he posted about all the great resurfacing happening in Archerfield, Coopers Plains and Rockleigh. Is that because of him? No, it's because of us. We funded it in the budget. He then posts four days ago about works that are happening in Kerben Channel in streets in Salisbury, Burgess Street, Elmer Street and Debra Street, Salisbury. Is that because of councillor Griffith? No, it's because this administration funded it. Uh, he then posts just a few days before that about traffic management works happening around the Junction Park State School, uh, where there's improvements in including street lighting upgrades happening. Uh, he posts about the curbside collection coming to Nathan Salisbury and Taragindi. Is it because of the Labor Party or councillor Griffith? No, it's because we brought it back one year earlier than we said. That's why. Labor councillors, literally, they have so few runs on the board that they have to try and claim credit for other people's activities. Uh, but we know this is business as usual. Uh, we see posts about tree planting in Annalee. Uh, he's even posted about the Greenheart Fair, councillor Davis. He's excited about that. Uh, he posted about Acacia Ridge tree planting. Now, is this an initiative organized by councillor Griffith? No, it's part of the Greener Suburbs Program, which is an LMP budget initiative. Uh, he then goes to post about the Archerfield Park upgrade with a new fitness station. He then talks about track restoration, uh, works, um, through his ward in Tui Mountain Track. Is this because of councillor Griffith? No. Uh, he then, councillor Adams, posts about local retail activation toolkit. Is this councillor Griffith's toolkit? No, no. This is councillor Adams' support for small business, which they were criticizing just earlier in this meeting. I could go on and on. But his own Facebook page proves that all the claims he made about a lack of suburban investment are false, are false. And in fact, I know some of the councillors on our side of the chamber are jealous about the amount of work happening in councillor Griffith's ward. Uh, and so it is very interesting. Uh, councillor Strunk mentioned, um, a comment about debt, because we know that suddenly, uh, Labor's against debt. Uh, because the new federal treasurer has decided that he's against debt, and he wants to use that as an excuse to cut funding for roads and transport in Queensland. He wants to use that as an excuse. Now, let's have a look at the history of debt in Brisbane City Council, because councillor Strunk mentioned, um, that the Labor administration left little or no debt. That's what he said, little or no debt.
Councillors, councillors, please.
I have the budget here. This is Labor's last budget, the two thousand and three, two thousand and four budget. And it's, and apart from there being very little detail in here, uh, what did it say? It says that debt peaked under Labor at two thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars in today's dollars. Two thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. So this is, this is in the Sully years, per capita peaked at two thousand nine hundred and eighty-two. Despite our record investment in billions of dollars of infrastructure, today, debt is two thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars per capita. So the Labor administration had more debt than we ever had, but they actually didn't deliver anything for that debt. And let's have a look at the assets as well. Uh, the assets at the moment, uh, the, the community assets are now approaching thirty billion dollars, the net community assets. So that's, that's what effectively we're borrowing against for the future of our city. We only borrow to invest in assets, thirty billion dollars. We're twenty-nine billion dollars at the moment. Uh, back under Labor, when they had an even higher level of debt, sixteen billion dollars in assets. So around half the assets, and they borrowed more. So they had half of the assets, but they borrowed more. So councillor Strunk, I wouldn't be yelling so loudly if I was you, because the facts speak for themselves. They are here in black and white in the budget documents, which show Labor racked up. Well, I would say that there are some fake facts in this green document, which was Labor's budget. Um, but the reality is, Labor didn't build anything, yet they racked up more debt. This is the Labor way. Uh, we've seen it time and time again. And let's finally talk about finance costs, because in this document, in the last year of Labor administration, what was their finance costs for the year? What was their finance, what were their finance costs for the year? A hundred and twenty-seven million dollars a year in today's dollars. So that's ten million dollars a year more than the finance costs today. To build nothing! So they borrowed more, they paid more in finance costs, and they built nothing. Actually, they did build something. They built a big dump at Rochedale. A big dump at Rochedale. Um, that's the only thing, that's the only thing they built. Uh, so, Mr Chair, it's, it's been, it's been a fun discussion today, uh, and it's been even more fun to point out Labor misrepresentations.
Councillors, we now move to the vote on this report, the E and C report for items A and B. All in favour, please say aye. Anybody opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Ayes to the right, noes to the left. Ring the bells, please.
Thanks, Billy. Clarks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and six against.
Could you repeat that, please? Sorry.
Certainly, it's, uh, the ayes have it. The voting being eighteen in favour and six against.
Thank you. Declare that carrier. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, please resume your seats. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the twenty-second of May, two thousand and twenty-three, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Uh, Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, twenty-second of May, two thousand and twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It is moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, twenty-two, May, two thousand and twenty-three, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr Chair. Item A, and the only item on this special report, is the appointment of a new councillor, uh, representing the Australian Labor Party. Uh, and that councillor is Sarah Ann Whitme as the councillor for Winham Manly Ward to replace, uh, former councillor Peter Cumming. Uh, so this, uh, particular submission appoints, uh, Sarah as, uh, the councillor for Winham Manly, but also appoints her to the city standards and the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committees. Uh, and this appointment is being made under the City of Brisbane Act, where the appointment of a councillor can be made thirty-six months after the next, after the last election was held. Uh, and so, uh, obviously, this has happened before in recent times. Uh, and, uh, I, I want to say to Sarah, uh, welcome. Um, the job of a councillor is never dull. Uh, it is a challenging but also rewarding experience. Uh, and I certainly, uh, wish Sarah Ann all the best for her time during, uh, the period serving in council. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much, Chair, I rise to speak, uh, on this item. And firstly, and I think for the last time, um, not in a bad way, uh, put on record, uh, our thanks for the twenty-nine years of service for the former councillor for the, uh, Winham Manly Ward, Peter Cumming. Uh, any service to the city leaves behind a legacy of engagement and action for his community, uh, which I know will be continued. And, uh, we are very proud to support, uh, the item before us in appointing a new member, um, of our team. Uh, Sarah Whitme is with us today in the, uh, in the gallery and will be declared shortly after this meeting as the new councillor for the Winham Manly Ward. Sarah is a proud Bayside local and is keen and ready to represent them, uh, in getting their fair share. Sarah's mum raised six kids in social housing, so she understands the challenges that people face in raising a family and keeping a roof over their head. Her previous experience is an employee at the United Workers Union, fighting for some of the lowest-paid and hardest-working people in our community. And career in real estate is also an exceptional sounding board for what's happening in the real world and out and about in her community. People want for their council to be focused on the basics in the suburbs of Brisbane and on service delivery. They're sick of being forgotten in the outer suburbs of Brisbane. Having spoken with Sarah, uh, she will tell you she loves the Winham Manly Ward and the Bayside community. She'll tell you that it's a beautiful place to live, almost as beautiful as the Northern Bayside, of course. Uh, sorry, I had to chuck that one in there. Uh, she also knows, though, that for too long, this Lord Mayor and his LMP team have focused, we've just been discussing that, focused on themselves in the inner city. The LMP have been in power for twenty years, and residents across Brisbane know it's time for change. Sarah's ready to hit the ground running, to listen to and engage, and engage with her community and represent her community. Uh, I know she wants to see more equitable access to housing, better services in the suburbs, better waste management, like Fogo, better public transport, more accessible footpaths, and action on suburban congestion. Importantly, she'll work hard every day as a strong voice for her community, is a proud member of the Labor team, to make sure residents know that they deserve much better than this LMP administration gives them. She will be a strong voice for her community in City Hall, not City Hall's voice out in her community.
Further speakers? No further speakers? Lord Mayor?
Uh, thank you. Uh, well, I was, uh, gracious and welcoming, uh, for the new councillor. Unfortunately, councillor Cassidy, true to form, tried to play party politics here. Um, so, uh, it is a real disappointment. Uh, but I will use this opportunity to point out the incredible delivery that's happened in the Winham Manly Ward under the LMP. Uh, and it's happened despite, uh, the absolute, uh, long-term neglect of successive Labor councillors over a long period of time. Uh, and so, uh, the, uh, the things that have been claimed as Labor achievements are all in fact LMP achievements. Uh, whether it is, uh, the creation of new revitalization in the, uh, Winham Town Centre. Uh, this was initiative of this administration and its predecessors. Uh, whether it's the construction of a new library, uh, in Winham, this was our side of politics that delivered. Whether it was the upgrading of the foreshore, uh, to make it, in fact, one of the most popular parts of Brisbane for people to come and visit, uh, and spend some time. These were all things that were done by this administration and its predecessors. And so anything else is a completely false rewriting of history. Uh, and councillor Cassidy knows this. Uh, he should stop playing petty politics. Uh, I think we should all, at a time like this, put those party politics aside and welcome a new councillor in a non-partisan way, councillor Cassidy. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Lord Mayor, we move to the vote on this, uh, item. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and the Brisbane twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Let me now just put my piece of paper somewhere. There it is. I move that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the sixteenth of May, two thousand and twenty-three, be adopted. Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, sixteen, May, two thousand and twenty-three, be adopted. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. And as I do every week, I'll be speaking about lots of things in my portfolio, and particularly what is being held at the Brisbane Business Hub through the workshops and mentoring program, which we now know has helped over twenty thousand businesses since two thousand and twenty. Those businesses that are run by mums and dads right throughout every suburb in this city. Every suburb in the city. And who else do they hire in these businesses? Mums and dads and the kids and the students from every suburb in the city. So in the Business Hub this week, we saw a pulse check, or what's coming up, sorry, on the twenty-fifth, is the Pulse Check, Business Chamber Queensland's latest business sentiment data, being, uh, directed by HiFam and Michael Merlo, talking about how timely and a comprehensive snapshot of Queensland business sentiment can give some critical insights into the opinions of business owners and how BCQ, as CCIQ is now named, how BCQ can support them. Uh, also on the twenty-fifth, from nine o'clock, we have improved productivity and profitability for your business. And this workshop helps everyone at all levels in their business to feel empowered to identify and eliminate inefficiencies. And that is being delivered by our partner, Stephen Kusalki. And then on the thirtieth, at twelve P M, decision-making for personal and professional success. If you want to cruise through your day, wouldn't that be nice? Easily making decisions, feeling energized and authentically connecting with people. Uh, come and listen from Belinda Chapman, uh, our business expert on how to set yourself up for success by aligning your multiple brains. So that's just this week in the Business Hub, um, where everybody is welcome. Of course, it is a drop-in centre from nine to four every weekday as well. For anybody who wants to come in and drop in, we also have the Northgate, um, Suburban Business Hub as well. And I am very, uh, pleased to be able to stand and talk about our committee report that we had last, uh, week in committee. It is the only thing on the agenda, uh, Mr Chair, as every other committee has been since the City of Brisbane Act, is you have a committee report and that's what you talk about. I just, I'll take an interjection from councillor Griffith on shame. I'm not quite sure what else he wants us to have on the agenda other than the committee report.
Excuse me, deputy mayor, point of order to you, councillor Griffith.
Yeah, it wasn't me.
I apologize, councillor Griffith. I, I presumed, maybe it was councillor Strunk. I apologize, I presumed it was councillor Griffith, usually yelling across the chambers at me. Whoever interrupted, I'm not quite sure what else they expect except the committee report, in a committee report. But, more than happy, I'm happy to take a question if they could tell me what else they want to see on the report that I could add to it. We only do one report a week, it comes to council the week later. So the report last week was a presentation on our biggest dining event for CBD restaurants that's being held through June, supported by Beta, um, Dine B and E. So it was actually started three years ago, uh, in two thousand and twenty-one, after we were just coming out, the worst of COVID, and we had so many people still working from home. We still have that, but the numbers are coming back. And we really needed to think how we could support our food and beverage industry within the CBD, who were struggling without the feet on the street from the CBD, um, businesses. So Dine B and E was a way to come up with fantastic experiences at a very, very reasonable price. So people from all over the city, right out to Deegan and Winham, Pullen Vale, could come in and experience one of the many fantastic offers that are there at a variety of price points. There is this year a hundred and ten experiences that they can pick from. There is lunches, there is supper clubs, there's feasts, there is dinners. The lunches start from nineteen dollars, and a three-course dinner with a drink starts from forty dollars. A very reasonable experience for a CBD restaurant. There is something for everyone. I see the opposition wants to keep making the lurid suggestions that this is about champagne and caviar. This is about supporting our local businesses in the CBD who hire local residents from out Brisbane. out Brisbane. Believe it or not, ALP councillors, through you, Mr Chair, but the food and beverage industry is jobs for Brisbane people. It is jobs for Brisbane people. And what we've seen in May already this year is seventy million dollars into the economy from events like NRL Magic Round, the Truck Show, which saw a twelve, twenty percent increase in foot traffic, Pan Yiri coming back again. It's about supporting local business. They are laughing hysterically to my right, through you, Mr Chair, because they don't get it. We just heard the strong economics on how it works when you have debt, and now we're hearing how we don't support businesses if they're in the inner five Ks because they're not in a suburb. It is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. Because if you understand how GDP works when the most of the turnover is in the heart of the city, you need to support the heart of the city so the rest of the city does well. And hospitality is jobs. And hospitality is jobs for locals. And when restaurants close down in the city, they close down jobs to our locals. So I make no apologies for being the Chair of Economic Development. To support events like this is for June, coming off the back of a huge month, to try and keep people coming in, running over school holiday period, come in, enjoy it on the school holidays. There is a price point for everybody. No, you do not need to pick the sixty-five-dollar Dona Chang, may not be your cup of tea, but a forty dollars for three courses and a drink is not a bad option for a couple if you'd like a night out and to try something different. The hypocrisy of them thinking that they have the economic credibility to run this city and then have this argument against me by supporting the inner city is amazing. And surprisingly, most of the stuff I look after is the inner city because my portfolio is the Olympics and Paralympic Games, which is predominantly happening within the inner five Ks. And my portfolio and my responsibility is the planning within the inner five Ks. So that is my job. Just it is like councillor Marks's job to look after waste and resources and councillor Howard, who does so much in our community events. We couldn't do both between those, between economic development and the community events. That is what we do on this side of the chamber. We share the load, we work for the city and we make Brisbane a better place tomorrow than it is today. And I recommend the report to the chamber.
Further debate, councillor Johnston was first.
Oh yeah, sorry. I just, right, I rise to speak on item A, the only item in the report before us today. And it's, it's really, really incredibly sad to see that the LMP administration is so out of ideas and now out of the chamber. The deputy mayor has left. I...
Councillors, please. Councillor Johnston, you have the floor. Councillor Marks, please.
I am, I am astonished that what I heard earlier today was responded to in the way it was as part of this presentation. I don't, I wasn't at this committee report, but if somebody was promoting champagne and caviar and oysters using council funding, that is wrong. It is wrong. It is absolutely wrong. And I understand that we need to support businesses. And the unfortunate problem with the LNP is the brain space appears to be that small that they don't get that. You can support businesses, but you don't have to support it the way the LNP say it should be done. So let me be very upfront with this. And here's some advice for the deputy mayor, who has a responsibility to the whole city, not just the inner five Ks, as she's just kept telling us over and over and over again. I mean, does she even know that there's an Olympics venue out in my ward in the Middle Ring suburbs? I mean, is that just going to be forgotten? That there is actually Olympic stuff outside of the CBD ring? Because she doesn't seem to know, which is disappointing. However, there's only one item on the agenda because this is an LMP administration that has lost all energy for the job, that has no fresh ideas, that has no vision and has utterly failed, utterly failed to support the city. Now, councillor, councillor Adams...
Councillor Murphy, please.
Councillor Adams has...
Councillor Murphy.
That's all right, we can add him to the list of turn your back, click your fingers, shout, it's all fine. You can, you can tell from what the LNP is saying that their only interest is about spruiking up the CBD businesses. Now, out my way, local shops and cafes actually employ people, people who can walk to work or ride to work and take the pressure off the inner city congestion that we're facing. Is there any support from the LNP during, during Dine BNE city? Is there any support for any food-related activities out in my ward? No. Is there any support for any free food activities as part of this proposal for the city, either in the CBD or outside the CBD? Not that I'm aware of, it's not mentioned in here. In fact, the deputy mayor has simply reconfirmed that you can have lunch for nineteen dollars. So does she think, does the deputy mayor think that the ordinary worker in Brisbane has a hundred dollars a week to spend lunching in the CBD? How out of touch is somebody that thinks that's how people spend money? They don't. People are bringing sandwiches from home, they're not eating, they're having a piece of fruit. Maybe they're worth supplying food for them. There are some people, obviously, who can afford to do this without question. And I'm sure these are great options for them. But there are people who are doing it tough. And the problem here is the LNP does not recognise that. It does, does not compute, either from the question and the answer we heard earlier today from the deputy mayor, that was frankly staggering, to defend such a tone-deaf response in the middle of a cost-of-living crisis in the way that she did was appalling. But here's some ideas for the LNP who are out of ideas and out of time. Fund some free activities for people in the city. Make sure that they can get good quality food on the way through to work. Have some activities out in the suburbs where small businesses are shutting down because they can't get enough staff, the rents are too high, and where people can actively participate in their local community and take pressure off, off the congested roads network that we have in this city. I mean, you can't get to the city on a bike from my area because there's no bikeways anywhere, not a sausage, not one. It's interesting, isn't it? We'll get to that when we debate the, the bridge in a minute. It's clearly recognised in the material, there's no bikeway infrastructure. People in my area can barely get to Indrapilly. The tone deafness of this administration and their defence of the undefensible here is shocking.
Yes.
So let's, let's just give the deputy mayor a few ideas here. You don't just need one thing on your agenda. And if that's what she thinks her job is, she should quit now. She should quit now. Other chairs managed to bring forward lots of other things, whether it's petition responses, there's plenty of things that you can be doing. The deputy mayor, of course, is not doing any of these things. Are we seeing her leading any petitions? No, we're not. Are we seeing any other ideas coming through from her? No, we're not. We're seeing her defend her own agenda, which is out of touch with the values and the needs of this city. And that is what is so disappointing. I don't think Dine BNE is necessarily a bad thing, but the problem with the LNP administration is the scope of it is all wrong, it is supporting the wrong initiatives. And if the deputy mayor thinks that everyday workers are spending a hundred bucks a week on lunch, then she's really, really out of touch with what's going on in the city. So I just say to the LNP, you have failed yet again on something that's supposed to be a positive for the city. It only funds inner-city restaurants, it only funds expensive options, it doesn't fund anything free or low-cost. And, and there is absolutely nothing in here other than what the deputy mayor says, which is about pumping money into CBD businesses. That is not the only way to support the city. We can have a thriving city when we focus on neighbourhoods that are strong and resilient. And the LNP is systematically destroying them all over Brisbane. And this is another great example of it.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Oh, yes, thanks very much, Chair. I thought other councillors might speak on this, particularly councillor Hutton, who's very, very interested in some of those lunch deals. Last week, we were discussing this in committee.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Hutton.
Claimed to be misrepresented from that disgusting behaviour across the chamber.
You haven't spoken, councillor Hutton, unfortunately, but councillor Cassidy, if I can ask you to come back to the report, please.
Oh, yeah, when we're discussing the report, the, the LNP councillors were extremely interested in those lunch deals. There were, it's a public meeting, I don't think they could dispute that. And, and I guess, you know, councillor Collier and, and my disinterest in this programme that the deputy mayor brought has led to, to the deputy mayor levelling a charge of class warfare against us today. That's the deputy mayor's response to us saying this probably isn't the most appropriate thing for this administration to be bringing here in the midst of a cost-of-living crisis and a housing crisis. The deputy mayor has claimed today, Chair, that her job in council is to just look after the CBD and the inner five K ring. As part, and, and, and the deputy mayor said that's as part of the economic development part of her portfolio and the Olympics part of her portfolio. So as if it's nothing to do with the Olympics, it'll happen outside of the five K ring of the CBD. Yeah, that's right, even Holland Park Ward is if it included an economic development portfolio of Brisbane anymore. And yet, today, we, we, we were educated about things happening in Nunda as part of the economic development portfolio. Pretty sure that's a bit further than five Ks from the CBD. And, and yeah, she mentioned Wynham too, which I think is five Ks, more than five Ks out of the CBD. So the, and Morning Side as well last week, the week before. So I think deputy mayor's a little confused about what her role is here. But in the years, in the years since this committee was set up, I think it was 2021, and the Lord Mayor and the deputy mayor claimed this committee had to be set up in preparation for the Olympics. They added on economic development, took that from the finance portfolio and added economic development to this new committee. But this was all about preparation for the Olympic and Paralympic Games in 2032. That's what we were told. This committee is costing the ratepayers of Brisbane two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to exist. So two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to have an extra committee here in council chair.
Councillor Cassidy, I don't believe the economics of this committee is mentioned in this report. Can I bring you back to the report, please?
Sure. So the report before us today, Dine BNE, of which the deputy mayor said is exclusively about the inner city, is...
Point of order, claimed to be misrepresented.
Point of order, point of misrepresentation noted, deputy mayor.
A bit weird. The Olympics committee, I think, has had two, maybe three presentations about the preparation of the Olympics since 2021. So what we get from the deputy mayor are presentations about fancy lunches in, in the city. We have one about bins in Queen Street Mall, I do recall that one. Unemployment rates, a dataset from the ABS presented to us in that committee, of course, the best lobster lunch in Brisbane. That's what the, the deputy mayor's brought to us today. So we do get a sense from this presentation before us today about the priorities of the LNP and the priorities of the deputy mayor. In her own words, it's the CBD of Brisbane.
Please refer to councillors by their title, please.
In the deputy mayor's own words, the deputy mayor's priorities are the CBD only.
Point of order.
Deputy mayor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Again, thank you.
So right now, right now, Chair, it's undeniable that we are in the midst of a cost-of-living crisis that is hitting families right across Brisbane and every suburb of Brisbane and in the CBD as well. Every day of the week, people can't afford a rental property, even if they can find one, they can't afford to fill up their cars to drive around, they are struggling to, to live in the most basic way, day in, day out. And the deputy mayor thought the most appropriate thing to bring to council was a presentation around lobster lunches and champagne and caviar and good deals for lunch, one of which was a hundred and thirty dollars for a lunch deal. I've heard some pretty harrowing stories over just the last few days, in fact, from families having to make that choice between paying their rent and putting food on their table. Their food story isn't about where they can get a good lunch deal in the CBD, their food story is about whether they can feed their kids or keep a roof over their kids' heads. I was talking to an organisation in councillor Allen's Ward just last week, and they've seen a massive increase in the number of families who have a rental home coming to secure weekly food for their families because they have to make that tough decision as to whether they pay the rent or whether they put food on their table. So we know from so much today, but this is just such a clear example of the LNP's priorities for the residents of Brisbane. It's themselves, it's the inner city, but it's never just ordinary people. And, and when we raise these issues and when we raise the, the fact that the deputy mayor is not bringing important things to, to, to the deputy mayor's committee and the Lord Mayor is not leading on critical issues, we get accused of being class warriors. Well, okay, if we want to engage on that, then they clearly just believe in, you know, nineteen eighties trickle-down economics. If you look after the very, very top, maybe someone out in the suburbs gets a crumb. That's the argument that the deputy mayor has levelled today. So I'm not sure whether those families who are struggling in their decisions, those thousands of families, as to whether to buy groceries this week for their families or to pay the rent this week care much about a hundred and thirty dollar lunch deal. I'm sorry, I, I just don't think they do. I just don't think they do. I think the deputy mayor has lost touch with the real world. To get up here and to say that, that her job is the CBD of Brisbane...
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Thank you.
It's a real shame that, that the deputy mayor of Brisbane thinks that this is the highest priority for this LNP administration. I, I get that the deputy mayor can't decide what goes to ENC, that's a decision for the Lord Mayor to bring those decisions. All those committee chairs have to participate in those discussions. But what comes as a presentation to these committees is a decision of the chair of those committees. It's about the only thing they really do. Yeah, under, under the City of Brisbane Act, really, like, you know, to, 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 to control what comes through that committee, to show what the values are and the priorities are of this LNP administration. And the best that the deputy mayor could come up with was a long lunch. I, I think that's a real shame for the people of Brisbane.
Deputy mayor, your claims of misrepresentation, are there three?
There was three. The first one was that Dine BNE is only about the city. I did not say that. I said it's in the city, it's about everybody who may be employed in the city and anybody who may be employed in those businesses. He also said twice that I claimed my job is only about the CBD. I said the CBD is important for our economy and I said I oversee the planning within the CBD area.
And, thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on this item. And there's three words that occurred to me three times, and that was equity, equity, equity. There is no equity for those suburban eateries that are not going to be able to participate. And, and I agree with councillor Johnston that this, this isn't a bad programme. I mean, to promote an area of eateries, right? But what about those eateries out in the suburbs that actually pay rates like the ones in the city? And they deserve the same opportunities to participate in a programme like this. So why not roll it out? I mean, if, if this is such a great programme, now that COVID's over and numbers are climbing back, if this is such a great programme, why not roll it out across the city in some fashion or form? Because I can assure you, the more than thirty Vietnamese restaurants in my ward, not to mention all, all the other cultural-type restaurants in my ward, and they're, and they're increasing as development happens, they deserve the same equity as those here in the CBD, all right? They pay their rates and they should have the same opportunities. And this is not about class warfare, quite frankly, and I, and I really take exception to the fact that the deputy mayor is, is labelled that on our... And I really take exception to the fact that the deputy mayor has labelled that on our side of the chamber as class warfare, because it's not. It's equity for those restaurants that should have the same opportunities as the ones here in the CBD and inner city suburbs. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Deputy mayor, summing up.
Thank you. Love to sum up and just get some of this hyperbole sorted out. What I heard, thank you councillor Strunk, and also from councillor Johnson, not a bad programme, but I'd do it differently. I think I heard from councillor Johnson, it's not a bad programme as long as the deputy mayor has nothing to do with it, but that's her personal problem, not mine. And I'll take.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnson.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Yeah, noted.
It'll be interesting. Look, this is ridiculous. The spin they're trying to get out of this to somehow make that we're out of touch and we don't understand that these meal deals and lunch deals is not a great thing to get people into the city. I agree. Somebody said, yes, some people will be able to afford it, but not everybody. Absolutely not, because guess what? We're not forcing people to go to lunch and we're not forcing people to dinner. And if they don't want to go, they don't have to go. But it is a way that we can encourage people to come and support our businesses in the city. But I can assure you one thing, if it comes down to the choice of having to pay your rent or your businesses being shut down, if you're employed in one of these restaurants and they shut down, you won't be able to pay your rent. So it is about employment, and that is the part that councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnson are not hearing. This is about keeping these restaurants, these businesses, the food and hospitality in this one month programme in the CBD. We have been running local business partnership initiatives across the city for the eight years that I have been in council. And some of those programmes have had restaurant package deals. We gave a grant to the terraces when councillor Lamattick's programme in 2017, 2018, they decided what they wanted to do was exactly what we're talking about in Dyn BNE, and they did that programme. Winham CBD will have the same opportunity if that's what they like to do. We are out in the suburbs delivering that through economic development. I never said my role is the inner city. I said my role through the Olympics and Paralympics is planning within the 5Ks, planning. We're talking city planning, planning. But there are venues right across the city. But as soon as you become planning outside the 5Ks, we have a planning chair who is doing amazing things in suburban renewal. But this is the nuance they don't understand, that as a team, we are delivering for the whole of the city. I did take the interject, I'll take the comment that we were commenting about some of the lunch deals that looked okay. We try and keep it light and friendly in our committee, however councillor Cassidy never speaks. And well, one thing he never speaks in his general business, which I ask every single week, is there any further general business? All he has to do is ask what in my portfolio would he like a report on? Because I have always, always presented.
Councillors, please.
I have always presented a committee report when a councillor from either side of the chamber has asked for that report. You could go back and check over the last 10 years. I have always presented a report if something was asked within my portfolio that I could do that presentation. But it is crickets. They don't ask questions. Councillor Collier has asked, and that's the first questions I've had from the opposition in four years. They don't ask questions. I'll take the interjection from the council of Tennyson. Apparently it's councillor Cassidy's job. Didn't say it was his job, but don't whinge that he doesn't get what he wants if he doesn't ask for what he'd like to see through you, Mr Chair. It's very simple. I present every, I'm sorry, now I'm supposed to be, it's my fault, through you, Mr Chair, that I can't mind read.
Point of order. Point of order to you, councillor.
I was speaking to councillor Cassidy, actually. It's his fault.
I don't think that was a point of order, councillor Johnson.
Every term, I do a presentation from the four areas in my portfolio, which is economic development, international relations, BEATDA, which is that this one was, and from the Olympic host city. We've still got two, I hear a June 9 interjection from councillor Cassidy, you can go back and check. Go back and read the minutes, councillor Cassidy. Every session has at least one presentation from each of those areas. It's as simple as that. They can make up the lies as much as they like in this place, but they can't actually produce it with the facts. If there is something that the councillors in my committee would like to see a presentation which is in my portfolio, more than happy to present it.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
But I will not be shamed, and that's what they've been trying to do here. Talk about bullying a female councillor. What I've been called this afternoon is.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnson.
That's the second time I've been misrepresented, and I certainly haven't bullied anybody here today, so I'd ask.
I didn't hear your name being mentioned, councillor Johnson.
I spoke earlier today and councillor Adams is misrepresenting what I said in my speech earlier today, so I'm claiming misrepresentation.
Well, you've got a claim of misrepresentation.
Thank you. And I'm also now asking you to get her to withdraw the statement that I, somebody who's spoken here today, has been bullying her in some way.
Councillor Johnson, the deputy mayor did not mention your name.
She did. That is exactly, well, it's everybody.
Councillor Johnson, please.
No, it is not okay for councillor Adams to throw out a claim that people are bullying her when we are talking on a report here today. And I spoke on the report and gave ideas about how it could be better. Now, that is not bullying. It needs to be clear from you, Mr Chairman, that speaking to a report is not bullying.
Councillor Johnson, I don't uphold your point of order. Deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. How people perceive themselves being bullied are very different because we get it thrown back at us all the time. I clearly heard that I am shameful, I am out of touch and I'm appalling. From various councillors on the other side, I feel bullied and that's all there is to it and I will not withdraw it.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnson.
At no point did I say any of those things about councillor Adams. And she is misrepresenting what I have said in this place.
Councillor Johnson, I don't uphold your point of order. You have a point of misrepresentation. Oh, sorry, my apologies, councillor. Deputy mayor.
I was just being polite and sitting when there is a point of order. Sorry, Mr Chair. So that's how it is. I've been yelled at and screamed at across the chamber today. I wasn't here, but I heard it and I felt bullied. But it apparently doesn't matter when you're the deputy mayor, how you're treated in this place. It only matters how they're treated, not how we're treated. But I will not be shamed into saying I won't support an event that happens in the CBD that has the opportunity to bring in millions in economic development and return in the city, supply jobs and employment for residents right across the city. And this is one programme of a myriad that we propose. And I look forward to some suggestions in general business on what they would like to hear if they feel like they've been missing anything in my committee in the future. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson, your point of misrepresentation?
Yeah, there are two. Firstly, councillor Adams said that I said that this portfolio, she's leaving again, would be better if she wasn't in it. I made no such statement about that whatsoever. And I spoke to the need to do this better by making free events and more events in the suburb. And on the second point of misrepresentation, councillor Adams has claimed that me and other councillors on this side of the chamber bullied her. She said vile and false things about us. It is outrageous that she is able to stand up and do that when no such statements were made. No such statements were made by me or by anybody as far as I'm aware. It's just outrageous that she is doing this.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. You're now debating it. Thank you. We move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of May 2023 be adopted.
Seconded. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Pung that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday 16th of May 2023 be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Chair. Last week in Transport Committee, we heard from representatives from Transport for Brisbane about the rollout of full bus driver barriers in our buses. Councillors will remember that in January, the state government committed funding to improve the safety of drivers across the South East Queensland bus network. This announcement followed an increase in what I would call safety incidents reported by bus drivers, particularly on routes 100 and 110, which is the city to Forest Lake and the city to Anala. It's, of course, horrifying for any of us councillors to hear of attacks in these numbers occurring on our bus networks. Our drivers have reported a number of youths particularly yelling, verbally abusing drivers and passengers as well, spitting, throwing and smashing objects on the bus, as well as fare evasion, Chair. We know right now there is a youth crime wave happening across the state and clearly we're starting to see this spill over into our public transport network. Since 2017, council has enhanced safety on Brisbane's bus network. We have included upgrades to emergency exits, we've added additional signage, emergency response vehicles, we have extra security guards, and we've installed bus driver protection barriers on all of council's 1,200 buses. Other safety measures that we have implemented include CCTV, duress alarms, anti-shatter windows, as well as training and support programmes. We like to teach our drivers how to de-escalate situations rather than to get involved in them. And we certainly don't train our drivers to do the job of police or security. That's not what they're there for. They're there to drive the bus, quite simply, Mr Chair, and that's what we want them to be doing. But in the wake of increased safety incidents and the wake of this, these, I would say that this crime wave which is occurring across the state, we have taken some extra steps to drive change and to make sure that our bus drivers are safe when they're out there on the network. And we know, because we've been calling on the state government for many, many years now to increase the number of senior network officers, that is essentially, Chair, the transit police on our network on a permanent basis for many years. It's the state government's senior network officers who have the power to issue fines, to detain offenders and to take people's details down. And in January, we finally saw a response to those calls. Another safety feature that can be added is, of course, full driver barriers. That is barriers that enclose the driver in a separate compartment. Part of the state government's announcement included $2.6 million in funding to install full barriers in some of our bus fleet, and we very much welcome that support from the state government. Although our fleet is already fitted with partial barriers, we have already trialled full barriers in our electric buses. So we could not only gauge the level of protection that they provide for drivers, but also the impact on the driver's comfort and their ability to safely operate the bus. Feedback from drivers was initially quite mixed, but we've worked collaboratively with drivers and the union, the RTBU, to resolve issues such as glare and reflectivity. And I'm pleased to say we have landed on a design that our drivers support. We've made a number of modifications to the vehicles themselves to accommodate the barriers. Mr Chair, 23 vehicle modifications, in fact. For example, to combat glare, we install cameras on the vehicles to support the rear and side mirrors to make sure the drivers have full visibility around the vehicles. We've also had to design solutions to door access and the positioning of ticketing machines and cash trays. We have said for some time, Chair, that we plan to make full barriers standard in our future bus procurement. That is absolutely something that we plan going forward. However, thanks to this additional funding, we will be able to fast-track that process and retrofit barriers into some of our existing fleet. We're not exactly sure, but it will be between 150 and 200 buses, which will be a really great outcome for those buses. As councillors saw in the presentation, we've been using the full protective barrier and the rear view camera system installed in our electric buses as the, as I guess, the basis for this rollout, the baseline of where we want to get to. But we must understand that retrofitting barriers to existing buses is not an easy task. We have 13 different types of bus in our fleet, and that means it will take us some time to custom-design barriers for each different bus. And we are, of course, at this stage not even aware that we will be able to fit these barriers to every bus. In fact, at this point, we've only been able to complete the design on the MAN gas buses. So there is a lot of work that yet needs to be done on this, Mr Chair. But I will say, the good news is we've already started work on retrofitting those buses that service the Route 100 and the Route 110, which operate out of the Willowong Depot. And we produced a number of prototypes. We're continually engaging with drivers and the union on feedback on that barrier. And on Sunday, we actually closed consultation with those barriers and they've completed a number of questionnaires. We're still in the process of collating that final feedback, but the early support is very good for these new barriers, Chair. And so we'll start to progress to manufacturing, and I hope that we'll be installing these barriers in the coming months to complete that rollout by the end of the year, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there further debate? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. Rise to speak on this item before us today. And from the outset, I want to congratulate our hard-working council bus drivers, the RTBU, their union, and my Labour colleagues for keeping up the fight on this here in council and the state Labour government for funding this, 100% of this rollout. Drivers and their union have been crying out for barriers for years and years and years. A full barrier, full driver protection. The horrific attack that sadly took the life of Manmeet Sharma shook Brisbane's driver workforce. This tragedy would, you would have thought at the time, result in immediate action. But here we are, almost seven years later now, finally seeing some outcomes on driver protection and their safe work environment. As we saw patronage go down during the Covid pandemic, assaults and abuse continued to rise. Drivers are continuing to be punched, kicked, spat on at alarming rates. There's still a very long way to go. While it does pain me to say something like "I told you so" in a situation like this, it feels like we have to say that a lot lately. And we have to see this LMP administration dragged kicking and screaming to an outcome. Councillor Murphy and before him councillor Shrinar, in that role, in the public transport role, said drivers didn't want full barriers. Consistently for years, LMP public transport chairs said drivers did not want full barriers. But now we have heard how overwhelmingly positive the consultation with drivers has been about the rollout of full driver barriers. The presenter in the committee remarked that he had never seen the kind of support during this driver consultation on any other proposal ever before. These full driver barriers received the highest level of support from Brisbane bus drivers. So I think either councillor Murphy had no idea previously, or he did and he was lying about it. One or the other. And I hope, I hope we'll find out, and I hope in his summing up, he will clarify and he will correct the record on that. Let's not forget as well, councillor Murphy did describe bus drivers having cosy jobs in Brisbane through the Covid pandemic. The Lord Mayor, when he was the public transport chair previously, claimed at the time when we first started raising this that driver barriers would cost $200,000 per bus to retrofit an existing bus. So the LMP said it couldn't be done on existing buses operating on trouble routes because they said it would cost far too much. And councillor Shrinar said it would be 200 and up to $250,000 per bus. We now know that after they actually did the work to find out how much it would cost, it's about $15,000 per bus. At the time, they made a tangential sort of argument that driver's safety was a bit too expensive at $250,000 a bus. Well, now we know the truth. It was actually only $15,000 a bus. So all those drivers, over all those years gone by now, who have been punched, who have been kicked, who have been spat on, all for $15,000 a bus. That's all. So either the Lord Mayor had no idea and did no work, or he was lying at the time. It has to be one or the other of those two. So meeting after meeting, when we've raised over the years driver's safety and full driver barriers, the LMP treated it like it was a joke. They were laughing in drivers' faces every time we raised that. Our Labour team has consistently worked alongside drivers, their union, the RTBU, whether it be on petitions for driver safety upgrades, public rallies, meetings. be on petitions for driver safety upgrades, public rallies, meetings. But the Lord Mayor and the LMP continued to refuse to act and it has now taken state government funding to make this a possibility. We're still seeing this LMP council not put anything into this. So it is confirmed, I think, that the Lord Mayor, the current Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy have no idea or lied all those years ago, which is really disappointing. This really shows that the lack of care and commitment and compassion to our frontline workers that this LMP council has. When seven years ago, they could have started this process, they could have started rolling out full driver protection barriers for a cost of $15,000 per bus. And one of the reasons, Chair, that it has been proven to be so affordable and so achievable is because our amazing in-house council staff in Transport for Brisbane have completed this work. So they did the consultation, the design and the delivery of this project in-house. So council workers doing their work, totally supported by the state government of course through funding. So that also meant that all these barriers got up and running months and months and months ahead of the private sector delivering this. And that was, that was confirmed as well by the presenter, he was really proud of that work and we passed on our congratulations as well, that when you do that kind of basic work in-house and you have a skilled workforce, like we still do clearly in Transport for Brisbane, not so much other divisions within council because they've been gutted, have the ability to roll out those basics. There's nothing more basic than providing a safe work environment for a council employee, it can be done. It can be done and it should have been done years and years ago. They are now ahead of schedule, what a novel scenario. When you do the basic council work in-house and deliver projects, you can deliver them on time and on budget. Congratulations again to that team in Transport for Brisbane. They, they beat external contractors at every single turn when it comes to delivering this important safety upgrade for council employees. You know, if only, if only we had a Lord Mayor administration that would extend that benefit to other parts of council as well. But unfortunately, we know that after two decades of contracting out, privatization and casualization, that isn't the reality for most of council. This is a really good outcome. To know that with that state government funding, we're going to see 150-ish or so buses on routes that start and finish primarily in councillor Strunk's area that have been known for a very long time to be of a real safety concern to drivers and passengers on those routes. You know, all those years, the LMP said it was too hard, they couldn't afford it. And low and behold, we've got an in-house team working on an innovative solution backed by the state government, we're getting an outcome. What does that tell you about this LMP's commitment to the people of Brisbane and to our workforce? It tells you everything you need to know. This is a great outcome, we support it. It's something we've been calling for, for the better part of a decade now.
Further debate? Councillor Murphy summing up.
Thanks, yeah, just quickly, Chair, on some of councillor Cassidy's comments there. And you would think for a second that he was comparing our record to his record or something like that, but what he is comparing is our record to our record. We're the ones who are actually doing this program, we're the ones who have, who have designed the program, we're the ones who are executing the program, we're the ones who are fitting the barriers to the bus. It's not his administration that's doing it. I, I don't, what I heard there was quite unreal, it was as if councillor Cassidy had through force of will alone channeled the decisions that were made in Transport for Brisbane to undertake the design process to install these fully frameless barriers. But that's not the case, that's not the case, it's us who have done that, okay? And yes, we have been supported by the state government financially. That's because the state government, I would hazard a guess, councillor Cassidy, probably think that it's cheaper to retrofit these barriers to existing buses than to fund the ongoing operations of senior network officers on problematic routes in our city. Because the reality is they've missed every single target that they have tried to hit when it comes to senior network officer recruitment. We wouldn't have this problem if we had transit police on our network. But the reality is, you would be, you would be luckier to win the lottery than to find a senior network officer on the bus network as you go out there in Brisbane day-to-day on the bus network. I've been catching buses as a councillor, I've been catching buses as a councillor for maybe, oh, like nine years, since after my first year as a councillor. I've never seen a single senior network officer on the bus network. Catching trains, they're everywhere, you can't miss them. Catching buses, nowhere to be seen. So that's the problem that is being, that is being sought to be addressed by this program. Now, the other thing that councillor Cassidy said was, you know, were we lying about whether drivers supported full encapsulation? Well, the reality is that the consultation that we did with drivers was undertaken by TFB in consultation with the union and the results are there, mixed results. Many drivers in different parts of the city that maybe don't experience the same issues with safety or maybe they work different shifts. Many drivers did not support full encapsulation and many didn't like the options for full encapsulation. It may have been, Chair, and I'll grant councillor Cassidy this, it may have been that the full encapsulation solutions that were presented to them years ago were more akin to what you'll find in Perth, on the buses in Perth, where the driver is essentially in a metal cage. That is not something that operators in Brisbane have ever really supported because our drivers really love that interaction that they have with the travelling public. But what we have worked, what we have developed here is a fully frameless design that uses tempered glass instead of a cage. So it's no wonder that drivers support this design, that they like this design. And we've also used technology that wasn't available seven years ago, councillor Cassidy, we've used high-resolution digital cameras for real-time mirror technology inside the cabin. Again, technology that is only included now on Brisbane Metro and leading-edge new buses but that wasn't available for retrofit seven years ago. So there are a number of reasons why we've been able to innovate and come up with solutions to some of the problems that presented themselves with encapsulation all those years ago. But I want to just stress, this is a great success on one bus type and with bus drivers in one depot who have experienced issues of, you know, verbal abuse and physical assault. That doesn't mean necessarily that this will be something that every driver in every depot will be supporting. And it doesn't mean that it's something that will be easy to roll out on every single bus and every single fleet type. So there's still a lot of work to be done here, but the first results are good. And I would just say to you councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr. Chair, there is no reason for you to politicise this, this is a really good outcome that we have got here. And again, there is no need for you to compare our record to our record. We know because we are the ones who have achieved this for our drivers and this is a fantastic outcome.
Thank you. We move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm of the report, the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of May 2023 be adopted.
Seconded. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Matic that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday 16th of May 2023 be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, we had two items, the first of which was a presentation on the Chelmsford Indrapilly River Crossing Pre-feasibility Study, which you can read, which councillors can read about extensively in the report. Some highlights, some important points that should be made, that initial scoping and investigations began in Riddick 2021 and community consultation occurred from November 21 until April 2022. It's important to remember that there were two extensions of time requested by the local councillor for the southern side, for the Chelmsford side, both of which were granted. That, that feedback provided a whole range of insights into how people moved around, how they viewed themselves moving around that district, but also conversely how the science of traffic matched with that. We have a number of responses that were sought through that, through that survey process and I must stress that the way that information was sorted was through a text box, unprompted, un-led, voluntary offering of information. So when you see certain answers, that is not what council asks people to say, it's what they volunteered themselves in an unprompted way. So I think that's important when you look at the sort of, the types of responses we were getting and the sorts of things what people say, would say. For example, people would say that they would like to see heavy rail in the written response. Well, Mr. Chair, I, there is heavy rail. So those sorts of things were there, were coming through in the responses. But there was a very clear concern about traffic congestion in that area, that the limited choices for motorists in that area was a contributor to that issue. How that would be addressed was a question. Many people saw the logic in expanding the bridge, building a new bridge, people saw the, people proposed options that included increased public transport. Again, though, increased public transport would have to operate on the existing road network, so that would have to be addressed at the time as well. It's important to remember the age of this bridge. This bridge is coming on, I want to say it's 100 years old. And it was a privately funded toll bridge, the memory service was opened in the 1920s, right? And so typically, a piece of infrastructure would, you would expect to last about 100 years. So we're sort of at that point, what are we to do next? What are we to do next? So we engaged this pre-feasibility study and I think it's important, and I must admit, it took me a little while to understand the difference between a pre-feasibility study and a feasibility study, but this one is a study that occurs before the feasibility study to determine whether it's worthwhile to even spend the time and effort and money on the actual feasibility study. So the features were, the local residents identified that congestion is a very high, a great concern in that area. But they were of the view that a duplication of the bridge would be, would create an infrastructure draw to that area. What our research shows that more than 80% of local traffic, local trips that use that particular bridge are either generate or terminate within a very, very small area. So what it means is that the bridge itself does not act as a draw to outside the district. In fact, most sane people, myself included, avoid that sort of part of the world on a Saturday because it could take you 20 minutes to try, to drive across the bridge. It's actually easy to go through councillor Hutton's area and back around or up through Fairfield Road. So there is some sort of issue there. Our research also found that a full duplication of the bridge would not actually eventuate in a traffic draw either, it would merely satisfy local demand. So we may hear arguments later on about things like induced demand and things, but that, that horse is well-bolted. There is existing current demand that has to be addressed in some manner. So what we've just, what we've determined through this is that, is that there is an issue. Locals believe there's some sort of issue. Duplication of a bridge would not necessarily increase the draw of traffic from outside the district into the district and that, but then, once you get past those hurdles, I suppose, the reality of the engineering comes to the fore and that's when it becomes difficult and expensive to be able to achieve this sort of thing. Some people suggested, for example, widening the Walter Taylor Bridge. Well, from an engineering point of view, you can't widen a suspension bridge. It, it, from a physical point of view, it can't be done. So that means you have to duplicate the bridge. Well, if you were to duplicate the bridge, you have options to the west, to the, to the west of the existing bridge or to the east of the rail bridge and the bikeway bridge. Well, all of them, all of them call on significant engineering projects beyond the bridge itself. So what we have here is considerations of those sorts of things. There's been, there's been a number of claims made, but I think it's important to remember that the, the potential costs identified through the pre-feasibility study for a potential bridge duplication are in the range of 800 to 1.3, 800 million to 1.3 billion dollars. And the, the project would typically include a bridge over the river and then another bridge over the rail line or a very significant structure of some variety to draw motorists back into the principal transport system. Now, I'm of the view that you should do that as early as possible. I've heard some arguments that it, that it should meet much later in the system. I don't think that makes a lot of sense to the people who live in Indrapilly if it were to go ahead. So structures of that size in those locations require deep and sincere, we'll call it that, deep and sincere commitments from the state government. The state government owns the river, the state government owns the train line, the state government has a lot more money than us. All of, all of those things mean that they have to, they have to be a principal partner if not the lead on this one. So anyway, that is, that is the fundamental, that is the, the basic highlights of the report. I encourage people if they have time to review it, it's quite an interesting proposal and can I recognise the officers in both the community engagement space and also the engineering space who have put this together. It is a very good piece of work. But please don't at any point think that this is a launch of something or a commitment to something. This is a study we've submitted to the state for consideration and discussion and please don't, please no one feel that it's beyond that at this point. The committee also considered a petition requesting a yellow line, which was approved and supported by local councillor and all councillors present. So I look forward to contributions.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, a rise to speak on both items. Firstly, just on the yellow line for the corner of Menon Street. The only reason we're having to do a petition is because the council traffic engineers have, over the last year particularly, just said no to every single thing that we ask for, every single thing. It's, it's like that John Grisham book, you know, with the insurance companies, deny, deny, deny. So a huge retirement village and nursing home has been built in this part of Corinda and there is a massive problem with narrow streets and people parking right on the corners. And this council refused a request by local residents to put a yellow line in. They refused to do it. So we've done a petition, it's taken another year to get a yellow line. All of this to do something that should have taken council 24 hours to say yes to and then another couple of weeks to actually deliver. So this is where I will say, shame on Brisbane City Council for refusing to be proactive about responding to residents' requests for traffic safety improvements in their local community. This is something that should have been done without the year-long or longer effort to try and get council to do something. This is what I mean when I stand here and say this council's become a management organisation, not a service delivery organisation. And their job is simply to trot out standard lines rather than deliver on good safety outcomes in suburban areas. So I thank the residents who've gone with me on this journey, I have alerted them to the fact that the yellow line is coming and it will be a good outcome that will improve safety. What is not a good outcome is the hyperbole about the Chelmsford to Indrapilly River Crossing Pre-feasibility Study. Now, as everyone will recall, I asked the Lord Mayor a question about this a few months ago because we were told in the middle of last year that there would be a public report coming to residents about the outcome of the feasibility study and the community consultation. And the Lord Mayor got very angry with me and, you know, made a whole heap of claims that weren't true. As it turns out, he has been sitting on the pre-feasibility study for almost a year. The report was provided to council in July 2022. And this council finished public consultation before that period as well. So for nine months, councils, almost a year, council's been sitting on this report, not saying anything to anybody, not updating me, not updating the community, and I can see why. I'm going to put a few things on the record that absolutely debunk the spin by the Lord Mayor in this glossy flyer because the Lord Mayor has picked a winner. The Lord Mayor has picked a winner. They have, and he said it in the chamber here last week and the week before and in the media, that they're going to progress a bridge. They want the state and the federal government to pay for it, but they're going to progress a new bridge. Here's what the report says, and I'm just going to quote from a few pages in the report, it's eye-opening. Firstly, I think, I just want to go with the deputy mayor says, oh, sorry, the, the Chair says that there's really no local, it's all, it's all local traffic. So I just want to be clear about what local traffic is because perhaps he's unaware. Local traffic is measured by council. Local traffic is measured by council as a journey that either starts in Indrapilly and goes to the Gold Coast, or starts in Ipswich and goes to Indrapilly, or starts at North Lakes and goes to Corinda, or starts at Hamilton and goes to Sherwood. Council considers that to be a local trip. 75% of what they call local is not a movement within the study area of those half a dozen suburbs that revolve, life revolves around the bridge. It can be somebody who comes from probably New South Wales and stops at Indrapilly using the Walter Taylor Bridge. That is what council says is a local trip. It either starts or finishes within the study area and you cross the bridge. Now, that is not local by any stretch of the imagination. And when I tell my residents what council says is local, they will laugh you out of the house. So the first thing, the first thing that we know is council did not do a proper origin and destination study. We don't know where the vehicles are coming from and we don't know where they're going to. The estimate is 25% of the traffic is through traffic, but we do not know where these cars are starting from and where they're going to. It is a no-brainer that when you are undertaking a long-term infrastructure plan, you do good research and gather good data. This has not been done. This is something I asked for way back. It's the chair himself sitting here that announced this secret feasibility study without even telling me as the local councillor. So this idea somehow that councillor promoting in their glossy brochure that of course features the Lord Mayor's photo, that it's all local traffic is absolutely and fundamentally untrue. A trip from Ipswich to Indrapilly over the Walter Taylor Bridge is not a local trip. A trip from Chermside to Corinda is not a local trip. No one would think that. The only people that do are the LMP. Secondly, council says that there's not going to be any induced demand from a new bridge. I mean, have they not even read their own report? The modelling, so this is modelling, council's best guess is traffic with a new bridge could increase up to 48%. Now, when councillor Mackay's residents in Indrapilly and St Lucia find out about this, they're going to go nuts. And councillor Mackay and the Lord Mayor are supporting a new bridge. That is what they are doing. I don't want to see up to 20,000 extra vehicles a day on Oxley Road and Honour Avenue, and I don't want to see thousands of trucks rolling through our suburbs. Because if there is a new bridge, the markets are right there. And all of those trucks now that cannot go over the Walter Taylor Bridge will have access to a new bridge. Now, just in case anybody's wondering, the figure of 48% is council's figure. It is on page 19 of the Chelma-Indrapilly River Crossing, up to 48% increase. Now, that is a figure they don't want anyone to know. But it gets better. It gets better. Council essentially has considered two options in the pre-feasibility study, both of which are predetermined by the LMP in 2015. It's all going to go back into Coonan Street. There's no traffic going to turn right into Lambert Road and into the schools, into the university precinct where residents in my area want to go. That's where they want to go. Indrapilly State High's catchment is Chelma and Graceville. They want to get there, or St Peters, or Holy Family, or Bridgerton. And they can't. The big problem with all of this is council has concocted this fantasy of some sort of overpass over the rail line feeding traffic back into Coonan Street, which this own study says does not work. It is over practical capacity now. That is the issue. It then gets better. The report, so this is the experts, this is not me, this is not my view. The report says the following on page 46. I'm going to read it out. What is evident, what is not evident, is which of the options has the better overall performance? I'll say that again. What is evident, what is not evident, is which of the options has the better overall performance? So on the basis of a report that is inconclusive, on the basis of a report that goes on to say, and that's on page 46, I'll just pop over to page, also 46, here we go. Both options, so these are the two bridge options that they considered, will operate close or at capacity in the future year based on a 10-year horizon. So the minute the bridge is built, within 10 years of a new bridge, a second bridge, it will be close or over capacity. So this council, on the basis of an inconclusive study, has decided there's going to be a second bridge. They've decided that even though the bridge will only cope with traffic for 10 years, they're going to push ahead with it.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Any further debate? Councillor Griffiths.
Can I move for an extension for councillor Johnston?
Oh, thank you.
Second. We don't move extensions of time for speakers in committee reports, but I'll, I'll move it. An extension of time has been moved by councillor Griffiths and councillor Strunkford. Councillor Johnston, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
A division has been called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Thanks very closely for that. Clerks, read the results, please.
Mr Chair, noes have it being, sorry, the voting being a six in favour and 16 against.
Thank you. That motion is lost. Please, councillors, resume your seats. Is there any further debate? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. I'd like to speak about the potential Walter Taylor Bridge duplication. First up, can I thank the community for taking the time to give feedback during the consultation process? As with all council projects, it's not just interesting but important to get the views of the community. Thank you to the council officers who have put so much effort into the consultation process and the report. What came through loud and clear was a desire for less congestion so travelling across the river can be faster. We know that respondents want less congestion, but the solution is not necessarily increased infrastructure. What we also learned was that a new bridge would cost more than a billion dollars and a tunnel could cost a lot more. Also, there's no easy or great solution as to where the traffic goes on the north side. I'm sure we can all agree that it's entirely unreasonable for council to commit more than a third of our annual budget to this project. It simply does not represent value for money for the residents of Brisbane, and the project would also potentially relocate congestion rather than resolve it. Saying that, I'm prepared to work to find alternative solutions to alleviate traffic congestion in this section of Brisbane. Let's acknowledge the growing concern of traffic congestion in our city. It affects our daily lives, wasting valuable time and impacting our overall quality of life. As a result, I work with council traffic engineers to identify alternative measures around the Walter Taylor Ward that can address congestion and road safety effectively and efficiently. It's crucial for us to take a holistic approach to address traffic congestion in our city. Merely adding another bridge may not effectively solve the problem and could lead to bottlenecks elsewhere. In conclusion, we'll continue to investigate effective and sustainable solutions to alleviate traffic congestion. We understand the concerns of our residents and we're working towards more efficient and accessible transportation. We're working to create a city where commuting is easier, congestion is reduced, and the quality of life is improved for all. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Wines, summing up.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Chair. Just a couple of comments on reflection. Can I thank all contributors and just reflect upon some, some of the points made? Can I just remind all councillors that this bridge carries more than 30,000 trips a day over two lanes, which is well beyond what we would accept in a single-lane north or a single-lane south environment. It is probably, it is almost, it is almost double what we would tolerate. As we've, as there's been a long discussion of, I am of the view that if a trip generates or terminates within the confines of a very limited area, that is a local trip. It may generate or terminate beyond that, but if people are beginning or ending their journey within it, then it, then I am completely comfortable with it being deemed a local trip. That being said, the, the reflection that says 80% of these trips are generated by, with a generation point beyond the local area excludes the University of Queensland. It excludes the major, excludes the major high schools east of Indrapilly, and it excludes places as far away as Tuwong or Sherwood, such vast locations from this particular area. So I am very comfortable to say that the vast majority of Brisbane residents who do not want to go to the, we'll call it Walter Taylor and District, so we're talking Indrapilly, so Indrapilly in the north to Sherwood in the south, unless you have to go in there, you are not going in there. And one of the reasons is this bridge. So we've done the work here to say, well, potentially there's a way, if you have a major contributions from other levels of government, that you could alleviate, that you could alleviate-
Councillor Johnston, please, you had your say.
That you could alleviate the traffic congestion. Now-
Councillor Johnston.
You could alleviate the traffic congestion, improving the way of life for people who live in there. Some councillors, particularly the Southside representative of the council, Fettison, has made it clear that she's very comfortable with the level of congestion. So, and that, that's a choice, that's a choice that, that her and her voters can make. I have always committed to improving transport and traffic options, whether they be private or public, or scooters or cycling or whatever. As long as it gets, as long as we have incremental improvement over time, we will get improvements to the way of life for people all across the city. I, so I am more than happy to have a discussion with the people of that inner west, that inner southwest, inner west community about how they want to move around. But right now, and even councillor Johnston identified in her comments, that even if we duplicated the bridge, the, that capacity that would, that would be addressing within, within 10 years, the extra capacity would be eliminated. Which means that, like, as I said at the start, like, the latent demand argument is always a silly one because when you have current demand of something like 135% at the moment, then when you do, when you, when you do, when you create a new option, you just address the local existing demand. You don't draw people in. The thing that will draw people in is actually the Centenary Bridge duplication, not the Walter Taylor Bridge duplication, or the potential upgrades we talked about in Ipswich Road. They will be significant enough to draw people to them. But a bridge, a doubling of the capacity of a bridge to address existing demand will not draw vehicles meaningfully or in a way that would reflect negatively on the way of life of locals beyond the awful congestion they live with today. And, and there's a discussion that's occurred that somehow the amount of congestion in that neighbourhood is tolerable and acceptable. And I, I don't think it really is, quite frankly. And I, I hope that the state member for Miller, who is also the minister for transport, seriously considers what options are available. You can't, one of the things we haven't touched on is if you're in the western suburbs, a lot of your sporting facilities are actually kept in, I would call it that Sherwood Peninsula, right? So if you live in Pullenvaughn Ward and Walter Taylor Ward and you play netball or rugby, a lot of that occurs south of the river. So people who, who live sort of in that Kenmore-Brookfield area, but they want to go to West's netball, they have to use this bridge too. So what I'm saying is, and mind, that, that would be deemed a local trip by us because you end up somewhere within the zone. I think that we should always be looking to make life better for people. And I, and I'm always reluctant to accept the status quo as being good enough if we have an opportunity to do things to meaningfully improve people's way of life. So I'm more than happy to submit this to the state government for their consideration. I don't think the level of traffic congestion generated by the Walter Taylor Bridge is acceptable. I'm more than happy to have discussions with the minister and the local member for Miller about that. And we proceed with interest to see what will come of this, whether this now or 10 or 20 years in the future. But this is an interesting discussion point that I think that many people in the southwest and in the inner west would appreciate is occurring at all.
Thank you. We move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of May 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday 16 May 2023 be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Item A was a committee presentation for an approved development at 36 Warrrie Street, Fortitude Valley. The approved development is designed to complement the surrounding urban landscape around one of Brisbane's oldest original bakeries established by Thomas Keating in 1878. The heritage buildings on this site will be retained and have been properly considered with a setback that allows continued visibility of these buildings. The inverted podium ensures sufficient clearance is achieved from the heritage place and proposed materials respond to the industrial aesthetics. The proposed development at 36 Warrrie Street enjoys a highly advantageous location, making it a desirable place to live and work. It is conveniently situated within a five-minute walk from the Fortitude Valley train station, providing residents with easy access to public transport. Furthermore, the development is near the King Street precinct and restaurants and is a 15-minute walk to Howard Smith Wharves. The development's inclusion of a laneway in Plaza, five basement levels and a rooftop garden adds to the functional aesthetic and appeal of the project. There are a total of 111 dwellings in the approved development carefully designed to meet the various, varied needs of Brisbane residents. The distribution of dwelling configurations is as follows. There's 16 one-bedroom units, five one-bedroom units with a multipurpose room, 25 two-bedroom units, 22 two-bedroom units with a multipurpose room, and 43 three-bedroom units also with multipurpose rooms. Additionally, 357 square metres will be split into three commercial tenancies, offering a balanced mix of commercial and residential uses. This combination fosters the lively and diverse community where residents can conveniently access commercial amenities and services within close proximity to their homes. 36 Warrrie Street includes a total of 160 car parking spaces catering to the parking needs of residents and 19 car parking spaces for visitors. Additionally, 147 bicycle spaces for residents and visitors have been allocated to promote sustainable transport options and encourage cycling within the community. Aligning with council's vision for Buildings That Breathe, the facade of the development has been designed to facilitate natural ventilation to all habitable floors. Furthermore, the design incorporates shading devices to windows, balconies and the pedestrian entry. One of the key reasons for the approval of the development is its commitment to preserving the heritage place. Through careful architectural design, 36 Warrrie Street is a testament to the Shrinna Council's commitment to heritage preservation as the development integrates into the surrounding area while ensuring the protection and conservation of the heritage elements. Item B refers to two petitions about a development at thirty-two McLean Street at Brighton. I'll leave further debate on that issue to the chamber. Mr Chair, I'd like to take the item seriatum for vote.
Okay, items A and B seriatum for voting. Is there any further debate? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'd just rise on to speak on item B, which is a petition by residents in my ward and beyond, but about a development that is in my ward at thirty-two McLean and one-twenty-one, one-thirty-one A, Spade Street, Brighton. I realise that by the time this petition was lodged, the horse had well and truly bolted on this development, given it was code assessable, but I didn't support the recommendation on principle and in support of my community, because they raised throughout the application process, hundreds of submissions, and thousands of people signing the petition raised some really valid concerns that they have with both this development and a lot of other development that we're seeing, sort of in isolation in the outer suburbs of Brisbane. It's a pretty major change to what occurred at the end of a very short, quiet street in McLean Street. There was no notification because it was code assessable, and people's submissions did not have to be taken into account, and there were no appeal rights. That's no reflection on the assessment officers, I know that all of those submissions, in talking to them, were taken on board, but they are of course working within the confines of the city plan and the neighbourhood plan, which allowed both the type of development we're seeing there, but also the building practices which we will see, which includes a whole lot of fill to be put onto a site that was waist-deep in water in the February twenty twenty-two floods. Obviously, that flooded, but zoning wasn't changed in the fifteen months since then, certainly not the month since that event where the application was made. So those assessment officers had to make that assessment based on what the administration city plan recommended for that site. So people had a lot of concerns about what it would mean for not only immediate neighbours, but also downstream. The Brighton Creek Catchment, which is currently undergoing an assessment, a flood study at the moment, and I'm told that will be completed by the end of this financial year, this development site is upstream from a lot of houses, hundreds of houses that flooded in that Brighton Creek Catchment area. So you can understand when the community saw what was happening here, they had really serious concerns about it, and I share them, but unfortunately, in the fifteen months since the February twenty twenty-two flood disaster, we still haven't seen any action on rezoning of places that are clearly inappropriate for development, and also changes to building practices, which is something I've raised with the staff within Development Services and City Planning as well. And they will regularly tell you that, whether they're sympathetic or not to the issue and take no issue with them, they are bound by what is in the city plan, they have to assess based on that. And this is one of those situations where I think a different outcome for that community would have been much more broadly supported on that site, smaller-scale development and real community input when it comes to traffic and it comes to the loss of vegetation on council-owned road reserve, and also around flooding concerns. So while I realise the council can't put a moratorium on this development legally because it was approved under the LMP city plan and by design exactly how they wanted it to look, I do stand with the community and say there's a broader issue here, and all the issues they raise need to be looked at when it comes to standalone suburban development in isolation that is largely unplanned in a holistic way.
Thank you. Any further debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair.
No further debate, sorry. No further debate. councillor Allen, summing up, please.
I just wanted to touch upon this particular development application. The application, as councillor Cassidy's indicated, was code assessable. It was approved on the seventh of October, twenty twenty-two, well before most of these petitions came into council. But what's bearing in mind is that the subdivision, it was a low-density residential lot, surrounded by low-density residential homes, and surprise, surprise, we've ended up with a one-in-to-nine outcome with low-density residential lots on it. You know, it is a perfect site for low-density residential housing, particularly when we've got a housing crisis on our hands. So this subdivision gives rise to nine family homes on, as I mentioned, low-density residential land, surprise, surprise. Now, the road reserve, which is actually state-owned, it's not council-owned, is road reserve, and guess what that's used for? Roads! So surprisingly, that's exactly what's going to happen with this development. The nine lots are there, they'll be serviced by a road, and in that road reserve, there were unfortunately some trees that were growing in that road reserve, Arbor's inspected those trees and a decision was made that they had to be removed in order to construct the road. Now, there was a bit of misinformation, unfortunately, in the local community, where they believed the road reserve was part of the wetlands. It wasn't, it was state government road reserve, it was never part of the wetlands. So I think it's worth bearing in mind that what's happened here is exactly what was intended to happen here. The application was code assessable, but as I said, what we're putting here is a residential outcome in an area that's residential. I'll leave further debate.
Thank you. We move to the votes on these two items. Item A, all in favour of item A, please say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed, please say no.
Division.
Division called by the deputy mayor and councillor Howard. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Thanks, Billy Closevass. Plaques, read the result, please.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty in favour and two abstentions.
Thank you. Declare that carried. Councillors, we move to the vote on item B in this report. Vote on item B. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed, please say no.
No!
The ayes have it.
Division.
Called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Okay, thanks, Billy Closevass. Plaques, the result, please.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and six against.
Thank you. Declare that carried. Councillors, resume your seats, please. councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Thursday, rather, Tuesday sixteenth of May, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday sixteen May, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, before I go to the committee report, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of Gillian Duncan. Gillian, who was known in the Brisbane offer and cycling community as the godmother of mountain biking, sadly lost her long battle with cancer last week. Several months ago, I had the great opportunity to meet Gillian on-site at Mount Cootha when we officially renamed Gap Creek Circuit as Gillian Circuit in her honour. In the presence of family and friends, it would be fair to say that she was extremely humbled by the recognition of her peers for her commitment to and involvement in the mountain bike community, which she started back in the year two thousand. Gillian had worked closely with council, not only to establish mountain bike trails in Mount Cootha Reserve, but also to improve and maintain trails. She will be remembered as a leader in lobbying for sanctioned trails and trail care through her work as a volunteer and as president of the Mountain Bike Association of Australia for many years. We thank Gillian for her passionate advocacy and commitment to the mountain biking community, and our thoughts are with her family at this time. Mr Chair, last week's committee presentation was on Birds of Brisbane. As you are aware, Mr Chair, Brisbane is renowned as Australia's most biodiverse capital city, but what the chamber might not know is that Brisbane is home to over three hundred and ninety bird species. We have eighty ecosystems across the city, and each of these ecosystems provide habitat for a diverse range of bird species, from honeyeaters to birds of prey, and also to international migratory birds. The committee was introduced to a variety of species, living in wetland areas, both freshened saltwater, species in our drier forests and in rainforests. We also heard about bird species that live on the ground and in grassland areas. Some of the birds were all known to the committee members, but there were many that were new to us. It would be fair to say that committee members were much better at identifying birds on site, but our skills at identifying birds by call needed quite a bit of work. Deputy Chair, council invests in the protection of bird habitat by managing and restoring habitat and corridors. We also invest in research, monitoring and community awareness. We are so lucky to have such a diversity of bird species, and I'd like to take the opportunity to thank our creek catchment and habitat groups for their continued commitment to working with council in restoring habitats, so that together we can ensure that Brisbane remains the most biodiverse capital city in the country. Mr Chair, we also considered two petitions, the first requesting a road reserve in Kelvin Grove be named Bill Matea Reserve, and a second petition requesting a section of Cooperoo Creek Reserve, Cooperoo be named Wallace Place Park. Thank you, Mr Chair, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Is there further speaking? councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak on this report, and in particular, the Birds of Brisbane. I really enjoyed this presentation, I always find, I love the Environment Committee and what we can learn about Brisbane's environment. It's a fantastic resource for us as a city, but also for our nation. In terms of this particular report, and Lachlan gave that, and he's obviously very passionate about this, the way he spoke about it, but the diversity of birdlife, so actually what I learnt from that report is that the diversity of birdlife in Brisbane, or Greater Brisbane, is much more than what you'd find in Kakadu National Park. So we are very lucky to live in such a diverse environment, and such an environment that still has so many of our feathered friends still living and surviving and thriving in our communities across Brisbane. For me, and where I represent, the Maruka Ward, it covers a number of interesting sites that are key birdwatching sites for the city, and one of them is the Archfield Wetlands and also Oxley Common, which we're doing up, that's bushland that we are protecting, creekway that we are protecting, and trying to highlight the amount of birdlife that is there. And my understanding is that with that area of Brisbane, that is actually the greatest concentration of birdlife within our city. And there's recently a show on the ABC, which I'd encourage everyone here, I'd encourage all residents of Brisbane to watch, it's The Secret Lives of Birds. It's done by Dr Anne Jones, and had Professor Hugh Possingham in it as well, and they actually showed you some of the amazing wildlife and some of the amazing birdlife that is in our city, and in particular concentrated on Brisbane. So if you get the opportunity to see that, please watch it, and know that we are trying to preserve and improve that area as a council, and that is a good outcome for our city. The other side I'd like to speak about is Griffith University, and this is one of the great unsung resources of our city. Griffith University sits within Tuie Forest, and I've done a lot of work with the eco-centre there, the environment hub. In fact, I've tried to get this administration, the LMP, to consider working with the eco-hub so that we actually run it as one of our own eco-centres on weekends. And certainly Griffith University had approached me with that idea, and were very keen to give it a go. Unfortunately, Lord Mayor, none of the LMPs picked up on that idea. But it is a resource that is sitting there, seven kilometres from the city, that is all set up. It caters for twenty thousand children a year, students a year, and it's all set up so that it's accessible, so that people can go around and look at the wildlife that's right on our doorsteps. And one of the big things they have that's really going for them is they have a very healthy, happy and breeding koala population that is right on our doorstep, and we have the Lord Mayor who says he loves koalas, but he won't do this. Anyway, I think that's such a missed opportunity. But anyway, I went along to their launch, and they, strangely enough, two weeks ago launched this book, Birds of Nathan Campus, Griffith University, once again, an amazing field guide for us and for our city, and they talk about a hundred and twenty-seven varieties of birds, or species of birds, being in Tuie Forest and in the university campus. Some of them I didn't realise we had in Brisbane, it was a terrific presentation. And I'll continue to work with Griffith University and the environment centre there, because they are doing such leading work. They're doing leading work in terms of what they're offering our city, what they're offering our environment, and we, as a council, I just plead again to the administration, we as a council should not be missing the opportunity to work with such a talented, resourceful academic institution as Griffith University. Thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Johnston.
Yes, just very briefly. One of the most significant places for birds, which is actually just on the wrong side of the boundary for me, but it was in Tennyson Ward for a long time, is now in Maruka Ward, is the Oxley Creek Common. There are over two hundred and ten species of birds in this very significant environmental area, and that's about fifty-five percent of all the bird species in Brisbane. I think this would have been something useful that I could have contributed to the committee if councillor Davis and her colleagues hadn't been too scared to appoint me to the vacancy. So I'm very disappointed that I don't have the opportunity to share these kind of interesting facts about what's locally in the area as part of a committee member of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item C and add my support to naming a section of Cooperoo Creek Reserve Wallace Place Park. This started as an initiative of the Cooperoo and Districts Heritage Group, and in particular, its president, Ron Baker, who has been collecting signatures in its support. Wallace Brothers have been part of Cooperoo for nearly eighty years. The plumbing firm began in a family home in Leicester Street in nineteen thirty-one. It then operated from two twenty-six Old Cleveland Road from the early seventies, and the site is now a parkland reserve. During its operation, Wallace Brothers saw three generations of the Wallace family involved. Two generations, Doug and Bruce, served as presidents of Master Plumbers Association of Queensland, and as members and former presidents of Stones Corner Rotary Club. John Francis Wallace, the founder, served on the Cooperoo and Districts RSL sub-branch committee and the Board of Master Plumbers Association from nineteen forty-one to nineteen forty-six. Another Wallace, Cliff, he had a long involvement with the Eastern Suburbs Rugby League Club for over fifty years. The site of Wallace Brothers was resumed by Brisbane City Council in twenty thirteen for parkland, and it is fitting to acknowledge this prominent local family. The section of the parkland was one of the first priority projects undertaken by council as part of the Norman Creek Master Plan. Of course, the chamber only knows too well about the other high-profile priority project at Stones Corner, which was Henland Park and Baruda. Cooperoo Creek once connected Cooperoo Junction to Norman Creek, but over time, the tidal waterway slowly disappeared under homes, factories, shops... waterway slowly disappeared under homes, factories, shops and streets. These days, Cooperoo Creek Park forms a green corridor between Old Cleveland Road and Barnes Avenue at Cooperoo. The park directs stormwater away from homes and properties and helps to manage local floodwaters in the area. I'm pleased to be able to support the Cooperoo and Districts Heritage Group with this suggestion to recognise the Wallace family. I'd also like to acknowledge, in particular, Bruce Wallace, who I have come to know through Stones Corner Rotary and Cooperoo RSL, and I want to personally thank him for his service to our community. I commend it to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate? Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Mr Chair, and can I thank councillor Griffith for his comments about the presentation. Lachlan is very passionate as a presenter, but particularly on those, in those areas for which he has a particular interest, and, and that is bird watching. And for the benefit of the chamber, he came with his, his looking glasses and all sorts of additional things for us to, props for us to have a look at, and made it a very interesting committee meeting. I am amazed, though, that councillor Johnson has made those comments about her interest in the EPS committee, because in all the time that I've served as Chair of the committee, I can't recall on any occasion that councillor Johnson has taken the time to actually turn up to a committee meeting and hear what was happening. So, so I guess yesterday's resignation has re-inspired her. But in saying that, I was remiss in not acknowledging the resignation of councillor Cassidy from the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee. Mr Chair, he didn't give a reason and didn't raise any concerns with me. But I guess in, in not saying anything, he says much. And in resigning, he, the leader of the Labor Party, has sent a very clear message, and that is that the Australian Labor Party really doesn't care about the environment. They don't actually care about our parks and our natural reserves, they don't really care about our wildlife, they don't care about flood resilience and recovery, they don't care about dealing with the effects of climate change, they don't care about our waterways, they don't care about drainage, nor do they care about flood resilience and recovery, as I said. So how do we know this? Well, we know this because what I've just mentioned is the remit of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, which we now know is apparently not important enough to warrant councillor Cassidy's interest. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillors. We move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the sixteenth of May, twenty twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded, Mr Chair.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, sixteen May, twenty twenty-three, be adopted. Councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. We had a presentation, as is our committee's warrant to, on one presentation. It was on the asphalt production. It was a lengthy presentation presented by our divisional, sorry, our general manager, Mark. He's very passionate about what he does and he's a very good manager in that space. The committee had quite a number of questions and had a great deal of interest in the space. We talked about the two plants that we have, one is the Eagle Farm Asphalt Plant, which I've been to on a number of occasions. Then the other one is the River View Asphalt Plant, which I've been to a couple of times as well. And that was where we talked, there's a new Jerome, has just been replaced there at that, at the particular River View. I, I call it the bespoke asphalt plant, because I can do small batches that are bespoke to a customer's request, which is more readily available and easy than it is for the Eagle Farm one. Like I said, there was a number of questions from the committee, and I'm happy to leave any debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any debate from the chamber? No further debate? We move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the sixteenth of May, twenty twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, sixteen May, twenty twenty-three, be adopted. Councillor Howard?
Oh, well, thank you, Mr Chair. And, Mr Chair, I do have quite a lot of things to talk about before moving to the report this evening, and so I, I, I hope that the chamber is going to be very interested in all of the wonderful things that have been happening right across Brisbane this week. It was my privilege to represent the Lord Mayor at the sixty-fifth anniversary of St Andrews War Memorial Hospital. This is an amazing hospital that, of course, was set up to remember those who sacrificed their lives for us. It was a particularly moving experience, because it was also the opportunity to recognise and thank Pixie Annette for her amazing contribution to this hospital, where she served as the matron for more than thirty years. Pixie sadly passed away last year, and it was a fitting memorial that we had her nephew there to talk about his wonderful Auntie Pix, and to talk about the enormous amount of effort that Pixie Annette provided to the city of Brisbane, not only at St Andrews War Memorial, but also through the Nurses Memorial, through the Centaur. Pixie was just such a vibrant human being, and we all miss her dreadfully, but it was a great event. I also attended the Riverland launch party, and it's very fitting that I should talk about that when the deputy mayor has been talking about economic development within the city. Some of you who probably attended Riverland in the past will just be amazed at, at the renovations that have occurred there, and also the fact that we have provided employment opportunities through this particular renovation to many, many people right across Brisbane. And it was one of the things that the, that the new operators were very keen to explain to me, that we were able to have so many fantastic job opportunities as a result of that. We also saw National Volunteer Week last week, and so I was privileged to, to, to meet with our Brisbane greeters and to thank them for the enormous amount of work that they do right across Brisbane. Now, we also, we know just how valuable the Brisbane greeters are to our city, but it is also just fantastic to be able to, to, thank you, thank you. It's also wonderful for us, I think, as, as a, as a council, to really thank the Brisbane greeters for what they do. I was able to hear some of the new walks that they're, that they're working on, and to understand the importance of what they're doing to take, to take us all across Brisbane. Now, some of you might not know that I am the patron for the Queensland Musical Theatre, and I am very, very proud of that, and they put on the most amazing Cats performance just last week. This is a group that had been operating for more than thirty years, and through you, Mr Chair, I know that they were part of your area in the past, and I know that you're a very strong supporter of them, but the work that Deanne and her team do at there is just superb. It was a fantastic event. It was held, of course, at the Twelfth Night Theatre, which again, is a superb evidence of private enterprise, providing some of the things that we really think that the state government should be stepping up and, and giving us, e.g., some more theatres for community theatres. We know that there's some fantastic new theatres coming across the, the way, but we certainly need performance spaces for some of our community arts areas, and so that was wonderful that we, that we did that. I also represented the Lord Mayor at dancing CEOs, and through you, Mr Chair, I know that the deputy mayor is a big fan of that particular fundraiser. They actually raised over five hundred and seventy thousand dollars on that night. And, you know, we are very proud to support those groups through our providing some funding for the Hire of the Hall, and it was a really, again, a wonderful event, and something that was really important, you know, to the citizens of Brisbane to, to understand that. On the weekend, I was able to attend the motor neuron disease walk to defeat MND. Now, this turned into a really special occasion, because I thought it was just going to be the local state member and myself, but the Premier and the new Health Minister turned up to make an amazing announcement that they were going to provide two hundred and fifty thousand as a one-off contribution to the motor neuron disease. And look, the people there were just so thrilled with that announcement. I, I would very much like that to be a continuation. Apparently in other states, the state government very much provides ongoing funding to the motor neuron disease people, but I can tell you that it was a fantastic event, and to have the Premier come along and make that announcement was really well received by all. After that, the Premier and I again went to the FICQ, twenty-five years of community service. So we had the City Hall filled, I know the leader of the opposition was there, and also councillor Strunk, I, I got to sit next to councillor Strunk, so we were able to enjoy the event while we were there. It was again, another amazing opportunity to, and of course, the Premier was there as well. So the Premier and the leader of the state opposition, everybody had got to have a say, and it was fantastic to really thank these people for the twenty-five years of community service that's so important. And then just last night, I was off to the Rotary Club of Brisbane's Centenary Week Civic Reception. And again, what a fantastic opportunity that was for us to, to do that. Now, Mr, Mr Chair, I'm, I'm coming almost to the end of my preamble, but there is something that I really, that was a preamble, because now, because now-
Pre-feasibility.
Because now I'm going to tell you about the wonderful event that we celebrated last week, which was the Ida Hobbit Flag Raising. And I want to, I'm actually going to read some of the, the information that was provided to me by Luke Nixon, who was the principal inclusion coordinator for Brisbane City Council. And this council chamber needs to be eternally grateful that we have people such as Luke, who are doing this, this job. He has made such a huge difference, and I really want to mention some of the things that he has, Luke tells me he's got ten thousand followers, so they were able to see photos of the Lord Mayor and myself and all of the River City Pride people raising the, the progressive rainbow flag outside of City Hall, and it really was a very extra special morning. So what I want to say to you is that Luke tells me that last Wednesday, the seventeenth of May, the International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia, Intersexism and Transphobia, Ida Hobbit was celebrated in over a hundred and thirty countries around the world. It is more commonly referred to as Ida Hobbit, as we know, and it commemorates the decision to remove homosexuality from the international classification of diseases of the World Health Organisation in nineteen ninety. On the day, River City Pride employees were encouraged in their work areas to host informal events, and that was to raise money for the Open Doors Youth Service. With over twenty-five events held across council's Office and Depot locations, they raised an amazing amount of over seven thousand dollars, and this is a significant increase on the three thousand five hundred raised in twenty nineteen. So I want to say a big thank you to all of our River City Pride and also all of our officers right across council, who took the opportunity to, to make sure that we were recognising this important date. River City Pride and the Lord Mayor woke up bright and early in the morning to raise the progressive rainbow flag on City Hall, and River City Pride were joined by councillor Cunningham, council's executive management team, and representatives from a number of LGBTIQ plus community groups, not-for-profits, and the leads of the LGBTIQ plus employee resource groups from across Brisbane. It was a morning of celebration, reflection and, and agreement that despite the progress made, there is still work to be done. So to close out Ida Hobbit, our city landmarks, including the Sori Bridge and the City Hall, were lit up in rainbow colours, and this act has not only celebrated our local LGBTIQ plus community, but has been publicised across all forms of social media, sending a clear message to the world that Brisbane supports its LGBTIQ plus community. So thank you, Luke, and thank you to River City Pride. Moving to the report, we had a presentation on the aquatics overview, and again, it was fantastic. I want to, I do want to thank councillor Griffiths for raising an issue that we're currently investigating, and I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Howard. Is there any further debate? Well, you had five seconds to speak. Any further debate? Councillor Mackay?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the presentation. And councillor Howard always makes a point that the job titles in the Community Arts Nighttime Economy section are quite wordy, but we had a presentation from the manager of the venue, manager for Venue and Semataries, Community Facilities, Lifestyle and Community Services, Richard. I wanted to congratulate Richard on his first presentation, also happens to be a neighbour of mine, so extra special. But it was a very interesting presentation, because I learnt some stuff that I didn't know. Council manages twenty-two pools, and attendance was up over eight percent year-on-year through the summer period. And it was interesting to note that Sandgate Pool was the most popular over the financial period, summer, summer, this financial period, and there were more than, wait for it, Chair, three hundred thousand people attended the Sandgate Pool in that one period. So that's fascinating. I will note that, just for the record, Jim Sawley did shut the Towong Pool, which is a bit disappointing, so we don't have a, a pool in Walter Taylor anymore. But I, I do want to, I do want to acknowledge the pool out at Jindalee that was very badly hit in the flood, and I understand it was a lot of work from everyone involved in council and the lessy and the local councillor, Sarah Hutton, who all banded together to pull that pool back to its, its state. But what I did find really interesting was that many of our pools are now accessible, and many have ramps, so people of all abilities can access our wonderful pools. And that's all I wanted to say. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Yeah, councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on Ida Mae. And even though Sandgate has got the top numbers of pools, Chermside's not far behind, and why wouldn't it be? It's a great space there with the play area for the little ones to learn to swim, the aqua aerobics, therapeutic area, and also many, 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 many schools summertime for their, which my kids went to many, many and many. End of year celebrations at the Chermside Pool. It's perfectly located in the Chermside area, near the higher density, also next to my office, the wonderful library there at Chermside. This administration, I'm so proud of this administration, because as councillor Mackay said, we've never closed down a pool. In fact, we've invested millions and millions of dollars in new pools. I know everything happens in Brackenridge, councillor Landers, but I know that your pool is also very, very popular on the north side of the area, and you've got some very talented swimmers, I hear, that have come from the pool there at Brackenridge. But Chermside, I think, is one of the best swim coaches that we could ever hope for. He actually taught my children how to swim back when he was at Stafford Pool, actually, but now he's at Chermside. Some of the kids that he has nurtured and taught to swim, I believe, will be at the Olympics in twenty thirty-two. They're, they're very, very talented, and I'm so proud. Thank you. I didn't see the presentation, councillor Howard, but I thank you very much for bringing this through to the committee and making us all aware of the importance of our pools. Chermside's not far behind Sandgate, but Sandgate is beautifully located at the foreshore there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, just very briefly on the Aquatics Centre overview. I, I'm just wondering whether the first pool the LMP might actually be shutting down would be the Jindalee Pool. I've heard some information, and I'll say that it's unconfirmed, and I'd be very helpful, it'd be very helpful if councillor Howard was to confirm whether this is true or not, but my- But my understanding is the local councillor out that way, councillor Hutton's been promising a new aquatic centre for her ward, and she wants to take over the local golf course, which is leased by council to a community-based, oh, on the money, how's this? That she wants to take over a community leased golf club to build this new aquatic centre. So I'm just wondering if that's something that councillor Howard wants to come clean about now, because we've just heard from the councillors opposite that they don't close down pools, but are they planning to close down the Jindaloo Pool after spending, I don't know how much, millions of dollars to fix it after the floods? And would there be a pork barrel election commitment coming for an aquatic centre out there in Jamburi Ward? And would, would-
Councillors, please.
And would, yeah, it's interesting, isn't it? And would councillor Howard like to come clean now about why councillors spend all this money fixing the pool at Jindaloo Pool if they're just going to go and build a brand shiny new aquatic centre out there and kick out the local golf club? So perhaps either the local councillor or councillor Howard might like to come clean about this. And again, I say this is a rumour that I've heard, heard the surveyors, the surveyors have been out there. But I'd be very interested, if I'm wrong, I'd love them to stand up and deny it. That'd be great.
Any further debate? Councillor Howard.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Check, because it does allow me just to say a few more words. Look, I really want to thank those that, from this side of the chamber, that contributed to the debate, given that the report was very interesting. And I want to say a big thank you to Richard for really laying out all of the things that we are currently doing across those pools. And some of the information that is in the report, and I really encourage the councillor for Tennyson to actually read the report, because it says, Bellbury and Jindaloo Pools were also significantly damaged in 2022. Extensive works were completed throughout both sites, including electrical rectifications, plant equipment, replacement and building repairs. The pools reopened in September and December 2022 respectively. Now, Mr. Chair, through you, I would also like to just mention that the attendance rates across the portfolio have increased by 8% since the last financial year, with 10 of our facilities now exceeding 100,000 visits. Six facilities exceeding 200,000 visits and one facility exceeding 300,000 visits. And you're quite right, through you, Mr. Chair, councillor Hammond is only coming second in the Chermside Pool, and of course, Sandgate Aquatic Centre was at the top of the pool. But I have to say, all of the work that's being done at Newmarket, watch out, both of you councillors, because I think that councillor, I think councillor Wines is on his way, on his way to trying to sort of, you know, do what we can. We were actually updated on the refurbishment of the 50 metre pool and the plant at Newmarket Olympic Swimming Pool, one of council's busiest facilities in the portfolio. And the works also included a filtration and pump upgrade to the 25 metre pool and two children's pools that were damaged during the 2022 Brisbane flooding event. Now, that pool reopened on the 10th of December 2022. And through you, Mr. Chair, I think that that will be something that everyone in that area will be looking forward to. So thank you to those who contributed, and I recommend the committee report to the chamber.
Thank you. Move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 16th of May, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 16th of May, 2023, be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Ida May was a presentation on council's domestic and family violence awareness, prevention and support initiatives. We all know, and I've said before, how it has been a difficult few years for our community in Brisbane. From a pandemic that locked us away to a flood and now a housing and cost of living crisis. For a moment, just put yourself in the shoes of someone who's dealing with all of that while also dealing with the trauma of DFE. When I talk to the officers at my local police station at Cooperoo, which is still open, I might add, I know that the calls for help will continue and are increasing. All year, but especially during the month of May, there are a number of internal and community-facing initiatives which council is supporting to raise awareness, create change and directly assist victims. On Friday, the 5th of May, we were proud to provide over $30,000 in community support funding for the LGBTQ Domestic Violence Awareness Foundation's Light Up the Night Gala here at City Hall. We know that domestic violence is prevalent in LGBTQ plus relationships, just as it is in heterosexual relationships. So it was a great night and joined many of my colleagues from this chamber at the event, as well as other advocates and supporters who work in this space. Two weeks ago, Mr. Chair, I opened the Understanding Pathways to Safety Forum at the Convention Centre, which council sponsored. The event brought together over 20 different DFE organisations to present their services and programmes available in the Brisbane region to those seeking to work or volunteer in the DFE support sector, arming them with the information that they need to support victims. This is a critical information sharing forum where attendees received invaluable insights into the pathways to safety for those affected by DFE. I'm incredibly proud that council continues to support this event, which offers practical support to our community. Later in the month, Challenge DV is hosting the Darkness to Daylight Run. Last year, over $400,000 was raised to help Challenge DV develop and roll out new DFE prevention programmes. This year, council is proud to be a sponsor of the event, and our employees have also put together a team to take part. As a major employer, we care deeply about the wellness, safety and health of our people at work and at home. Of course, we seek to provide a safe workplace for everyone and support the right for all people to live free from violence, intimidation and abuse. We continue to partner with Workhaven to deliver the Fresh Start for Me Programme at council. This 10-week programme includes engaging directly with an expert to take practical steps to create the right environment to rebuild and to support and maintain momentum to track their progress. As a large council, we've also taken the opportunity to provide this programme to two smaller councils in our region, free of charge, and this is being done in partnership with Workhaven. We also work with LGAQ to exchange learnings across the local government sector here in Queensland. Jo Mason, the CEO of Workhaven, has been a close partner of ours in council in helping to shape our DFE response, and I want to take this opportunity to thank her. There are also a number of other DFE initiatives. For example, councillors will recall that the Lord Mayor committed $300,000 over three years to the Women's Legal Service to fund a telephone support service for women and their children who have experienced domestic family and sexual violence. All levels of government have a role to play, Mr. Chair, and while there has been a lot of momentum, council will continue to take action for many years. I commend the report to the chamber.
Any further debate? No further debate? Move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Landers.
Mr. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that we do adjourn for a dinner break. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, welcome back from the dinner break and welcome councillor Whitney. She may have been sworn in successfully. Councillors, I draw to your attention the notice of motion at item five on the agenda. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I move that this council reaffirms its support for the Ullaru Statement from the Heart. This generous proposal from Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people calls for a constitutionally enshrined voice to parliament, which all Australians will vote on later this year. Brisbane City Council recognises the self-determination of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people and actively supports a yes vote in the referendum.
Seconded.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, debate.
Thank you very much, Chair. On the 4th of June 2019, I read into the official record of this place the Ullaru Statement from the Heart in full. This week marks six years since that seminal document was gifted to the Australian people. This year marks 15 years since the Prime Minister said sorry. This month marks 25 years since Lord Mayor Jim Sawley led the nation in saying sorry. 56 years ago, Australians overwhelmingly voted in favour of a referendum, which was a turning point in our national story. We all know the significance of these moments in our history in making strides to heal and move forward together. We have another big opportunity to do that again. History is calling on us all. As the Minister for Indigenous Australians, Lynda Burney, said just yesterday, this vote this year is one based on hope. Hope for a better future, hope built on the aspirations of Indigenous Australians embodied in that statement. On the election of the Labor Government just over a year ago, it was clear that as a country, the time for change had come. A change in government and a change in the way our first Australians were recognised and empowered. Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people invited Australians to join with them in advancing a better future for the nation in a concerted effort towards reconciliation in the Ullaru Statement from the Heart. I'm proud that our team brought the original motion for the support of the statement to this council. Later this year, Australians will vote in a referendum. They will be asked to answer a question. Do you agree that the country's constitution should be altered to recognise the First Peoples of Australia by establishing an Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander voice? For me, the voice is a simple proposition. It's about recognition and about respect. Recognising Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people as the first people in our founding document and respecting their self-determination in decision-making. Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people have been left out of the decision-making process for too long. Decisions about their future and policies relating directly to them are made in isolation without them. Their voices have not been listened to. When you empower communities, outcomes improve. A nine-year gap in life expectancy, higher infant mortality, and the future of so many young people robbed as they languish behind bars. We can do so much better, and why wouldn't we actively listen to the community in finding solutions? We are blessed in Australia to have two of the world's oldest continuing living cultures in Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. It's time to give them their voice. Sporting clubs and codes, multinational companies, other state and local governments, and many community leaders have indicated they will support a yes vote in the referendum. Every Liberal leader in Australia supports the Voice referendum at the moment, except for Peter Dutton. I cannot state my support and the Labor's team, the Labor team's support for both Ullaru Statement from the Heart and the introduction of a voice to parliament through a referendum, changing our constitution more strongly. First Nations people must be able to speak and have their goals and aspirations acknowledged and understood. First Nations people must feel empowered to speak their truth and be believed. First Nations people must be free to have their culture and heritage protected, with the understanding that it is a genuine gift to all of us. The Voice isn't about politicians, it's not a Canberra Voice. This generous proposal came from the people, people wanting to have their voices heard. Their voices will be heard at a national level but based in the community, just like where this statement emerged from. Auntie Rob Munanjali, an Birigaba woman, says the Voice is about Aboriginal people getting up and having their say. And as a community, they need to have that voice because otherwise they'll get talked over again. Ken Wyatt, the Minister for Indigenous Australians in the last Liberal government, said he would be deeply saddened if the Voice was defeated at the referendum. He said Indigenous people had made a huge contribution to the building, to building the modern Australian nation. Their contribution to build the foundation of our economy, our country and our way of life should be acknowledged by reciprocating and saying, hey, we want to give you the opportunity to sit at the table and express your views. A leader in this movement, Eddie Sinnett, my brother in so many ways, summed it up beautifully for me recently. And he said this about the Voice. The Voice is 235 years in the making. Finally, after such a long time, we as Australians get to correct the failure to recognise the rightful place of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, while also doing something practical about the issues that too many Indigenous people continue to face. But for me, there are three people I think of most when it comes to the Voice. My nan, born in 1930, at the height of the New South Wales protection regime, at a time when the policies of the day were that my people would be bred out and no longer exist. To think of the change she has seen in her lifetime, but to also think she will live to see this day is hard to fathom. I also think of my two children, to think they won't have to fight for these basic rights and recognition in 20 to 30 years' time is unimaginable. But they shouldn't have to, and that's what I look forward to. Moving beyond this impasse has plagued our relationship for too long and building a better future for all of us. And I know those two children are going to be extremely proud of their father. As the largest local government in this country, what we say and do matters. We showed our support for the statement, now let's show our support for the vote. As Uncle Bob Anderson says, sing it loud and sing it proud, make your voices heard. I urge all councillors to vote for this motion today. History is calling us all.
Thank you. Further speakers? Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak to this motion. 2023 is, as we know, a pivotal year for our country, the land that we all call home. This year, Australians will be asked to make an important and a relatively rare decision. And I say rare because it is not often that we are asked to consider changing our constitution. And in a healthy democracy, as we are, this is not something that should ever be taken lightly or done without careful consideration. And history shows this is not something that Australians themselves have ever taken lightly. Of the 44 proposed changes to our constitution since Federation, only eight have ever been supported and approved. And in fact, the last time that a referendum was successful was in 1977, the year of my birth, 47 years ago. Anyone who understands the gravity of constitutional change and the need to take the entire community along the journey would understand that you have to ensure that the community has a clear understanding of what is being proposed. I've spent a significant amount of time talking to people across our community in recent times about the Voice. And as I've talked to more and more people, I've learnt a lot. And here's what I've discovered as a result of many, many conversations in our community of Brisbane. Firstly, and this should be self-evident, but it is important to acknowledge, there are many different views on the Voice. And that includes amongst Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities themselves. You talk to our own one mob in council, there are different views within councils, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander employees. And there are different views amongst the elders of our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities as well. And so it is fair and accurate to say there is not a single unified position amongst Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities, either here in Brisbane or across Australia. I've heard very strong opinions both for and against the Voice, both in the wider community and from First Nations representatives. The second thing that has become very obvious, Mr. Chair, is there's a huge hunger for more information. Once again, shouldn't be surprising, this is an important decision we're all facing. A desire to understand what the Voice is and importantly, how it will work. And that's perfectly reasonable. You're making a big change like this, and it is a significant milestone change for our nation. It is only reasonable that people understand what it is they're being asked to vote on and how it will work. Now, this is an opinion that was recently expressed by our own Queensland Premier, Anastasia Paliché. And finally, there is a huge desire to understand how the Voice will deliver better outcomes. And I think that really is the heart of it. It's an important symbolic gesture to change the constitution, but really, people want to know it's going to make a difference. They want to know what that difference will be. How will it help to close the gap? How will it help the day-to-day lives of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people and communities? And once again, that is a fair and reasonable question to ask. And as the leader of this city, I would like to ask a further question. How will the Voice ensure that local communities such as the Yagro people, the Turrbal people, and the Kwanndamooka people have a voice in the Voice? To me, this is critical. I have searched high and low for this information. And what I've been able to find out, I have to say, raises more questions than it answers. The government, and even just in the break that we had, I saw an ad on TV. And it was the government's website on the Voice promoting or encouraging people to visit this website to find out more information on the Voice. So this is where the government is pointing people to. Thevoice.gov.au. If you want to find out more information, go there. It's got questions and answers. And so looking on that website, the question about how will the Voice be formulated and created? And how will the representatives be chosen? Critical question, I think. And it says on that website, "The Voice will be representative of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities, gender balanced, and will include youth." Well, that seems reasonable. That's obviously a step in the right direction. But how will it be representative? Like, how is, are we going to ensure that it is representative? It says then, going on further on the website, "Members will be chosen from each of the states and territories." "The Voice will have specific remote representatives as well as a representative for the mainland Torres Strait Islander community." Okay, tell me more. There is no more information on the website about how the Voice will be chosen and how members and local groups like the Yagro, Turrbal, and Kwanndamooka people could possibly be represented. And so I went searching for more information. And the report that I was led to was referenced by the Prime Minister on a number of occasions. It was the Indigenous Voice Co-Design Report, prepared by Professors Langton and Karma. And so this is the report that the Prime Minister said, all the answers are in there. And so what does that report says, say? It says, "The National Voice will have 24 members with gender balance structurally guaranteed." "The base model includes two members from each state, the Northern Territory, the ACT, and the Torres Strait. A further five members would represent remote areas due to their unique needs. One member each from the Northern Territory, Western Australia, Queensland, South Australia, and New South Wales. And an additional member would represent the significant population of Torres Strait Islanders living on the mainland." In Queensland, so to summarise, what the representation for Queensland will be, will be one member from a remote area and two members from the remainder of the state. So out of the 24, that's what we're talking about. So it's rightful to ask the question, how will the Yagro, Turrbal, and Kwanndamooka people be represented on the Voice? When there are only two members from the rest of the entire state of Queensland to be selected? And this is a question I think a lot of people would want to know the answer for. So, Mr. Chair, I propose an amendment to the motion in front of us. I propose that the first, in the first paragraph, after the words reaffirms its support, add the words "consideration of thee", and also after the words "statement of the heart", insert comma and insert the words "which includes". And in the second paragraph, after the words "Torres Strait Islander people", add the words "and calls on the federal government to step up into that space and explain it, as requested by the Queensland Premier, to allow informed consideration of a yes vote in the referendum." And finally, add a third paragraph with the words, "This information must include a detailed explanation of how the Yagro, Turrbal, and Kwanndamooka peoples will individually and fairly be represented on any Voice to Parliament."
Seconded.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Just reading the amended... Okay, yes, Lord Mayor, can you read what the amended motion would read, please?
Okay, so the amended motion following these changes that I have suggested here is that this council reaffirms its support for consideration of the Ullaroo Statement from the Heart, which includes calls for a constitutionally enshrined Voice to Parliament, which all Australians will vote on later this year. Brisbane City Council recognises the self-determination of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people and calls on the federal government to step up into that space and explain it, as requested by the Queensland Premier, to allow informed consideration of a yes vote in the referendum. "The information must include a detailed explanation about how the Yagro, Turrbal, and Kwanndamooka peoples will each be individually and fairly represented on any Voice to Parliament."
Point of order.
All right, well, I'll go.
Okay, point of order.
The motion before us today has been outrageously changed by the Lord Mayor. The paragraph that Brisbane City Council recognises self-determination of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people and actively supports a yes vote in the referendum has been removed altogether. This substantially changes the nature of the motion from one calling for support for a yes vote to not calling for support for a yes vote. And on that basis, the change is too extensive, does not meet the meeting's local law, and should be ruled out of order.
Thank you. I'll take the other, your point of order too, councillor Cassidy, before I respond.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, no, I was going to say the exact same thing. And I think legal advice should be sought on this because this substantially changes the motion. It's clear that this now, if this is voted on and supported, now would mean that Brisbane City Council does not actively support a yes vote. That is substantially different to the motion I moved. If the LNP wanted to vote against it and not support it, they could have. They could easily do that. Or bring their own motion, but this does substantially change that. If you'd like me to move a motion for an adjournment, Chair, to seek legal advice on this, I'm happy to do it, but I'll leave that at your discretion, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Reading the amendment, I, I'm of the opinion it doesn't change the intent of the original motion. So I don't support your motion, councillor Cassidy, and I don't uphold your, your point of order, councillor Johnson. In my read of this, it, it doesn't substantially change the nature of the, the motion that's being considered.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor.
Could you just expand on, on your ruling then and tell us how this amended motion before us today, which does not call on council to actively support a yes vote in the referendum, the original motion to now not doing that, which is a fundamentally different position, is consistent? Could you explain that a bit more?
Councillor Cassidy, I don't need to. I've made a ruling. You can rule dissent in my ruling if you want to.
Yeah, I move dissent in your ruling.
Okay, dissent in my ruling has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Johnston. All in favour of that dissent motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the noes have it. The voting being six in favour and 18 against.
Dissent in my ruling motion has been lost. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ultimately, this information that we're asking for is not unreasonable. And I think if you actually asked this same question to the wider community, they'd say it is reasonable for people to know our First Nations people in Brisbane will have a say on the Voice. Because in the end, if you really want it to be effective, that's something that you really want to know. That's a question you really want to have answered. And so when you're asking people to make an informed decision, my fear is that in the current absence of information that's out there, this referendum will go down. That's the way I see it going unless there is more information urgently provided. And the interesting thing is, it's almost as though the federal government doesn't want to answer these questions because they've been asked again and again and again to provide answers. And they've got this website which has next to no information. You have to go digging through reports to find out that it's 24 members for the whole of Australia when there are hundreds of different groups of First Nations people across the country, hundreds. How do you possibly make sure that there is fair and appropriate representation with 24 representatives on the Voice? And I think people would like to know the answer to this question because this will determine whether it works or not. This will determine whether we get the good outcomes from it or not that people want to see. And I think people are genuinely open to supporting this, but it is not unreasonable to have some basic information about what it is they're voting for, what it will mean, who will be represented on it. And I think it's not too late for the Prime Minister to clear this up, to step forward, just like the Premier has asked him to do, and answer these important questions. Because you don't want to go into this with all of these questions unanswered. If you go into it with questions unanswered, as we've seen in the past, with a record of only eight out of 44 referenda getting up, I fear that this one will not get the support that it needs to to cross the line. And what will that do to our nation? It will tear it apart. And I don't think anyone in this chamber wants to see that. There is a chance to save this thing, and that will only be saved by providing answers to basic questions like this. We want to see a cohesive, united community that moves forward towards genuine reconciliation, towards closing the gap, and real improvements for First Nations people, especially Yagro, Turrbal, Kwanndamooka here locally in Brisbane. And I think we can achieve this, but that basic information needs to be provided as a matter of priority.
Thank you. Further debate on the amendment? Councillor Cassidy?
This is outrageous, Chair. What the Lord Mayor has now confirmed is that he is on a unity ticket with Peter Dutton, the Nationals, and Pauline Hanson in One Nation. That's what he has done.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
That's what he has done. He is peddling some of those, the worst, the worst of that dog whistle politics on this issue, the very worst of it.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order to you.
Can we debate the amendment? Not the Lord Mayor, please.
To the amendment, to the amendment, councillor Cassidy. I don't uphold your point of order, Deputy Mayor, but please.
Yeah, I'm discussing what the Lord Mayor has just entered into the debate around his amendment.
I understand. I understand.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, no, thank you. Consistent, consistent research has shown that over 80% of First Nations people support this approach. Because they know, and I think the Lord Mayor does in what he has said, they know that what we have been doing to date isn't working. We talked about things like closing the gap just then, but that hasn't worked. Decisions have been made about the futures of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, specifically about them as a people. We've seen that time and again around, specifically around Aboriginal communities, specific government policies that are made in isolation from them. They have not been part of that decision-making process. As I said, it's a really simple proposition, the referendum. The question is very simple. The proposition is very simple. It's about recognition and about respect. The Lord Mayor knows that there is information out there, Chair. He knows that there's information out there, and he's peddling this line that we've heard from Peter Dutton and the Nationals.
Point of order to you, councillor Murphy.
Will councillor Cassidy take a question?
Councillor Cassidy, no. Councillor Cassidy won't take a question, councillor Murphy.
So Peter Dutton had an opportunity to sit with the working group on many occasions. And do you think he asked one question of them, all those eminent people? He didn't ask one question. And low and behold, every Liberal leader in Australia, every opposition leader, I grant it in West Australia, the opposition leader is a member of the Nationals, the Tasmanian Premier, the former New South Wales Premier at the time, every Liberal and National leader, apart from at a federal level, supports a yes vote. So I don't understand where that disconnect has occurred now, where the Lord Mayor of Brisbane and Peter Dutton and the Nationals and Pauline Hanson's One Nation have come together and are now engaging in dog whistle politics. The co-design report, which was commissioned by the Morrison government that the Lord Mayor has referenced, the Karma-Langton report, does talk about models, and that Lord Mayor has been selective. He's picked a little bit, very, very, very selective, which is actually really troubling, Chair. Extremely troubling in this debate when we've got a Lord Mayor who's sort of dancing around the edges of saying no, but disguising that in saying he needs more information and going to a report that has hundreds and hundreds of pages of information, that co-design report, which, Lord Mayor, through you, Chair, was developed working with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities all around Australia, all around Australia. The Ullaroo Statement from the Heart was the culmination of regional dialogues. The co-design report was as a result of consultation directly with First Nations communities. But apparently, this Lord Mayor knows better. That's what he's told us tonight. He's been extremely selective with what he's talked about coming from that co-design report because what he hasn't talked about are all the local and regional voices which feed into the National Voice as well. He left that out. I wonder why. Because he claimed, he said tonight, he'd read that report, those hundreds of pages. He said to us just tonight that he'd read that, and the one thing he pulled out of that was that number. And this is not the legislation. That's not what is included in the vote in supporting a yes vote. That's not included. That will be the subject of legislation once a vote, hopefully, is carried in a referendum. So that legislation will be informed by the co-design report. But of course, all members of Parliament and senators, and I'm sure the Lord Mayor can do this, he sits on the LNP executive with Peter Dutton, he can talk to him all the time about this, I'm sure. They get to design that legislation based on community feedback. I just, I just really don't understand what changed for the Lord Mayor from 2019. I know they amended that motion at the time, and they wanted to praise Ken Wyatt as the first Indigenous Minister for Indigenous Australians. And we supported that amendment at the time because it still put a stake in the ground. It still said, yes, Brisbane City Council is a progressive council, and we do support the Ullaroo Statement from the Heart, which at its core talks about a constitutionally enshrined voice. That is, was the first step in that process, followed by, followed by treaty and truth-telling as well. I don't know what's changed in the last four years for this Lord Mayor. I can't quite figure it out. He hasn't, hasn't really given us much of an indication other than the fact that he's now on a unity ticket with Peter Dutton on this before us today. So when it comes to, when it comes to wanting more information, there is more than enough information out there. The fact that, that, yeah, every Liberal and Labor leader and the Greens at a national level now support this approach. soutiennent cette approche, chaque jour de la semaine, nous avons des organismes nationaux, que ce soit le comité olympique australien ou les jeux de Commonwealth, rugby, cricket, l'AFL, de grandes organisations qui ont une conscience sociale, sont en train de soutenir un oui. Ils ne vont pas dire, oh, j'sais, je vais jouer cette chasse à la voix ici et dire, oh, j'ai des billets, peut-être, peut-être pas, nous avons besoin de plus d'informations. Quand vous obtenez plus d'informations, c'est pas assez. Quand vous avez un rapport de 400 pages, c'est pas assez. Quand il y a des détails dans ce rapport, vous choisissez une chose. C'est le playbook de Peter Dutton. Et je pensais, le maire se met ici et dit qu'il est un leader progressiste à Bruxelles. Et il est en colère et les LNP ici sont en colère et ils disent que nous les attaques personnellement. Quand nous répétons cette ligne, le Kurumal a parlé du maire l'an dernier qu'il était un leader conservateur. Et ils protestent beaucoup, mais évidemment un peu trop. Parce que pour avoir le maire de Bruxelles, un pays progressiste, qui est venu ici aujourd'hui en disant qu'il a reçu ses lignes de Pauline Hanson et Peter Dutton et David Littleproud, il y a une définitive voix conservatrice de Queensland, de Queensland, un ticket de unité conservateur qui apparaît maintenant sur ça. Et c'est un moment crucial dans l'histoire de nos nations. C'est un vote important. Et les gens vont regarder leurs leaders politiques pour prendre une position et pour expliquer, le maire a apparemment lu tout ça, expliquer à quel point c'est important. C'est à propos de la reconnaissance et du respect. C'est à propos de reconnaître que nos premiers gens étaient exclués du draft, spécifiquement exclués du draft de la Constitution. Ce n'était pas jusqu'en 1967 qu'ils étaient même reconnus comme membres de notre société. C'est à propos de reconnaître leur place spéciale dans notre document fondateur et c'est à propos de l'empowerment. Pourquoi ne le faisons-nous pas? Pourquoi ne nous écouterions pas de ces voix? Pourquoi ne disons pas... Vous savez, l'argument n'a pas été sur le financement. Il n'a pas été sur les programmes. C'est sur la livraison de ceux et les décisions qui ont été prises et pour les peuples aboriginales et Torres Strait Islanders, à l'exclusion de eux. C'est à propos de la reconnaissance et du respect. Et je suis profondément perturbé par ce que nous avons entendu du maire ce soir. Nous ne supporterons pas l'amendement.
Le maire a un reclame d'être misérablement représenté?
Conseiller Cassidy a déclaré que mon amendement me met sur un ticket de unité avec Peter Dutton. En fait, il me met sur un ticket de unité avec le Premier Anastasia Palache, qui a dit exactement la même chose.
Deux autres parleurs? Deux autres parleurs à l'amendement? Conseil Johnson.
Oui, merci, M. le Président. Je me rends compte que je dois parler de l'amendement adopté par le maire et qui a probablement été soutenue par tous les conseillers LNP ici devant nous aujourd'hui. C'est extrêmement décevant de voir la façon triste dans laquelle le maire a commencé à tuer cette motion qui a été amenée par le leader de l'opposition. C'est incroyable que le maire ait voulu jouer le rôle de spoilade dans la façon dont ce pays va faire une conversation nationale sur comment changer la Constitution pour reconnaître les peuples aboriginales et Torres Strait Islanders. Et c'est étonnant pour moi qu'il utilise le parochialisme pour essayer de conduire une bannière et confusion et division dans la façon dont notre communauté participe à ce débat. Les choses qu'il a dit ici aujourd'hui ne sont même pas près de la moitié de la histoire. Et la motion qu'il a amenée aujourd'hui dit essentiellement que ce Conseil ne soutient pas un oui sur le référendum parce que ça le supprime. Ça le supprime de la motion. Donc voyons juste quelques questions. Tout d'abord, je soutiens un oui. Je serais très heureuse de voter oui. C'est une proposition simple qui est amenée au peuple australien et le maire cherche à la rendre compliquée, divisive et triste en disant toutes sortes de problèmes qui existent. Le référendum fait deux choses. Un, reconnaît les premiers habitants de cette terre dans la Constitution. Ils ne sont pas reconnus maintenant, nous allons les reconnaître. Et deux, met un processus par lequel les peuples indigènes peuvent conseiller le gouvernement, le Parlement et l'exécutif. C'est tout. Ce n'est pas difficile, ce n'est pas triste. C'est en fait très simple. Les gens qui cherchent à la rendre triste et divisive sont les gens qui diffusent des informations malformées dans notre communauté sur le but de cette voix. Maintenant, j'ai parlé à de nombreux groupes dans ma communauté et je sais qu'il y a des gens qui sont concernés. Mais quand vous avez une conversation avec eux sur ce que cela signifie et vous parlez du langage qui est en fait dans l'amendement et dans la modification constitutionnelle, ils sont assez choqués de entendre à quel point c'est simple. Ils sont assez choqués de entendre à quel point c'est simple. Et au lieu d'essayer de prendre un rôle de leadership et de se lever et de dire à notre communauté que nous devrions voter oui parce que c'est la bonne chose à faire pour reconnaître les gens de ce pays qui n'ont aucune reconnaissance à la fois dans notre Constitution, les gens qui sont venus d'abord, qui ont été ici le plus longtemps. Au lieu de dire aujourd'hui et de envoyer un message clair à notre communauté que nous votons oui, ce maire a été faible et veut jouer le rôle de spoilade. Et quel est son argument? Quel est son argument? Que, oh mon Dieu, merci à moi, les peuples Turrbal, Yagura et Kwanndamuka ne ont pas un avis. Maintenant, c'est fondamentalement faux. La structure qui a été mise a plusieurs composantes représentatives. Et le maire a échoué. Il a either pas continué à lire le rapport ou il a délibérément trompé les peuples de Bruxelles en ne expliquant pas que il y a plusieurs organismes représentatifs qui font partie de la voix. Tout d'abord, l'objet national que le maire a déliné. Et en deuxième, ce qu'il ignore tout à fait, il a échoué à même mentionner est que il y a une recommandation que il y a 35 communautés de voix régionales qui sont mises en place. 35. Que elles devraient être à la longueur des communautés et des zones régionales. Maintenant, ce que le maire devrait faire est dire oui, nous voulons voir ça, nous voulons voter oui et nous voulons assurer que Bruxelles est l'une de ces communautés représentatives. Absolument. C'est la façon dont le maire, s'il voulait jouer un rôle de leadership dans ce débat, c'est ce qu'il pourrait avoir fait. Il pourrait avoir ajouté à la motion en disant et nous appelons le gouvernement fédéral pour assurer que l'un des 35 voix régionales est représentative des peuples aboriginales de Bruxelles. Et ce n'est pas seulement ces trois communautés. Ils sont les propriétaires traditionnels ici, mais Bruxelles est la maison des gens des terres indigènes partout en Bruxelles. Je ne veux pas voir leur voix ignorée aussi. Donc ce maire qui aurait pu prendre un approche positive et constructive pour assurer que Bruxelles était en fait représentée dans le processus de la voix a échoué à faire ça. Au lieu de ça, il essaie de être trompeur à la communauté sur ce que les organismes représentatifs de la voix vont ressembler. Il a dit à la population la moitié de la histoire et a mis peur dans le cœur des résidents de Bruxelles quand un simple oui, nous devrions supporter ça et nous allons défendre nos indigènes locaux est la bonne réponse. C'est ce qu'un leader devrait faire. C'est ce que quelqu'un d' courage et de conviction devrait faire. C'est ce que quelqu'un qui représente tous les Bruxelles devrait faire. C'est ce que nous devrions faire dans cette Chambre. Mais ce maire veut déclencher une division dans cette communauté, comme le leader fédéral. J'ai entendu le discours de Peter Dutton et c'était étonnant. Je ne peux pas croire que le maire de cette ville ne veut pas soutenir la reconnaissance des peuples aboriginales et Torres Strait Islanders dans la Constitution. C'est ce qu'il a mis en place dans l'amendement.
Reclame d'être misérablement représenté.
Point de commande, maire?
Il ne peut être plus misérablement représenté que en enlevant les suivants: c'est ce que le maire veut supprimer. Le maire veut supprimer le following statement. Conseil municipal de Bruxelles reconnaît la détermination de l'indigènes et Torres Strait Islanders et soutient activement un oui dans le référendum. C'est la motion, l'amendement que le maire a mis en place pour supprimer cette provision. Il a enlevé que ce Conseil soutient un oui. C'est ce qu'il a fait. Et au lieu d'être constructif et prendre un rôle de leadership pour assurer que les communautés aboriginales de Bruxelles sont reconnues, il est allé sur le chemin de la division. Ce n'est pas, ce n'est pas la conviction morale de quelqu'un qui devrait diriger cette ville. J'ai dit ça depuis bien plus d'un an maintenant, cette administration LNP doit partir. Et c'est juste le bord de l'iceberg sur quoi se poser la question de ce qui est mal avec cette LNP. Au lieu de voir une façon de avancer le débat national, de le rendre meilleur, de être constructif, le maire change plutôt un motion incroyablement sensible et bon pour soutenir la voix et pour dire que ce Conseil soutient le référendum. Il dit non, nous ne le faisons pas. C'est ce que ce maire fait ce soir. C'est incroyablement décevant. C'est pour moi triste. C'est incroyablement triste. Et je pense que le maire a échoué à reconnaître l'importance du référendum pour notre pays entier. Est-il parfait? Probablement pas. Pouvons-nous le faire mieux en le vendant? Oui, nous le pouvons. Et nous devrions l'avoir fait. Donc maire, je vous exige de retirer cette amendment maintenant. Voyons cette motion. Voyons où nous sommes derrière les portes fermées et ayons une discussion sur une forme meilleure de mots qui peut reconnaître la participation des peuples indigènes de Bruxelles dans le processus. Nous pouvons le faire d'une manière positive qui prend le leadership de ce débat et l'importance de la question du référendum devant. Ce que vous proposez est de dire non, les LNP ne soutiennent pas le référendum de la voix. Et c'est juste étonnant. C'est très simple. Vous pouvez ajouter un paragraphe qui appelle à la motion originale amenée par le leader d'opposition appelant l'un des 35 voix régionales à être constituées par les propriétaires indigènes de la terre dans la région de Bruxelles. Et je pense que c'est probablement même d'autres qui devraient être reconnus. Mais vous pouvez ajouter un paragraphe à ça, ça resterait positif. Ça serait clair que notre communauté soutient le oui. Mais ce que le maire propose est de jouer la politique avec un problème incroyable. Il essaie d'imposer que le Premier ne soutient pas le référendum et le oui, ce qui clairement.
Conseil Johnson, votre temps.
C'est faux ce que le maire fait.
Conseiller, maire, votre reclame d'être misérablement représenté?
Merci. Conseil Johnson a誤錯地說了我不支持 First Nations people 的 constitutional recognition. En fait, je n'ai pas fait référence à ça dans mon discours, mais je peux vous dire que je supporte absolument la reconnaissance constitutionnelle des First Nations people.
Deux autres parleurs? Conseil Collier.
Président, avant de commencer, je souhaite reconnaître les personnes cubiques qui ont été émis de la motion de maire aussi, l'amendement. Et je veux mettre mon respect sur la table ici aujourd'hui. Je peux lister plus de 20 organisations qui ont affirmé leur soutien public pour l'argument de cœur 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 et soutient la voix, vraiment. Aujourd'hui, nous pourrions avoir deux. Mais malheureusement, de l'autre côté, ce que nous voyons est qu'ils sont allés très bas. C'est vraiment assez choquant. Mais quand ils sont bas, Président, nous irons plus haut. Nous parlerons la vérité. Dans ma communauté, juste la semaine prochaine, je serai très heureuse de accueillir Noel Pearson, Grace Sarr, Joshua Creamer et Susie Wilson. Nous sommes organisateurs de Difarma. Le honneur d'un membre de Difarma, membre de Belimba, est organisateur d'un forum pour aider à informer les résidents locaux sur la voix. C'est ce que nous faisons, c'est ce que nous faisons sur ce côté de la Chambre. Nous sommes unis et nous pourrions actuellement prendre des mesures pour aider à lever les plus marginalisés des gens de ce pays.
Conseillers, permettez que le speaker soit entendu en silence.
Chaque leader libéral de ce pays soutient la voix. Aujourd'hui, nous pourrions avoir montré qui nous sommes vraiment et pour quoi nous sommes vraiment. Les gouvernements ont fait des décisions depuis trop longtemps.
Conseillers.
Les gouvernements ont fait des décisions depuis trop longtemps sur les First Nations qui ont résulté dans les résultats que nous voyons aujourd'hui. Pour beaucoup des First Nations, la vie est difficile, courte et pauvre. Et simplement, les choses doivent changer. Dans ma famille, j'ai des membres de famille qui... leurs parents ne pourraient pas être sur leur certificat de naissance parce de qui ils étaient. C'est inacceptable. Ce référendum est un moment de l'histoire. Et pour fermer le lac, les First Nations australiens ont besoin d'une voix. C'est un problème qui est simplement trop important à s'asseoir dessus. Donc ma question est, y aura-t-il assez d'infos pour vous satisfaire? Parce que je ne pense vraiment pas qu'il y en a. Nous pouvons envoyer un message aujourd'hui, nous pourrions avoir, que nous sommes pour la justice, pour lafairet pour s'assurer que personne n'est laissé derrière en affirmant notre soutien de la voix avec un cœur ouvert. Nous pourrions être unis comme nation avec la voix, avec le traité et avec le témoignage de la vérité. Je soutiens l'argument de cœur 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 de cœur. Je soutiens une voix indigène au Parlement pour nos First Nations. L'histoire est appelée. Donc aujourd'hui, nous ne supporterons pas cette motion amendée comme si nous ne la dignifions pas.
Deux autres parleurs à l'amendement?
Merci, Président. Je veux parler de l'amendement. La voix, la motion amenée par le leader d'opposition a posé une question simple. La reconnaissance des peuples aboriginales et Torres Strait Islanders. Et pour les leaders de cette ville, ce qui est supposé et qui est en fait un pays progressiste, supporter cette voix, ce vote. Au lieu de ça, ce que nous avons ici est des tentatives complètement comprisées d'utiliser des jargon, d'utiliser des lignes utilisées par le leader libéral et les Nationaux et One Nation pour enlever toute sorte de sens et de soutien pour ce qui était la motion initiale. Au lieu de la collaboration, au lieu de l'engagement, au lieu de travailler et reconnaître le moment que ce pays et cette ville est dans, nous avons un délai. Nous avons le choix de mettre en place des informations, être sélectif avec les informations. Nous avons la création d'un amendement politique triste qui enlève les fonctions de la motion initiale et crée une divisivité. Ce que la voix demande est une simple chose. L'histoire de ces pays, la colonisation, la situation qui existe dans les communautés First Nations partout dans ce pays et dans la ville en elle-même. Je veux dire, je le vois en face de moi quand je suis en bas dans les rues de Musgrave Park ou à la ponte de Go Between et je vois la population de la désertité. La représentation d'individus First Nations dans la détention juvénile. La représentation d'individus jeunes First Nations dans notre système de foster care. Tout cela a été créé par la manque d'une voix, par une manque de traité, par une manque de témoignage de la vérité. Et le fait que nous sommes ici maintenant, complètement changeant cette motion en une amendment qui n'apporte rien, est incroyablement décevant. Je ne supporterai pas cette amendment.
Deux autres parleurs à l'amendement? Maire?
Merci, M. le Président. Et juste en relation avec les commentaires qui ont été faits, quand le Premier demande plus d'informations, parfaitement ok. Parfaitement raisonnable. Quand quelqu'un de l'autre côté de la politique demande plus d'informations, alors toutes sortes de mauvaises motivations sont attribuées à cette personne. Vous voyez l'inconsistance ici. Vous voyez la hypocrisie ici. La réalité est, et laissez-moi lire exactement ce que le Premier a dit. Le gouvernement fédéral doit vraiment se mettre dans ce espace et l'expliquer. really needs to step up into that space and explain it. I'm sure that's going to be coming, the Premier told reporters on Thursday. And what I would like to see is, once we get that information, once we get that information, not before, First Nations people, business groups, community groups and sporting organisations getting out there and showing their support. Once we see that information.
councillor Cassidy, please. councillor Collier.
Chair, point of order.
A point of order, councillor Collier.
Chair, sporting organisations, many organisations have affirmed their support.
That's not a point of order, councillor Collier. That's not a point of order.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The Premier said it herself, once the information is forthcoming, some basic information we're talking about here, basic information about who will be representing our First Nations people, basic, oh, it's in the report. Well, the report tells you nothing of substance. The report tells you nothing. It raises more questions than it raises answers. And what it makes clear is that the hundreds of First Nation groups right across Australia will all somehow be distilled down to 24 representatives. I think if the average Australian was put with that proposal, they would rightly ask, well, how is this going to work? What benefit will it have? And these are not unreasonable questions to ask. So, Labor councillors, opposition councillors, Green councillors, independent councillors can criticise me for asking a question, I don't mind, water off a duck's back, but they're also criticising all of the people out there who have that same legitimate question and they want to know more information than a few paragraphs on a government-funded website. They want to know answers.
I've also, councillors, please, councillor Murphy, councillor, excuse me, councillors, councillor Murphy, councillor Cassidy, please, stop cross-chamber discussion while the Lord Mayor is speaking. Lord Mayor.
I've also been accused today of parochialism. You better believe it. It's my job to represent Brisbane. It is my job to put Brisbane residents first and Brisbane First Nation residents first. Councillor Cassidy is interested in federal politics, will councillor Cassidy run for the next federal election? I'm here, I'm here to represent the people of Brisbane and what is in their interest. And if there's questions that need to be answered, and I can tell you, in the hundreds and hundreds of conversations I have with people out there on the streets, ordinary Brisbane residents, they've got these questions too. They have these questions too. And in fact, I was surprised by the number of people who, when you ask them how they feel about the voice, they think you're talking about the TV show. And this is concerning, that the government has so little information out there, website with nothing on it, and in fact deliberately underfunded both the yes and no campaigns in what I see as a deliberate attempt to deny people access to information, in the hope that people will just vote yes on the vibe, not based on any information or fact, but on the vibe. And so, asking these questions is purely a reasonable thing to do, and it's the same questions that a lot of Brisbane residents would have tonight. The same, the same questions that a lot of Brisbane residents will have when they're going towards the referendum and they're thinking about how they're going to vote, and then they make up their mind on how they vote. The Prime Minister can't leave this to chance. He's had extreme criticism from people within his own party. There was an interesting article the other day written by, I think it was Cameron Milner, who said, along the lines of, the Prime Minister is asking people to vote only on the vibe of it. No information, no details, just on the vibe. And that is setting the country up to fail and that is setting this process up to fail. And I think Mr Milner has a point. Unless these questions are answered, how can you expect people to make an informed decision? The basic questions, there should be basic answers provided.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The vote will now be on the amended motion, which all councillors have. Do you want me to read it? That this council reaffirms its support for the consideration of the Uluru Statement from the Heart, which includes calls for a constitutionally enshrined voice to parliament, which all Australians will vote on later this year. Brisbane City Council recognises the self-determination of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders people and calls on the federal government to, quote, "step up into that space and explain it", close quote, as requested by the Queensland Premier, to allow informed consideration of a yes vote in the referendum. This information must include a detailed explanation about how the Jaguarra, Terrible and Kwandamuka peoples will each be individually and fairly represented on any voice to parliament. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnston. Ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and 6 against.
Thank you. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillors, we now have a new substantive motion. Any speakers? Any speakers on the substantive motion? councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on the amended motion. I think that it's important that we appropriately consider the motion before us today to ensure that this council continues to unite rather than divide the residents of Brisbane. And I note that the entire opposition is no longer in the chamber, just for the record. In this instance, I agree with the Queensland Premier when she says that more information is required to be provided by the federal government on what the voice will look like. Unfortunately, since the federal government has released very little as it relates to how the voice will operate, very few know what yes will look like in practice. Importantly, it is unknown at this stage whether or not representatives of the Jaguarra, Terrible and Kwandamuka peoples will be represented through the federal government's proposed voice to parliament. This crucial information is not known by Brisbane City Council, nor is it known by the members of Brisbane's Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community that the Lord Mayor and I met with earlier this month. I personally am concerned that the longer this information remains guarded and the more it risks important voices from Brisbane not being heard, the more the community will grow divided on this issue. With this in mind, we believe that it is critical that the federal government release more information as it relates to what the final model of the voice looks like. Specifically, it should include how representatives of the Jaguarra, Terrible and Kwandamuka peoples will each be individually and fairly represented on any voice to parliament. This council has undertaken great strides to support members of our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community and we will continue to walk together towards reconciliation in a collaborative manner. With this in mind, I urge you all to support this motion.
Thank you. Any further speakers? No further speakers. We now move to the vote on this motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, petitions. Are there any petitions?
I have a petition, Mr Chair.
Thank you. councillor Lyne.
I have a petition from the people of South West Mitchelton in regards to a development application in that location outlining their concerns and seeking a number of remedies. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further petitions, councillor?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I have a petition requesting that council close access to Litton Road from Geelong Street at East Brisbane.
Thank you. Any further petitions, councillor Atwood?
I have a petition on behalf of councillor Adaman. It requests that councils resurface and seal Lake Manchester Road in Colo. Colo.
Thank you. Any further petitions? councillor Landers, motion to...
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. General business, councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an office of the Independent Assessor or councillor ethics committee order? No one standing. Are there any matters of general business? No one standing. I declare the meeting closed.